Oh, I love my work. That is a nice jacket.
I said you were gonna be photogated in this. And Bruce would probably look better than me about more. At least it did a good second place. I will. I'm happy so glad. Finally have you. I had to give back. Are you able to reverse?
Yeah, I am because like this time it's twelve ninety over there. So I was trying to just told them if I woke me up. If you hear a snore.
Oh, sorry.
I have to book me up.
Aside from. I'm not betting, no, no. I'm just saying like a controversial stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I thought you were talking about. I don't wanna hear from you anywhere.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm talking about the whole day.
I'm.
How are ya? I'm well. Did you hear it getting on your ear? I don't know.
Yes, it did.
It's morning.
Thanks for the contest.
Well, there's too many people here.
It's all weird.
It's a solar powered safety stick. In really, really heavy stock. People with lots of.
Yes.
Climate efficient. Thank you. Safety stuff.
I didn't see it. Just got the, it was just a.
Something for safety sticks.
Did you wanna do pictures now? Got it, okay. In action. We're gonna. We're gonna start in about forty-five seconds.
Silence devices, just like I silenced mine.
Thanks for the reminder.
We're not gonna get Siri again?
I know. Well, I'm worried about March, so I can't promise.
We gotta be careful. We gotta be careful.
I just lost my. Oh, here it is. It is now four P M. on August sixth, twenty twenty-four. And I'm gonna call the City of Iowa City Work Session to order. Our first, welcome to everyone that is present here in the building and welcome back. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, thank.
Yes. We're gonna go on to item number one, which is clarification of agenda items. Here and none. We're gonna move on to items number two, which is information packet. Discussions will go to July eighteenth.
Oh, I need to pull it up. Hang on. I'm not sure if this is on. I need to pull this up.
Okay.
Folks can.
I'll go ahead and we'll be able to do multiple at one time. July twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I'd like to just point out IP number five, our joint entities meeting. I think a lot of us over there focused heavily on the pop-up Metro discussion. I know Council Burgess has been, done a lot of work on that, but I'm gonna go see it firsthand. And so if anyone has questions or wants to understand how it works or doesn't work, please send those questions my way. And I'm happy to report back at our following meeting.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for attending.
Yeah.
And we'll move on to August first, which we do have some proposed council meeting schedules.
Yeah. Can, that's IP seven, I think, the proposed meeting schedule. I'd like to propose that we meet on January twenty-fifth as opposed to the previous weekend, just because January twentieth is M L K Day. And I think a lot of people.
Sure.
Get together with families and travel that weekend, so might not be the best weekend for us to do a budget meeting.
Could you say that one more time? Apologies.
IP number seven from the August one proposes our January meeting schedule.
Okay.
And the top proposed full-day Saturday budget, the first one on the list is the Saturday immediately before the Monday of Martin Luther King Day, I believe. And so I just think that moving it to the second choice on that list is probably, might get better attendance for people who might be traveling.
It's good. May the eleventh.
Twenty-fifth of January would be the day I'd propose.
From the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And I guess that'd be a question that staff don't have to answer now, if that seems possible.
Yeah, all these are, have been reviewed with staff.
Okay.
Um, I think this is IP two for August first. It's the work session. Is that, well, I guess here's my question, because I think that's the work session agenda for current, right? Uh, that's for today. I was just looking to see where there would be a possibility to request a pending work session topic, where that might fit in.
Oh, yeah. So you can do that now?
Okay.
Can we finish talking about that schedule change?
Sure, sorry.
Oh, sure.
I do have a conflict, it looks like, on January twenty-fifth, which I might not be able to shift around. But I, I mean, I, what, I don't, I'm trying to pull up the right thing here. My, my computer's a little slow, but the other possible date was February first, one of those possible dates.
Is that stop, that's okay with the staff?
Saturday, the first?
Isn't that pushing it a bit?
Well, I mean, that's, I, I question that as well. I mean, I hear you, but I think it was on the list.
Okay.
The other dates were Janu-, it's Monday, January thirteenth and Monday, January twenty-seventh.
If you recall, this past year, we actually switched it to a Monday, to, to. Accommodate schedules, so we could, Monday works for staff, but understand it may not be the best option for a full day for many of you.
Monday, the thirteenth was one of those?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a possibility. I think by the twenty-seventh, depending when my semester starts, and I don't know what my class schedule is for next semester. So, I mean, possibly a Monday will be okay, but I don't know for sure yet.
I don't know during the weekdays, because we're working in the morning, so.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, it need like really, we don't know what's gonna happen, like on the two, May twenty, like in January of twenty twenty-five. And I, I cannot predict my schedule now, now for weekdays. But weekend, I'm open to it.
Is it fair to say that we can revisit at least that, maybe November, December and see if people are.
Yes.
Closer? Yeah.
Sure.
So.
Fair enough.
That's a good idea.
We'll revisit, but the plan is to have it in January at some point.
I have another calendar issue separate from January, when it's appropriate.
Okay, go right ahead.
Spring break week. Um, I think right now we're scheduled to meet right in the middle of that on March eighteenth. Um, I think that's a, we should probably move it either the week before or the week after, or do something different that month, just because, not only for those of us that have kids in school, who might have stuff going on, but also for a lot of staff and other people who might.
Travel.
We would keep them from, from taking advantage of family time if we kept our meeting date there.
Agreed.
Now.
I don't have a preference which way to, how to, which way to go on that. I just, not that day.
So this past year, we actually had one meeting in March?
Let's do that again.
So then that would, so the question becomes, do we kinda shift to be the second week and not the first week? Um, so that we won't, we won't have such a big wide span?
I think it already is the, you're talking about the, oh, you're talking about the eleventh versus the fourth?
Correct.
Oh, okay. I'd be fine with that. I don't, I don't mind.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And then any other concerned dates? Now, in July, typically we have.
One meeting.
One meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So if we go there. Um, cause I know we shifted things a little bit the last time.
It'll be the fifteen. The fifteen of July.
So people are okay with going with the fifteenth?
I could go either way with either date.
With the eighth or the fifteenth? Um, I think.
The eighth.
Because we're gonna have a meeting before that on the.
I'm looking at July one and July fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
I don't care with, with either, whatever works for people.
We'll be having June seventeen. I think the eighth could be possible. The eighth.
People wanna go with the eighth?
Sure.
Sure.
All right, so we're gonna go with the one meeting in July, July eighth. Okay. And then next year is, um, an election year?
Yes, really is.
So we need to look at that Monday, November third.
Just shift the.
Yeah, the date is, the day is right, but the date is incorrect.
Yes. Apologies.
Yep, so it'd be Monday, November third.
Was that to, to have it on the, instead of the fourth?
Yeah.
Correct. And then, I don't know what people feel about December, but in the, if I'm correct, we only have one meeting this year that we agreed to. So. Wonder what people's thoughts are for.
Second, second week?
So just keeping December sixteenth?
Um.
Or do people wanna go with the ninth?
Ninth, ninth.
The ninth, so if somebody going on vacation for the, for the holidays.
Yeah.
Will be good.
The ninth is fine with me.
The ninth is fine.
Sure.
All right, we're gonna go with December ninth. And cancel the other two dates. Any other questions or concerns? All right.
So, just one question. So we decided we would revisit January.
The budget day.
In a future date, okay, cool.
Which, just to put it in the back of our minds, if there is an opportunity for a weekday, maybe a Monday? Or a Saturday? So just look at your.
By that time, we'll know our likes, schedule, so.
Yep, yep. All right, and I don't know if there's a preference, but the Monday did kinda worked out last year, so, especially for our staff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
When we consider.
That's a great consideration.
All, all the things that they have to try to juggle.
Prep and then they.
Yes.
Well, I might just be taking P D O. It's fine.
Okay. All right, any other, uh, agenda items from July eighteenth, July twenty-fifth, or August first?
Like I said, I do want to propose, um, a pending work topic. Uh, I would like to revisit, um, the conversation that we had regarding the on-street parking downtown, the, the fee.
Sure.
Um, is there support?
I would second that.
Yeah.
Support that.
Yeah.
So we'll have it for a future pending session.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You want date specific or just put it on the pending list?
Um, I mean, I know that there has been some back and forth, so about whether to wait or to do it sooner. I, I think it would help to level set sooner rather than wait.
Yes.
Um, simply to, to be able to.
Have a discussion, sure.
Have a discussion and then we can, we can do later.
Seems to me that coordinating that with the leadership of the downtown district would be helpful. Their availability to participate in that work session might be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Whatever that might be.
Participate.
All right.
Just wanna probe into that a minute. If, if you want them to participate, that's a different ask than just letting them know that.
I mean, they're gonna, they are participating in a way. They're, I, I don't know that they.
I think we're all talking to.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking to them, so I don't know that the actual like.
Okay.
Inviting them as a special.
Okay.
Consultant or guest or what have you is necessary.
You can also just send us an email.
Okay.
Great. All right, anything else from the information packets? Here and now, we're gonna move on to item number three, University of Iowa Student Government Updates. They are not here today and, oh, well, hello, I didn't get that memo. Come on, come on up. Welcome.
Wow, solo outing?
Yes.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm filling in for Matthew, who is taking some personal time. So I'm Jack Carroll. I'm one of our chiefs of staff with student government, so I'm here to provide some updates and take notes in his stead. So just the general one, we're excited for the return of students. It's about that time of year. Already some have started trickling in, but obviously in the next week here or so, we'll get even more of them. For the start of the school year, we're looking to start an expanded program that slightly has to do with downtown activity, which is, um, an increased subsidy to, uh, ride share, specifically partnering with Uber, uh, for late-night transit for students. Uh, that's mostly to offset, uh, long wait times that we're currently having with night ride. And, uh, student government is doing that in conjunction with, uh, campus safety, alcohol harm reduction, and just the division of student life in general. Um, so hopefully there are less students who are walking around or walking home, uh, from the downtown district, uh, late at night. And hopefully that is more focused on safer accommodations. We're also finalizing our legislative agenda. Mostly, we have three points currently that we're working on. The first being supporting local representatives, uh, for the state's delegation, uh, in their zoning measures. Uh, mostly I know that they are going to propose potentially zoning measures related to getting more affordable housing. Obviously, we support that because, uh, the more that we can have more affordable housing, hopefully that offsets, uh, some student costs to off-campus housing. Um, as always, we focus on student mental health. Uh, that would also be appropriations. Uh, we coordinate with other region universities to do that. It's becoming something that we just have to persist at. Uh, not that it's a controversial issue, but as everybody knows with state appropriations, sometimes they just don't take the time to outline that money. So that's a lot of coordination with our counseling services and the other region universities to see where that can best be spent and how to best propose those. Uh, we don't really have a third item. At the moment, we're debating between, uh, the legality of fentanyl strips. Uh, test strips are currently illegal in the state of Iowa, and, uh, that was a surprise to us as well. Um, so we're looking into potentially, uh, working with our state delegation on that, though there may also be some other issues, uh, that show up down the line. Obviously, it's an election year, so we're trying to see how that happens and that plays out first before we start finalizing more of our federal legislative agenda. Um, as I think was just mentioned by, uh, Counselor Alter, uh, we asked about, um, student parking, specifically during our, uh, high-volume weeks, which is mostly, um, our finals weeks for the respective, uh, semesters, especially the fall semester. A lot of students like to park downtown with the campus being open later, especially with our library system. So I know Matthew, um, and Anna, our director of G R., started the initial conversations with, uh, Jeff, uh, about what that potentially might look like to get, um, either reduced rates or just a flat rate for student parking for that week. And, uh, so happy to hear that, that got brought up. And I believe that is all the updates I currently have, so thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for sitting in for them. All right. We're gonna move on to item number four, which is staff presentation on the three point seventy-five million dollars pro-housing federal grant award. And I see Ann Russett, our senior planner.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. Ann Russett with Neighborhood and Development Services. I just have a brief presentation to provide you with an update on where we're at and a little bit of background. This was, as you're all aware, a funding opportunity issued by the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. They had eighty-five million dollars in competitive grant funding. And the grant was created to support communities taking steps to remove barriers to affordable housing, including regulatory barriers, such as outdated zoning regulations and land use policies. On October seventeenth, um, we presented to your council our application for a pro-housing grant. Uh, you all approved us moving forward with that application, where we requested five point six million dollars from HUD. This slide summarizes the activities outlined in our application as well as the associated grant budget. There were several planning-related activities that we included in the application. These included a parking study and an associated, uh, text amendment to our zoning code, um, specifically the parking standards in our zoning code, funds to help support our comprehensive plan update, and a city initiated rezoning to accommodate higher densities, just to name a few of those. We also included a pilot affordable housing development project, and that, you can see here, is the biggest ticket item on this list at five point eight million. Um, as part of our grant application, we were also required to include a summary of what we would spend the money on if we only received fifty percent of our request. So, um. This column here is the one hundred percent request that we submitted, and this is what we said we would do if we only received fifty percent of our grant request. So our application anticipated that certain activities would not move forward if we didn't receive full funding. And those included the accessory dwelling unit incentive program, as well as the immediate housing assistant program. Other activities like the development project would also be reduced. We received notice in late June that we were one of twenty-one communities in the country to receive a grant award, uh, and we were awarded three point seven five million dollars. And the notification from HUD that we received did recognize that we didn't receive our full grant request, and it stated that we could revise our scope of work as contemplated in our grant application. So we don't know exactly what our revised scope of work and our, our budget will look like. However, based on correspondence from HUD, the revised budget should align with what we submitted with our grant application. Um, HUD has also said that they will assist us with aligning our activities with the award amount to ensure that there's consistency with our application. We do anticipate that it will look similar to the fifty percent, um, funding proposal that we submitted with our grant application. In terms of timeline and next steps, we did hear from HUD last week. They are gonna be hosting two webinars this month, one on August twentieth and one on August twenty-seventh with the award recipients. In terms of execution of our grant agreement, we will be receiving notification from HUD prior to those webinars. And we will receive our grant agreement and we'll have ten days to execute that. We, at this point, we don't know what, when our start date is, but the money must be spent by the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-nine. So there's still a lot of unknowns at this point. I think once we have the webinars with HUD, we'll be able to, um, get a lot more information. Um, with the grant agreement, we'll have, um, more clarity on the scope and the budget as well. Um, but that's all I have for you at this time. I'm happy to take any questions.
So does it mean, when they said that they would actually essentially make it right so that there was an alignment with the money and our reduced proposal, they're basically upping the award amount? Is that correct? Or they're gonna work to try to make sure that we can do all of the pieces, but at the budget that they awarded us?
They're, they're just gonna help us, assist us with revising our scope and our budget.
Okay.
But what their correspondence has said, it should align with our grant proposal. And since we didn't get the full funding, there's gonna be components of our proposal that were, that will not be funded.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you have to choose which one you wanna reduce, right?
Yeah, and, and we've actually already, through our application, have identified which activities we would not fund.
Yeah, and I saw those activities, you know, um, that we wouldn't fund, like the A D Us. That makes sense to me, that we, we would just kinda vacate that. Um, and I didn't have any concerns by what, um, would not be included, even the pilot project, uh, is, would be reduced, um, in what we said we would do. So I feel comfortable with that, knowing that we do have, um, affordable housing funds that, you know, it, it'll remain within that pot of money. Um, so I'm, I'm comfortable with, uh, moving forward and looking forward to actually hearing back about, uh, what HUD finally says that we can, uh, kinda do. Um, so we'll just be, I, I guess, just finalized in the approach and what we're gonna do, cause we are gonna have to line up, um, um, some outsiders to kinda help us with some of those studies.
Yeah, yeah, we will.
Need to do as well.
I was doing the math and looking at the numbers, and I find out that, like, the, the assistant is seven hundred fifty thousand, which is you're gonna remove, and another item, which is five hundred thousand, you're gonna remove, uh, if I'm correct. Yeah, that's, that's really going, because I don't want, like, a lot of money to be removed from the pilot affordable housing, the project itself. So it, it seemed like we can just take from there around five hundred. Is that what you guys looking for, or?
So you're saying for the pilot affordable housing development project to reduce that as little as possible?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, like, don't take a lot of money from here.
Okay.
Because that's the actual project.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, can, yes, we already removed the five hundred and the seven hundred say removed, but you have there reduced and reduced.
Yeah.
So.
And the second reduce is just project admin?
Yes.
But, yeah, this is the. Okay.
And certainly, are there ways to leverage, I know that this, you know, looking at affordable housing and its needs, uh, without trying to get in the weeds or micromanage? I mean, like, a regional housing needs study, is there, are there ways that maybe that also could be reduced by leveraging sort of studies that have been done already? Or are they more out of date?
That's possible. We could probably leverage some of the, um, planning-related activities. Um, those are the, the lowest kind of ticket items.
I know, I know.
Um, but we can, we can definitely look at that.
It's just, and it's, honestly, I don't have a, ultimately, yes, the entire council, you know, has a stake in this, but in terms of being able to figure out how to make those further reductions, um, you know, I, I do have faith that, you know, these are suggestions to you, and I agree with Mayor Pro Tem, that we'd like to keep as much for the actual, um, incentive, or, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, at the housing development project.
Yeah.
You know, so if it, it's kinda carving off a little here, a little there to, to be able to make up for it, but, um, you know, certainly, you're the ones who know what studies need to be done and whatnot, so I'm just tossing that out as a suggestion.
Okay. Thank you.
And for the, for the city affordable housing fund match, we see the two, two million eight hundred fifty. You know, I, I think the staff would know better if this is, you wanna full fund this, or it's better to use this money for something else. Because the money is, uh, we're gonna, is allocated to affordable housing anyway. But sometime, yeah, if they, they full fund the program, you said you're gonna give two, uh, matches with two, two million eight hundred fifty. But right now, I think the staff should make the best decision. Is this good to be here or somewhere else?
Yeah, and I guess I would say to that with, with our grant application, we submitted that, both under the one hundred percent proposal and the fifty percent, that the city's match would be that two point eight five million.
Yeah, but it's with, with full fund.
And fifty percent of funding.
Really, even if it's fifty percent?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't aware about that, yeah.
Ann, can, can you speak to how this, uh, I'm sorry.
Well, my only question about that was, if I understood the Mayor Pro Tem's comments, was maybe we would reduce some of the items that we indicated would be fully funded, even if we received fifty percent of grant funding. My question, well, let me pause. Is that your question?
Yeah, my question is, uh, do we still have to provide the two, two million? The fifty percent that we said initially we're gonna do it?
Right. So as a related matter, my question to Ann, and I haven't reviewed this application, um, is whether or not we are committed. When we said that this is what we would do if we only received fifty percent, do you feel like we're committed to stick? we're committed to stick with what we said we would do?
I think especially if we don't want to reduce the amount for the affordable housing development project. We're going to need that, we're going to need that fund to help support that project specifically. We can ask HUD if we are not obligated to that $2.85 million, but we did put it in the application.
Right, that's why I asked. But, yeah, I mean, the conversation with HUD would give us an answer.
Yes. Just to know if we are obligated or not.
Right.
Of course, you know, if it's obligated, that's it, yeah.
Can you speak to how many of these studies up here align with the ongoing comprehensive plan revisions, and if there are some overlaps or some sort of synchronicities that help us, or are they really separate efforts?
No, I think they were, we are going to be doing a comprehensive plan update regardless of whether we receive this funding or not, and we were going to be doing the regional housing needs study as well as part of the consolidated plan and the comprehensive plan. The parking study is a big one. That's the $250,000 one that we would not have funds for without this grant. And the city-initiated rezoning to accommodate higher density housing is something that we had hoped to do after the comprehensive plan update was completed, but we don't really have it in our budget at this point.
And we'll have the data from this HUD, the studies that come from this HUD grant before or while we're doing the comp plan revision?
It'll be part of it. So we're going to use the funds from this grant to help support the comprehensive plan update.
Got it. Thanks.
Just asking about the housing development project, the pilot. We don't know where that would be or if it would be more than one site, right, at this point?
We don't.
So is this the kind of thing that if it happened to be, for example, in a district like Riverfront Crossings where we had more allocated money, we could scale that up, just not specifically relating to how this grant is administered? Is that a possibility?
Yes, we, with regards to our match, we can always put in more. So if the project happens to be located in Riverfront Crossings and we need extra local dollars to make that viable, yes, we could utilize the Feinlu dollars for that.
Can you remind us how much is in that fund, if you know?
Five and a half, about five and a half million.
But this project is not supposed to be, like, we're not saying this project will be in one area. We proposed 25, 24 units, 24, and now they are not full funded, so it could be reduced. But does it have to be in one area, to be built in one area, even if it's like 20 or 18? Is that, like, have to be in certain area, all of them, or it could be, like, built around the city?
I think our intention was to do one site. I'm not sure that's going to be a HUD requirement. We'll have to consider what HUD's requirements are, but our intention was to try to focus on one site. A multifamily development.
But you're thinking like mixed income?
Potentially.
Yeah, it's not like only low incomes housing.
Right.
It would be like mixed income.
Yeah, it could take any number of shapes. We didn't have to strictly define it in the application.
Oh, sure.
And do you know if we're, we didn't identify in the application, as I heard Mayor Pro Tem, we didn't say that we will only do one site. We could do scatter sites should, you know, we want to do that?
I think that's possible, yeah.
Yeah, that's what my question is. Thank you.
Just a quick acknowledgement of gratitude for putting together a grant that was successful because it was highly competitive, and also continuing gratitude for negotiating this with the federal government in order just to make sure that we are doing what they say we are, you know, we are doing the things that we had said we would do in a way that would make them happy so that they don't take their funding back. I think I got it all straight there, but that's obviously going to be very important because when we apply for a grant, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have to stick with what we said we were going to use the money for, right? So it's not like a blank check, even with ARPA, which was, gave us a lot of flexibility, tons and tons of rules. You get to navigate those rules and navigate all these different things, and that is work that is recognized and appreciated.
Thanks.
I don't hear anything else. Thank you so much.
Again, congratulations on putting great application.
Yes. All right, we're going to move on to number five, which is presentation on repositioning public housing project from Bloomberg Harvard Leadership Initiative Fellow Naomi Metta. But we're going to introduce Tracy Heisch, who is our Director of Neighborhood and Development Services. Welcome.
Hello. As you're aware, this past year, the mayor and city were selected to participate in the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative. This initiative was exciting. It's a resource for city leaders to expand our problem-solving capability, increase our effectiveness as leaders, and to improve our outcomes for our residents. One of the mayor's focus was affordable housing, an area that I love to focus on, obviously. Being a member of this program allowed the city to apply for a Harvard Summer Fellow. We drafted a proposal of what we wanted the Summer Fellow to do, and then we interviewed Harvard graduate students. We selected Naomi Metta here with us today. Due to her knowledge and passion about housing issues, she has a background in architecture. She has had a project with the Housing Authority out on the East Coast, and just her general enthusiasm to work with us. She has been wonderful to work with. She is intelligent, thorough, and she has done a great job and worked diligently to come up with the best recommendation that meets our strategic plan. She'll present on why we need to reposition our public housing program, provide the HUD options available to a community our size, make a recommendation, recommendation on which options staff plans to pursue, and then continue with recommendations on how we build that housing portfolio that will also factor in our pro housing grant and the project that we ultimately decide. And then after the presentation, staff will be here available for questions, and Naomi wanted to know that after the work session, could we take a photo?
Yes.
For the program. Okay, so Naomi.
We're dressed up for it.
Thank you so much for having me here.
Yes.
I'm Naomi Metta. As Tracy mentioned, I'm an architect and an urban design student. In the last few weeks, I have worked with the Iowa City Housing Authority and the NDS Department as a Bloomberg Harvard Summer Fellow under the City Leadership Initiative. The focus of my work here has been on expanding access to affordable housing by specifically looking at our public housing program. The intent was to find a pathway which would allow us to reposition and become an authority that not just administers federally assisted housing programs, but also actively develops affordable housing. So why do we need more housing? We have a population of about 75,000 people with a projected growth of about 10,000 people more by the end of this decade. 20% of our population earns less than $30,000 annually. 61% of our renters are cost burden, leading to overcrowding across households, moving to less desirable neighborhoods, and so on. Only 6% of our households are currently receiving subsidies from the federal programs that we administer. Around 973 low-income households are waiting for their public housing units. 1,300 low-income households are waiting for their housing choice vouchers. This establishes the urgent need for affordable housing in our jurisdiction. The ICHA occupies a unique position in the city government. Within the Department of Neighborhood and Development Services, we cater to three counties, Johnson County, Washington County, and Iowa County. To expand upon the affordable housing programs that we provide, it is largely in two categories, one under the realm of federally assisted programs and the other under the realm of city-owned affordable housing. Under the city-owned affordable housing, we have about 21 units through which we serve 21 households. Under the federally assisted programs, we provide affordable housing assistance through housing vouchers as well as public housing. Under public housing, we own 86 units which are subsidized and provided to applicants. And under the housing choice vouchers, we have about 1,595 vouchers which are operated. So altogether, we serve about 1,702 households currently. To put this into perspective, 86 public housing units are facing a lot of problems today. We are subjected to a decreasing federal revenue. Our expenditure in the last four years has exceeded our revenue. Therefore, we are incurring an average loss of about $190,000 a year. 94% of our staff time is gone in managing the public housing units, complying with federal regulations and procedures, whereas only 6% of our staff time is being dedicated to the 21 city-owned affordable housing units. These operational challenges make it difficult for us to achieve our goal of increasing affordable housing production. Therefore, to face these challenges, we have recognized that HUD-provided repositioning of public housing is the way forward. This will allow us to increase revenue for affordable housing, achieve operational sustainability, actively develop and diversify our housing stock, and serve much more than 1,700 households. Before I move on to the repositioning process, I would like to go through some basic terminologies that are used under affordable housing. So what is city-owned affordable housing? These units are owned by the city. They do not receive any federal subsidy. They're managed and operated by the Housing Authority, who allocates these units to eligible tenants in need of housing. The tenant pays rent to the city in this regard, and the rent revenue generated is utilized for the maintenance of these units. What is the public housing program? Under this, the city owns 86 units. This program is operated using federal revenue, which is given by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. So the Housing Authority operates and manages these units under the public housing program. It annually receives capital funds and operating subsidies, which are utilized to maintain and operate these units. These units are allocated to applicants using a preference criteria which prioritizes elderly, disabled, households with children within our jurisdiction. Some of these housing, some of these tenants are provided with public housing, whereas some people are put on the public housing waitlist. In this particular program, the rent is determined by adjusted tenant income. So a tenant pays about 30% of their adjusted tenant income. This is the requirement for a household to not be cost burden. So the public housing rental revenue is quite low and always fluctuating. The key difference between these units is that although both of these, both of these set of units are owned by the city, the public housing program is dependent on federal funding and cannot utilize private equity. The rent is determined by tenant income. Whereas the city-owned affordable units are generally utilize affordable housing grants or rental revenue to operate and maintain these units. The second form of federal subsidy that we are given is a voucher under the Housing Choice Voucher Program. These are also provided under the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. There are two kinds of vouchers primarily. One is a tenant-based housing choice voucher, which means that a voucher subsidy is attached to a household. Since the voucher follows the tenant, they can get subsidized housing in any location of their choice. The second kind of voucher is a project-based voucher. This voucher rental subsidy is attached to a unit, which means that a tenant, A, for example, can enter this unit even though they do not possess a voucher, and when they leave, another tenant can come in. So the subsidy remains attached to the unit. The Iowa City Housing Authority administers a total of 1,595 vouchers, out of which 20 of them are project-based vouchers. This program is also run under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The preference criteria is similar in allocating the units, giving priority to elderly, disabled, and households with children under our jurisdiction. Some of these vouchers are given to tenants, whereas other tenants are put on the voucher waitlist. The federal aid here is utilized as a rental subsidy. So how does this program work? When a voucher-holding tenant goes to the landlord, they continue to pay the same amount that they would have paid under the public housing program, which is 30% of their adjusted income. But in this case, the remainder of the rent, which is the total rent subtracting the tenant rent, is provided by the Housing Authority to the landlord. So the landlord receives two rents, one from the Housing Authority, which is coming through the federal subsidy, and one from the tenant, which is 30% of their adjusted income. Even though both of these programs are run, are federally assisted and run under HUD, they are very different in the kind of revenue that they receive. Under public housing, we receive a total pool of money, which is utilized to operate and maintain our units, whereas under the Housing Choice Voucher Program, the revenue is attached to each voucher. The rent is very different in both these cases. The rent is determined by the tenant income in public housing, whereas in the Housing Choice Voucher, even though the tenant pays the same amount of income, the landlord is provided an additional housing subsidy which covers the rent difference. So this is the key difference between both of these programs. But one of the biggest disparities is the funding that is allocated by Congress to this program. The public housing program has historically seen a decline in funding, whereas the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program has only seen an increase. To look at the pool of revenue for both of these programs, under the public housing program, a large pool of our subsidy comes from HUD, and the rent collection is a much lesser amount compared to the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher, where a small amount is received in housing subsidy and a total of rental revenue is what is a larger pool of money. So if I put numbers to this, we can see that for 86 units currently, the public housing program gets a revenue of about $776,000. Whereas if the same 86 units were operated on a Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher platform, we could potentially earn up to $1.5 million in revenue. HUD recognizes these challenges which are faced not only by us, but by many public housing authorities around the country: lower revenue, declining federal funding, high expenditure, our revenue unable to meet the unit maintenance demands, and the historical narratives against public housing. As a resolution to this, it recommends public housing authorities to undertake repositioning, promising higher federal revenue, giving them the opportunity to access private capital to fulfill any upgradation or rehabilitation requirements, and increase their capacity to assist more households. So what is repositioning? Repositioning is a shift of platforms. We shift from a public housing program to a Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. We shift from a larger pool of money given to us to the pool of money being dedicated to each voucher. So initially, every tenant would go to the ICHA and get allocated a public housing units, but in the other case, the ICHA can decide whether they want to go ahead with a project-based voucher or a tenant-based voucher. So what changes when you reposition? We change the revenue we make. We would be potentially making twice the amount of revenue that we currently have. We would shift to a platform with higher and more stable federal fund, which will help us to plan our budgets better. We will have higher rent revenue and sustainable finances, and we can stop operating in loss. We gain access to private capital and can leverage both private and public equity to develop housing. We have the increased capacity to serve more households, more than the 86 that we currently have in our public housing program. But what's important to understand is that this is only a shift of platforms, but our mission remains the same. We will still continue to serve low-income households. The tenant continues to pay the same amount of rent that they used to pay under the public housing program, and the tenants can continue to occupy the units they currently occupy, but also have the additional flexibility to move to a location of their choice using their voucher subsidy. So to summarize, why should we consider repositioning our public housing program? We can see that over the last few years, the federal subsidy that we have received has been fluctuating, both under operating subsidy and capital funds. If we break down our overall revenue, we can see that the amount we collect in rents is much lower, so our large dependence remains on HUD money. And when you look at the revenue projections, which tell us how much we should be making, we make much lesser than that due to non-payment of rents. So the rent shortfall is covered using city reserves, which is dwindling our own capital and is not sustainable moving forward. To differentiate, you can see that the graph on the top right shows the rents we receive in a public housing program, where it is unstable and unpredictable. Whereas when you move to the Section Eight platform, the landlord or the Housing Authority in this case continues to get the same amount of rent irrespective of a change in the tenant income. And to put this against our current expenditure shown in red, seeing our revenue, we see that we have been operating in loss, and we are in need of surplus today. And the most important thing of all is that if you look at the existing units shown in blue, we are far behind from providing and meeting with the demands of our community today, which is highlighted in red, as you can see here. The average waiting time for selected applicants, about nine-hundred-and-seventy-three households on our waitlist, is about five-and-a-half years, in our top preference criteria. So for all of the reasons that I've mentioned about, I think we can agree that repositioning is extremely important for us, to serve our large community, and fulfill our aspiration to independently and profitably own, develop, and build affordable housing. HUD provides several repositioning pathways for each public housing authority to reposition, and I will take you through our decision-making process and the various pathways which are provided. HUD primarily provides four pathways: the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, the RAD in Section Eighteen Blend, the Streamline Voluntary Conversion, and the Section Eighteen Demolition Disposition and Preservation Program. All of these come under the Section Eight Housing Choice Voucher Platform. To summarize, the first two options are generally taken up by housing authorities, which have large-scale modernization requirements, repairs and reconstruction needed for their public housing units. The units are converted to project-based vouchers, and they utilize private equity to make these improvements. Whereas in the next two options, which is under Section Twenty-Two and Section Eighteen, the public housing units are converted either to project-based vouchers or to tenant-based vouchers. And in this case, the units can either be preserved affordably or leveraged to invest in more affordable properties. In order to guide our decision-making process, we went through a framework which primarily looked at these four categories of criteria: the applicability to our city portfolio and requirements, assessment of organization structure requirements and operations, financial obligations, and a key alignment with our city's goals. We started marking it through a system in which the darkest green represents the closest alignment to our goal, and the darkest red represents the fact that it is farther away from what we wish to achieve. And we noticed that under the criteria of applicability to city portfolio, the RAD program does not fulfill our requirements. To demonstrate that, if you look at our current public housing units, which are mainly on scattered sites, a mix of single-family homes, townhouses, and apartments, all of them are currently in good condition. Therefore, we do not have major modernization requirements. And if you compare the rental revenue, you can see that between public housing and RAD, we would not be able to increase our revenue by a lot. But when you compare it to the Section Eighteen or the Section Twenty-Two platforms, we see that we are able to increment our revenue substantially in these platforms. So for two of these key reasons, we realized that RAD might not be the best program for us, because when you put this against our current average expenditure, you can see that the only way we will have more revenue to invest in new housing is if we choose to go either to, through Section Eighteen or Section Twenty-Two. So we had two options remaining to make our final choice. Under this, the Section Eighteen program provided us with a hurdle with respect to ownership models. So what happens is that, under the Section Eighteen model, we are required to transfer, transfer the ownership of our eighty-six units to either an affiliate legal entity or another private entity, whereas the Section Twenty-Two, the streamlined voluntary conversion for a public housing authority of our size, does not have any such requirements. To continue to own the units that we currently have, Section Twenty-Two seemed like a better choice for us. Both the options fared well in terms of the financial obligations that they would serve, and the next hurdle that Section Eighteen provided was a procedural one. To elaborate upon it, each of these sections have physical requirements, but for a public housing authority of our size, which has less than two-hundred-and-fifty units, the Section Twenty-Two does not have any such qualifications, whereas under Section Eighteen, you would have some of these qualifications to be required. This is an overview of our current public housing unit locations. As you can see, all of them are scattered sites, so we would qualify under the category highlighted in red. However, twenty of our units do not qualify under this parameter, and they would qualify under the parameter of less than fifty units, which means that our portfolio would qualify in two separate categories. What this means is that we would have to go through two processes of repositioning, which would require more process, more money, and more staff. For this reason, again, we felt that Section Twenty-Two was a better choice for our Housing Authority. Therefore, the staff recommended that the best decision was to go ahead with HUD repositioning, using a streamlined voluntary conversion of our units. So what does this mean for us? Under the streamlined voluntary conversion, eighty-six of our public housing units move out of federal assistance, and they become a part of our city-owned affordable housing units. All eighty-six of our public housing tenants receive new eighty-six housing choice vouchers. So what this means for our portfolio is that now we have, in addition to the twenty-one units, eighty-six new units, and in addition to the fifteen ninety-five vouchers, we have eighty-six new vouchers. And at the end of the repositioning process, we would not have any units left under our public housing program. What does this mean for our public housing tenants? So during the repositioning process, after the tenant receives the Housing Choice Voucher, they have two options: either they can continue to remain in the units and use their voucher in that, or they can choose to go into the private market or any other subsidized unit to use their voucher. This provides them with additional flexibility to decide where they want to live. In terms of rent payment, as I explained earlier how the Section Eight Housing Choice Voucher Program works, the tenant will pay thirty percent of their adjusted income, whereas this rental subsidy is covered using the federal Housing Choice Voucher. So the tenant rent does not change. The tenant continues to pay the same amount of money even after repositioning. But does our rental revenue change? It does. If the tenant decides to utilize their voucher in our units, we will be getting, we will be utilizing the federal subsidy to get the rental difference, and also get the thirty percent of adjusted income as tenant rent. So in total, we move from getting only tenant rent to getting a complete rent amount in this program. So as a way forward, we see higher revenue for operations and development, we see eighty-six new Housing Choice vouchers added to our portfolio, and eighty-six of our units can now be operated as city-owned affordable housing. How does this program help us expand our access to affordable housing? When we look at the valuation of the assets we then own, we see that on top of the twenty-one existing units, we now have eighty-six units under the city portfolio. So if you give an average valuation of two-hundred-thousand dollars for each unit that we own, the hundred-and-seven units would be worth about twenty-one-point-four million dollars. And the rental profit that we would make on the Section Eight program for the eighty-six units would be about half a million dollars a year after covering all of our expenditure. This money can be leveraged by us, for example, to borrow a loan of about seven or ten million dollars in, or invest in revenue bonds. We can utilize this in investing new properties, in acquiring more land, or undertaking active development. And the revenue generated from these properties, which could be developed as mixed income, can be used to repay the debt that we incur. Another way to go about it would to be ex, to be exploring setting up an ICA affiliate, which could be a partner entity in the form of a nonprofit, an LLC, or a limited partner. What this allows us to do is to tap into the private market for capital. We can apply for low-income housing tax credits, private investment, and also utilize federal and state tax exemptions, as well as apply for additional grants. And all of this capital will again help us in leveraging our assets to lead city-owned affordable housing production. And while we think about how repositioning helps us in all of these ways, and looking at other avenues like the pilot for affordable housing under the Pro-Housing Grant, one of the important things is to think about the development frameworks that we use to expand, improve, and develop affordable housing in our community. I will be showing you a series of maps after this, which have utilized data from various sources such as HUD, the Census Bureau, and other organizations. Most of the terminology that has been used is the one which is currently used in the original data sets, and in most of the maps, the colors as well. For a holistic growth of affordable housing today, we not only need to build new housing and expand strategically, but also continue to strengthen the existing environment in which our housing units exist. This requires an identification of strengths, challenges, and deficiencies in every neighborhood that we have housing. It requires us to invest and implement through an equity lens. Housing development is generally driven through the market, identifying potential zones for development through density analysis, vacancy analysis, availability, rent, et cetera. But it is also a good thing to overlay it with lenses like, what does the cities, citizen want? How can we use climate-action-driven lenses? How can we use socio-economic-driven indexes? And overlay these concerns along with market availability. For example, when we analyze our public housing waitlist, we see that we have a huge demand for one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. So if you look at market availability, currently, our public housing units are mostly located in the southern part of our jurisdiction, but the northern and western parts of our jurisdiction provide an opportunity to invest in more wakened one-bedroom units. Similarly, for two-bedroom units, also there is a market available in the western region. So the idea is to undertake development in new zones and diversify the kind of neighborhoods that we are investing in. In this particular map, the darker pinks represent areas which have higher affordability of one- and two-bedroom units for households earning less than a thirty percent of the area median income. So the goal to utilize these maps would be how, to ask the question that how we can diversify markets in regions? How can we expand landlords who accept vouchers to expand our rental markets and not just acquire new properties? When we analyze, when we analyze our waitlist demographics, we see that about eighty percent of our waitlist in both of our federal programs currently serves a majority of non-white populations. The maps on the right depict a higher ratio of black or African-American renters to non-Hispanic white renters in certain areas of our community compared to the others. Expanding affordable housing opportunities in diverse markets will help us address this weighting ratio of renters. When we look at our voucher concentrations, we observe similar patterns, that there is a disparity in where our, our vouchers are being utilized. And the next step for us to be to increase landlord participation in our Housing Choice Voucher Program. The Housing Authority will be taking a three-pronged approach in this direction. The first would be to launch a landlord education initiative, to help landlords understand what is the Housing Choice Voucher Program, how can they participate in it, what are the procedures, and so on. This will be followed by a survey to understand the barriers faced by landlords, common challenges and misconceptions, and in response to that, the team will work towards developing incentive programs and also exploring census tract-specific interventions in that direction. A key factor to also incorporate when we are looking at housing today is how social and climate vulnerability can drive our housing choices. On the left-hand side, you see a map which depicts social vulnerability levels. This refers to population who are vulnerable to health problems resulting from extreme weather or climate change. It considers factors like household income, household age, disability, minority status, housing and transportation access. On the right-hand side, highlighted in pink, is our current coverage of emergency relief services, temporary shelters, community and food housing services. The goal here would be to not only expand new affordable housing in areas of lower vulnerability, but also strengthen housing support in areas which are currently facing high vulnerability. Similarly, we could also use frameworks which look at accessibility to proficient schools, to larger supermarkets, and expand our housing portfolio in strategic ways. A pattern which is observed nationally is that most of the public housing units in several parts of the state are concentrated in high-poverty neighborhoods. When we look at this for our portfolio, we observe that, we, we observe several disparities across our census tracts. To encourage the development of mixed-income neighborhoods will help us relieve the overburdened capacity of certain census tracts, which are currently serving a large number of people in need. It will diversify the opportunities for people to live affordably, affordably in other census tracts, and also help us in increasing our coverage to many more people. The next thing I'm going to talk about is an Economic Mobility Index. This was developed in a collaboration between the U.S. Census Bureau and economists at the Opportunity Insight Groups. It is called the Opportunity Atlas. The argument is that neighborhoods play an important role in determining a child's economic outcomes. So what it means, as you can see in the diagram on the left, a child who is born to a household with lower income, which is if they are present in the twenty-fifth percentile of our income distribution, how likely is the child to move to the fiftieth, seventy-fifth, or the hundredth percentile? To put it simply, how likely is a child to do economically better and move out of a cycle of intergenerational poverty? So that is what this index tells us. In this map of our country, we see that the redder areas highlight, are highlighted to show that in these particular area, children belonging to low-income parents are not doing as well. They have lower economic outcomes compared to the areas which are marked in blue. What is good for us to see here is that we are doing better as a state. We have a better average compared to the nationwide average of forty-two-point-eight, and at a county level, too, we have, we are observing higher economic outcomes for our children. But when we zoom into this map, we see that even though we are performing better than the national average, there are variations across different census tracts. These variations are often driven by varied, by various parameters, like school quality, employment rates, health infrastructure, et cetera. The variation across neighborhoods results in a difference in economic outcomes. This index has been used by many governments to identify the needs specific to each census tract, and direct their policy and investment strategies in a way that they can ensure equitable growth for all. A way for us to utilize this index would be to overlay it with our market studies. For example, what if we were to look at the idea of opportunity bargain tracts, which essentially means census tracts with lower median rents, observing higher economic outcomes? They could be strategic areas for new development, and while we do so, we will continue to invest in the neighborhoods which are underserved. Similarly, this could also be looked at with respect to market availability. Can we see where? Can we see where our markets are available and open to invest in? Acquire units in areas which are observing higher outcomes? And again, continue to strengthen our underserved neighborhoods? And we could overlay many of these lenses that we've discussed. We could overlay the idea that we need a majority of one-bed units with the kind of market availability our jurisdiction shows and the Economic Mobility Index. The number of ways we can match these criterias and move towards innovating housing development is immense. And to acknowledge that we have already started moving ahead in that direction. The ongoing efforts of the ICHA include investment in five affordable units at Hotel Chauncey in the downtown district, which is a key area of our jurisdiction. The city also supports other affordable housing providers such as the Housing Fellowship Shelter House, et cetera, and other housing navigators to help meet the overwhelming demands of our community. The city has initiated an energy-upgradation opportunity for landlords participating in the housing choice voucher program. These are just a few things that we have already started working on. But to ensure that we move equitably, repositioning our public housing program through the streamlined voluntary conversion is an essential next step. It will allow us to operate with financial stability, allow us to grow operationally, allow us to undertake innovation in equitable development, and explore many other ideas to follow. Therefore, to move from becoming a manager and operator of federally-assisted affordable housing programs towards being not only a provider, but also developer of housing, we need to undertake repositioning. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have to tell you how, you know, when we started this journey to affordable housing and bringing in a fellow, we had to identify a specific thing that we wanted to target. So we decided, you know, it was affordable housing, but that public housing avenue. But what you presented is this large holistic approach to what this council and our community desperately needed to research. Now, we know that we still, and what we'll be communicating today is really about the repositioning. But there are some key things that you brought up. And not only did we look at individuals that live in our current public housing, but we also heard how we can expand that and help more families. We heard the equity lens as well, where not only do we want to make sure that we have mixed income and some of the you showed us the census tract, but mixed incomes in some of those areas that, you know, don't really have a lot of affordable units. We have a lack of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. And so I really appreciate your presentation. And I know that my colleagues probably have a lot of things to say, but I wanted to at least say thank you for your presentation and thank you for spending your summer here with us.
Thank you for giving me this wonderful opportunity.
Great.
Yeah, I guess I agree the same thing that the mayor said. But my question, how long you been doing this? Until you come up with this amazing information? How long you been, it take you to do this?
Ten weeks.
Ten weeks? Oh, my God. That's a lot for only ten weeks. This is great. Yeah, you just like really, as the mayor said, I like the numbers of you showing us like how many bedroom is needed? How many people in the waiting list needed one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and all this? This is really great. I just have a question for you regarding the you said, how does it look for the current public housing tenant? So you mentioned, this is if we reposition to the Section 22. Those people who are now living in a public housing, they don't have Section 8. They will be automatically receiving project-based Section 8? That what you're telling me?
Yes, they will be receiving a housing choice voucher.
Is not like cold difference. It's the same housing choice voucher that currently we have.
Yes.
So later, if they decide to move from this house because they don't like it, it's not tied to that house, they can go somewhere else.
Yes.
And as soon as they move out from that, now we don't have to put another Section 8 there if we don't want to.
The city will be, the Housing Authority will be putting an affordable deed restriction on the housing units. So if one voucher holder decides to occupy another unit, either another voucher holder can occupy the unit or any other subsidized, any other household in need could be occupying the unit since the rent would be subsidized.
We are not obligated to put, after the first house voucher move out, we are not, as a city, we are not obligated to give that to another Section 8 house. We can just give it to low-income people with affordable housing.
Yes.
So actually, we like we winning housing, more housing to the city.
Yes.
Which is free of federal regulations after that, right? Like, we don't have to bond by the federal regulation, which is great. My question will be again for this is this is good, the house that now free, we can just also, I think I asked a question, we can do whatever we want to do with that house?
Yes, so since all of our 86 units become a part of our city portfolio, we will be, we will continue to operate them affordably. But in the future, we can also choose that to leverage it and maybe invest in bonds, get a rent, sorry, get a loan against it? Or we could use it to reinvest in other forms of housing as well?
Which is great. I also love the getting loan, the bond against them so we can get another like five million to do another affordable housing. It is when the, when the people moved out and we had, I mean, like, when we offered them the Section 8. We will educate them with this and like what they're gonna do. I think they will love it to take a Section 8 and go somewhere else also because I remember I used to have a public housing. So I graduated from public housing and I get Section 8 so I can get maybe a bigger house with single house with like backyard or another area for a school reason or anything. So I think this is really great opportunity. And thank you for putting this together. I love it.
Thank you.
Just to clarify.
You grabbed like several of my questions and comments. That's awesome. Piggybacking off of that, too, I think it's important to point out that these then would be, wouldn't, these would be units in which Section 8 would be welcome in perpetuity, which unfortunately has become a challenge in some parts of our community. So I think that's also a really
Yeah.
To have affordable housing stock, which we know will always accept Section 8 vouchers, has become something of value.
And also, I just forget to mention that we are increasing Section 8 voucher by 86.
Yes.
Yeah.
A more voucher, which is, we cannot just done it like that without this program. Thank you. Great.
Just want to, yeah, just clarify, just to make sure that I'm understanding the broad proposal. You put forth a lot of information, so apologies if this is misunderstood or if it's perfectly understood. So the general idea is that we take our publicly-owned units and the ones that are currently have, you know, federal money is directed towards them where we're only getting, as a city, the 30% of the occupants' income. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes, so the rent revenue that we make is dependent upon the tenant income.
Okay.
So it will be 30% of their income.
So the idea is to transition that away from the site-bound program to basically either a partner owner or, you know, something that we have jurisdiction over that's somewhat different, right? And then we can rent those out at market rate, but since we're transitioning those units directly to Section 8 and we're trying to get Section 8 recipients in there, we're receiving, instead of the 30%, we're receiving the full price. Is that the correct understanding?
Yes, so we will be receiving the total rental revenue, but the tenant will still pay the same amount.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay.
So the subsidy will be used to cover the rental difference.
And what you're proposing is that, you know, outside of, you know, the maintenance and necessary things, we can use those additional funds to, you know, create more housing across the community and such?
Yes, precisely. Because currently, all of our revenue that we get under the public housing program is utilized in operating and maintaining our units. But the additional revenue that we would get in rent would allow us to not only cover our expenditure, but have a surplus left which we can invest somewhere else.
And currently, our public housing is less than the HUD fair market rent, right? This will allow us to increase it to match the current like HUD market rate so we can have more money. In the same time, the tenant only pay 30% still.
So in public housing, we don't set the rent. The rent is determined by a tenant's adjusted income. So a large part of the procedural hurdle we also face is a large part of the hurdle we also face is that we regularly have to check the tenant's income and determine what the rent is based on 30% of it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that the mayor, if I'm understanding, you're asking what we get for rent where we can set as rent in public housing?
Exactly.
Yeah, we don't have, I think you're familiar, public housing, when somebody has enough income that they're not receiving, it's not subsidized, we use what's called flat rent that HUD uses, which is 80% of fair market rent.
80%.
Yeah, and we rarely, I think of our 86 units, we have 11 right now that we use fair market rent for. But all of the rest, we use that 30% of their income is what they pay for rent. And then we rely on our capital funds and our operating funds we receive through the public housing contract we're in to make up the difference, which as Naomi showed is not anywhere close to what we need to spend to maintain them.
Exactly.
She's doing really well. I just know some of these intricacies can be complicated.
Nicole, please identify yourself, please.
I'm so sorry. I'm Rachel Carter. I'm the Housing Administrator of the Housing Authority.
Yeah, thank you, Rachel. I appreciate that.
Fall-up question. So, you know, in a future repositioned Iowa City Housing Authority, would there be geographic limitations to what's acquired, to the properties that are acquired? Or do they have to be within Iowa City or just between, just within the jurisdiction of the Housing Authority as it is now? Or what would it be?
Good question.
We currently have three counties under our jurisdiction, so it's likelier that we would be developing within that jurisdiction.
Okay. Would there be anything that limits it outside of that?
I'm not sure. Outside of the three counties of the ICHA search?
Yeah, just like theoretically speaking, just, you know.
You know, that's probably going to be more of a Jeff question than a me question if we want to develop outside of that area.
Right now, all of our units are within Iowa City.
Yeah.
We could certainly go outside of Iowa City within the Housing Authority's jurisdiction to those three counties. I certainly would not be opposed to that. I think that's a conversation we'd want to have with some of our peer communities.
Okay.
But that would be, and this is a question for either Jeff, Eric, or one of you. Could I, because we would own these properties, the 86 in Iowa City. Is there any sort of legal issues with Iowa City owning a property in, say, Coralville or Washington County? Or how does that work?
Oh, the city already owns property in other jurisdictions, so that itself wouldn't be a limitation. Now, that's a different, you know, there are all manner of rules, federal rules involved here, and I haven't researched those. But if your question is just can we own property outside of city limits, the answer is absolutely yes.
Okay.
But for this, we are talking only to the public housing owned by Iowa City within Iowa City.
Right, for right now.
The 86.
Currently, all 86 are within city limits.
Sure.
Naomi, thank you so much for this presentation and all your information you've provided. I'm curious if you are aware of any communities that have undertaken the Section 22 voluntary conversion that also are in places like the state of Iowa that allow for discrimination against voucher holders? Like, I'm just wondering, like, Councilor Harmson mentioned that having the city-owned properties is helpful because we know we will take voucher-holding tenants. But do you have any information as far as what the landlord receptivity might be like, given that anecdotally we're hearing there is pretty, you know, potentially very significant discrimination?
So we've also interviewed two housing authorities. One of them, which we visited, was the Rock Island Housing Authority. And they're also considering a repositioning of their public housing units. And we also spoke to the Vancouver Housing Authority, which is a much bigger authority. And they're also undergoing the same process at this point. And I think in some of the discussions, what came up is that by owning city-owned properties and opening them up to voucher holders is definitely one way forward. But how do we also look at expanding our landlord accepting vouchers in like strategic locations? So for example, when I showed the map for voucher concentrations, we recognize that certain census tracts participate more than the others. So are there education initiatives that we can take up? Are there ways we can reach out to individual landlords? And these are some of the different ways we've started thinking about. And one of the steps we wanted to undertake to ensure that the voucher market is only expanding for our new tenants is we thought that we would undertake a survey to understand what are the primary reasons why landlords refuse to participate. And we've done, we've gone through a lot of the housing studies which HUD has also done across the country. And based on that, we wanted to understand that some of the things they highlight is that often, more than ever, landlords are not well-informed about the education initiative, about the procedure that is required to enroll. And sometimes that deters them from participating in the program. So can we make this process easier? Which is essentially three pages of forms and only five steps for them to participate. So I think addressing smaller ideas like this would help us in expanding the market. Thank you.
I really appreciated this presentation and probably will have to watch it again because there was so much information in there. I've always been sort of unsure about two values I think a lot of people hold, and that is we want mixed-income neighborhoods and also we want the maximum quantity of affordable units. And sometimes those two things are at odds. Like, perhaps we can provide one unit in a high land-value neighborhood or two in a lower one. I think if I understood the presentation correctly, that there's another metric that we should be looking at, and that is sort of higher outcome neighborhoods. And I'm curious to learn more about this. This repositioning seems to put us in a driver's seat to sort of focus specifically on high outcomes as opposed to just that simple, you know, A or B that I was thinking of. Am I understanding that right? That there's, we shouldn't be looking at, you know, necessarily high property value, low property value, but high outcome, low outcome neighborhoods for investments? Is that what I heard?
Yes, precisely. So what I was trying to suggest is that along with looking at what land is available for acquiring or where properties are currently available, if we overlay it with other kinds of metrics, that, for example, in this particular study, they're talking about the idea of economic outcomes for children who are born to households which are lower income. And they're measuring that at the age of 35, how much do these children earn? What they're trying to say is that local characteristics play a very important role in molding your economic outcomes. And there are two directions after you learn about this. One is that you strategically place affordable housing in neighborhoods which are doing well. And the other is to make interventions into underserved census tracts, the census tracts which are not doing as well. And understand that what is the reason that children here are observing lower outcomes? Is it because they don't have the same amount of educational access? Is it because they're not able to graduate college? Are some of them facing high incarceration rates? There are a lot of factors that this atlas points out can be the key reason. And it depends, it differs from census tract to census tract. So it pushes us to look at these metrics and verify that what is the key reason for our census tract to not perform as well as the others?
I think, Council, we do need to just maybe give a response to the presentation intent, and that is repositioning our public housing. So I wanted to just kind of get a sense of where we are at supporting this.
Absolutely. I mean, it creates an ecosystem, essentially, self-sustaining, or not self-sustaining exactly, but it, there's so much more potential for income revenue that can get fed back into affordable housing to increase it. So I'm absolutely, yes.
All right, we are thumbs up. Thank you so much for the presentation. And if you hang around, we'll take a picture right at about a quarter till.
Thank you.
So make sure communication is aware, or whoever's taking the picture. All right, we're gonna move on to item number six, which was review the draft request for proposal document for the 24. which was review the draft request for proposal document for the twenty-first, twenty-one South Lynn Street. And welcome, Rachel.
Hi, everyone. So the, as the mayor stated, the draft twenty-one South Lynn request for proposal document was in your agenda packet. So hopefully you had a chance to read that because I'm just going to do a fairly quick, high-level review so you have plenty of time to discuss or ask questions.
And please identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Rachel Kilber-Barley, Economic Development Coordinator. So I'll just jump in and start with section one, which is where we just provide general background information on the site itself and then what the kind of overall city's intent is with this project site and kind of our overarching goals for it. We've included the site maps there. And then moving into section two, here's where we share a little bit of background and statistics on important economic influences locally. So we call out University of Iowa, large employers, businesses, our arts and culture environment, those kinds of things. And then we specifically dive into more details on the downtown in particular. So just again, here providing more background statistics specific to the downtown, highlighting different events they have, the diversity of property uses in the downtown, kind of the unique urban design aspects, the geographic assets that are near this property site, like, for example, the university and some of those city facilities we've talked about in the past. That takes us to section three, which is the project description. And here's where you really probably see a lot of your priorities that you established and then the public input that we heard incorporated. So we kind of set just our general expectations here again with some of those overall overarching expectations, I should say, just maintaining, you know, a recognition of other key assets that are nearby, that inclusive urban experience that we're looking for, safetiness, cleanliness, those kinds of things. And then, of course, encouraging as much alignment with our values and priorities outlined in the strategic plan as well. And then we kind of get into those specific goals, again, based on that public input and those priorities you established. So this first bullet point is where we identify that mixed-use type of building we're looking for with engaging commercial-type uses on that first floor. We identify various uses that may be considered for upper floors. And then there's only kind of one new thing in this RFP, I think, that you maybe, is maybe new. So I'll let Jeff talk about that a little bit, which is the city office space.
So on page seventeen of the IP or page eight of the RFP in that first bullet point, one thing that we did want to introduce into this builds on the space needs study that you received an update on at your last work session. We don't know if city office space is really the right solution here or not, but we'd like the project teams that submit on this to comment on the viability of that concept so that we can evaluate that at a later stage in this process. So basically, how does it, would it work in the proposal in relation to the other uses that are proposed? It's not a requirement that we're putting out there, it's not a preference that we're putting out there, but we'd like to engage any respondents in that conversation. Eventually, we would need to decide if it's the right fit for the city, the right opportunity, or if there's better options for us in a different location. But this isn't, this isn't something that we wanted to introduce post-receit of the proposals. We wanted to at least signal that it's a conversation we'd like to have during this process. So you see it show up for the first time here. And again, it's just coming off the heels of that July presentation, which is why we didn't address it at earlier stages in the public input process.
So I'll just continue. And then, kind of moving on, next bullet point there is again pointing to kind of our affordable housing goals. We identify a mix of units with a particular emphasis on affordable housing per year guidance. We also specifically called out that luxury housing focusing solely on the student demographic would not be the type of project that we're considering for this. And then, as we outline those affordable housing requirements, we're kind of pointing back to our TIF policy where those requirements are included. Next bullet point talks about those high-quality construction standards. We also discuss, so we've identified that type-one building construction would be favored and that wood frame or type-five would not be considered. And then here's where you also see our priority for climate action leadership in this development, which of course would be required for any project that's seeking TIF. And then the final bullet point is again speaking to that kind of high-quality, very contextual architecture that just recognizes those properties around it, the downtown historic district in general, and that type of welcoming and engaging design, particularly at the pedestrian level, that we hope to see. Moving on to the next section, we've included those, any, the applicable parking and zoning standards for this property site. So the parking would need to be negotiated as we selected developer and moved through that process. We don't anticipate that any rezoning would be needed, so we've included those standards there. Moving on, I'm on page ten now. When CI Ventures owned the property, they did complete several due diligence steps. So we have some of those documents available, which we've identified in the RFP and will make available to anyone who would like to see those in full. And then we just acknowledge that there are some Mid-American energy infrastructure on the site, so that would need to be worked through later in the process. But just wanted to point that out for developer teams. And then the alley and street access adjacent to the private project site. Here, we're just really describing how that, you know, alley and the surrounding street are used and encouraging that the designs really ensure safety and the efficient functioning of those uses surrounding the site. And then the construction and trades labor section, again, just highlights as a priority tied back to our TIF policy. This, of course, recognizes that contractor's subs won't be known until later in the process. That takes us to section four, where we identify potential sources of public financial assistance and talk a little bit about the development agreement. So here's where we, again, clarify that city financial incentives and financial participation is not intended to replace any private or public sources that the developer can obtain on their own, but they're just to be those flexible resources that can be used to bridge any gaps created by current market conditions or help us meet those goals that go above and beyond. Again, just pointing out that we will likely contract with a third party to help us conduct that financial review. We've identified some potential state and federal financial assistance programs that developer teams could consider. There may be others. And then for the potential sources of city assistance, tax increment financing is kind of in the, in projects like this. We typically would provide that assistance in the form of rebates, again, used as gap financing, and that would be determined through that financial analysis. However, sale of the project site, negotiation of that, could be part of the financial package negotiations. And then for any permanent affordable housing that is proposed, there may be additional local or federal affordable housing funds that we could leverage. All of these details, that financial package, kind of the project requirements, would all be outlined and detailed in that development agreement. So that would come before you for approval. Moving on to section five, which is submittal requirements. Our hope is if we can get this buttoned up and ready to issue, we would publish this RFP at the start of September and then have those due at the start of November. That gives about forty-five business days or two months for teams to respond. Submittal requirements are just kind of what you should expect to see when you have a chance to review the proposals we get in. So we just ask for general developer, develop, I'm sorry, developer and project team information, information about their past experience, their financial standing, financial capacity, a description of the project. This is, again, where we would ask for them to identify potential for city office space so that you can continue having those conversations, whether it's in relation to this project or not. And then we ask for some rendering site plans that kind of show those design concepts in relation to both the surrounding building uses that would be on the site, proposed square footage at that point. We'd ask them to share more about their construction approach to their project, of course, that financing package proposal, and then just the other standard disclosures and references. I'll kind of skip over section six, kind of standard, just reserving city rights and establishing legal compliance expectations. And then section seven is the evaluation. So the process outlined here, as we've talked about many times, is kind of all tentative. It depends on the quantity and quality of proposals we receive, and you may choose to make tweaks to this at that time. But in general, we anticipate that when we get the proposals in, a staff review committee will evaluate those, bring some recommended semifinalists to the city council. You, of course, would have the choice to bring in others or remove one that staff had recommended you don't agree with, et cetera. And then at that point, you would have the opportunity to perhaps invite finalists in to present, to answer questions at a public meeting. And then at any time during that, you know, you may be able to ask for clarification, ask for modifications, additional information. So gives you a little bit of wiggle room as you kind of whittle down to your finalist. And then the evaluation criteria identified is kind of, of course, have they submitted everything accurately? Is it in line with those goals and objectives included in section three? Are they experienced, capable? Is it aligned with our strategic plan? What's the market and economic viability of the project, that long-term fiscal benefit to the city? Again, we may have third-party help to evaluate some of that. And I think that takes us just to our exhibits. So we include a land survey that had previously been done, copy of our TIF policy, and some required forms. Other than that, I know I went through it quickly, but happy to answer any questions. And we would love to hear any feedback that you have on the document itself.
I've got a really quick question. One of the things that I have personally expressed as really important to me throughout the creation of this project is small-business incubator space. Where do we start talking about that if that's something that we choose? Is that something that should be included in this document? Or is that something that we would negotiate or start discussing later in the process? I know that it has the section that's like, oh, you know, small-business-focused culture, but...
Yeah, I'm trying to refresh my memory on what we specifically say about that. Jeff, if you have comments while I'm looking, feel free to do that.
Yeah, so if there is a very specific use that the council wants to see in this building, you should put it in this. I would caution you against that unless you are very sure. So, for example, you know you want affordable housing if there's residential. It's very specific in here. Otherwise, we're expressing our goals and encouraging teams to put their creative thinking caps on and give us their best proposal that align with those goals. So it's really kind of up to the seven of you to say, is small-business incubator space a must-have? Or is the expression of creating or continuing to build on the culture of a supportive small-business community down, in the downtown enough?
I don't know what that means is really the thing, like fundamentally, like...
Well, just playing devil's advocate, we have Merge. And we just broke, sorry, we have Merge and we just broke ground on Dream City. So I'm wondering about the appetite and...
I think, I think, so if we're making the case right now for it, right? I think that other projects in the community have demonstrated that location is a really prime consideration for people, particularly for business owners. Like, if you're a place where a market exists, that's a good place to be doing business, you know? And I can't really think of a better place to do business in our county than downtown Iowa City. So, you know, that's kind of where this comes from. It's like, if we even talk about, like, food service, right? I think they say something along the lines of within five years, only ten percent of people in the food service business who start a small business are still in business after five years. And that's largely because of so many different factors. Location is a huge considering factor.
Well, I guess, given that, given that, I think we've got people in the audience right now listening, that people who will be developed, they'll be listening to this meeting. I mean, I feel comfortable with the language that we have that really is like, give us what you've got as opposed to saying it, we, this must be in here. I mean, I'm not trying to downplay that. That need and the points that you brought up are very good. About location very much matters, about the success, not just how and what one does. But where they do it is incredibly important and can breed success in its own right.
And doing it affordably.
And doing it affordably. I don't know necessarily that that has to be laid out in this. Otherwise, we'd also be like, and it could be a restaurant that does da-da-da-da. I just, I think that there is space for these RFPs for that to come forward in the language that it is right now, rather than dictating it and being that specific.
Would, would people be open to saying that we're interested in ideas about something like that? And really, I think I should be clear about what I mean by an incubator space because, like, I think of it different from Merge, right? What I'm envisioning is different from Merge, right?
But they're programmed, I mean, they have programming. Merge is a space, but they offer different programming.
No, absolutely. No, 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 it's all good, all good. I totally get you, you know, we're on the same wavelength. But, no, I mean, what I'm thinking of is like storefront property. That's affordable for small-business owners in Iowa City or people who want to give it a go. That's what I think of. And whether that's one spot, two spots, three spots, whatever, I think that that has tremendous value to, you know, entrepreneurs, to the community at whole. When we, every time we talk with the downtown district, they're just like, there's no storefront space because of X, Y, or Z issue. You know, we have an opportunity to say, we really want that for the people in our community to have an opportunity to do that. So that's really where this all comes from, for me personally.
I think, oh, so go ahead, please.
Go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah.
Certainly would not be opposed to an incubator space, but I think I can, if I understand Councilor Alter's position about dictating at this point. And then I wonder, too, when you say incubator, when we start getting into those discussions, is this, in order to make it a true startup space, do we kick people out after five years if they're successful and not leaving?
That's the question, right?
Is that the kind of turnover that we would want to right now?
Yeah, and that's why I was asking, like, when is this appropriate conversation to have? Because there are many details that would need to be figured out for that.
To me, it would be like if we get a proposal that has an incubator space and they can make the case for that, you know, that would be in the realm of things I can support, among other things. I don't know that I am so certain that that's the right use that I would put that in the RFP at this stage. For me personally, I don't know that I'd do that.
But I think Jeff asking us now if we have something that definitely have to go, they are, he want to know that.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is that that is not something that I feel like I would support putting in there now on that particular issue, although in general, I'm not opposed to it.
Right.
I think this is really a great opportunity to put that now because, you know, also, like, people who are talented and would like to have their business, like, the rent is huge, like, obistical barriers, especially downtown. That's most likely, like, we know, like, many low-income or immigrants or maybe like another people who open elsewhere, but because they are far away from the market, they tend to close down after that. There is many restaurants that we know they closed. But giving the opportunity to have this kind of incubator downtown, and I understand your issue, if you are successful, we ask you to move. No, if you are successful and everybody know your business, you will be able to rent downtown. You will be able to find something close to downtown or rent downtown. Or, by the way, if the people know that you moved and they like your business and like your food and everything, they follow you, even if you want to Coralville. But this is just going to give the chance to the people to start. People know about them way, like, students know about them in the downtown area. I really, if there is a way, we can have at least one, like, incubator for the people to try their businesses there for five years for reduced rent or for three years. I don't know. I don't know the details, but something.
And even if it's just like a suggestion and not a requirement for the proposal, to just see what people come out with, I think that'd be good.
I kind of want to address this issue from a slightly different angle. And that would be, I would be very happy to see proposals that had exactly what you're describing, but I also don't want it dictated. But I do think one way of sort of communicating those values, which we haven't done yet, and I want to hear people's thoughts on, is actually having a scoring matrix for this so that would-be developers understand on a So that would-be developers understand on a points basis what we actually want. And small-business incubation could be one of those things. Cultural or arts institutions on that could also be a thing. I don't, I would like to know your guys' attitude for sort of developing a scoring matrix that has affordable housing, sustainability, small-business support as that. I see that a lot, like, on the other, like, in my regular job, when you work for the state of Iowa, they give you a scoring matrix. When you work for a lot of other cities, you get a scoring matrix.
Roll call, please.
Alter?
You know, as the person assembling a project, what you're shooting for.
Here.
Burkes?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Harmsen?
Here.
Mo?
Here.
Saleh?
Yeah.
This is a great conversation that we're going to have to come back to after our formal
Teague?
Here. It is August 6, 2024. I want to welcome everyone to your City Hall that is here in person, and to those joining meeting. So, at this time, I'm going to call us to recess, and we'll be back at 6:00 PM for virtually, welcome as well. The first item is a proclamation, National Farmers Market Week. our formal meeting. Picture?
Okay.
And we're going to do a picture now.
Okay.
And this will be read by our Mayor Pro Tem, Mazharir Salah.
Yes. Whereas farmers markets serve as essential hub for fresh locally grown products, produce, and farmers made goods, providing vital links between our farmers and the communities they nourish. And whereas Iowa City Farmers Market has been a program of Iowa City Barre Recreation Department for 52 years, and whereas these markets foster direct relationship between consumer and grower, offering transparency in food sourcing and supporting local economies. And whereas farmers market create vibrant public space, contribute to community health, and celebrates the rich agriculture heritage of our nation. And whereas this market play a critical role in expanding access to nutritious food promoting sustainable farming practice and empowering local farmer to thrive. And whereas National Farmers Market Week provide an opportunity to recognize the important contributor of farmers markets to the health, economy, and well-being of our communities. And whereas this recognition encourage all community member to explore and support their local farmers market, thereby shrinking the pond of the community and fostering a deeper appreciation for the bounty of our land. Now, therefore, I, Mazhar Salah, on behalf of Bruce Teague, the mayor of Iowa City, hereby proclaiming the week of August 4th to August 10th, 2024, as National Farmers Market Week in Iowa City. I urge all the resident to join in this observance by visiting their local farmers markets, celebrating our agriculture heritage, and support the farmer and vendor who bring fresh local product to our tables.
And to receive this proclamation is longtime Farmers Market volunteer Gary Sanders. Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I was trying to use the sound. But you have to go to the, you have to go to the, all the way to the actual, you have to do it.
Thanks.
And now it's high, if I want to go low, I have to go to high and that back. Oh, yeah, okay. No, this is amazing. That's good. Hey, how are you?
All right, all right. All right, I love it. I love it.
Wow.
Yes. Absolutely. You don't get a gavel when you're accepting a proclamation. Oh, not, not 45.
Let me try, if I have problem, I will let you know. Let me try, if I have problem, I will let you know. Yeah. Yes. And I have this magic. Then see, I'm, 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 Julie Seidel Johnson, Brad Barker, and especially Bill Lane, who came here in March from the wilderness of Sioux City to become a great market director among his many duties at the Rec Department. And Sidney Evans and her crew of young Rec Department employees at the table at the Washington Street entrance and walking around the market. And let's especially thank the 146 vendors who will be at the market this year for all or part of the season. They're selling veggies, baked goods, flowers, crafts, hot coffee and cold drinks, and the great food vendors on Washington Street, and the musicians from 9:00 to noon in Chauncey Swan Park next to the market. For those of you who have never been to the market, which I really can't imagine, but I know there are some folks out there who haven't been to the market or haven't been to the market in a few years, come on down. We're on the ground floor of the ramp across from City Hall every Saturday morning from 7:30 to noon, rain or shine.
7:30 to noon, rain or shine, until the end of October, when we dress up in Halloween costumes. That is a really great day. We might have to wear parkas, but it's a great day. There's free parking all market mornings in the ramp off of College Street and in the lot off of Burlington Street next to the rec center. And very important, let's send a thank you to Michelle Wiegand, who was market director for the two previous years, and a really, really big thank you to Tammy Newman, who was market director for about 26 years. Before Michelle, Tammy worked very, very hard to help this market grow. On Saturday mornings, I'm usually sitting in my chair at the Washington Street entrance. I hope you'll come by, say hi, and you can ask me questions. The ones I get are like, where are the bathrooms? That's always number one. Who's got sweet corn or melons or tomatoes or even banana bread with blueberries? Wow. So I hope to see all of you at the market. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, which is items two through seven. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Mo.
Sure.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address any item that is on our consent agenda? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. We're at our community comment, which is item number eight. And this is an opportunity for the public to comment on items that is not on our agenda. And we ask for individuals to come to the mic and speak up to three minutes. So if you are in the audience and you want to speak, we ask, we invite you at this time. Do know that the council will not be able to comment, but we're here to listen. So if there's anyone, please come at this time on any item that is not on our consent agenda.
My name is Joshua Moore. Can you hear me?
Yes. And what city are you from?
Iowa City. I've lived here since 2007. I live above the ammo bearer gun store for 12 years, and the crime in that area has gotten out of control. I called the police twice this weekend. I caught a person red-handed breaking into my truck, and they didn't go to jail. And out of the last four years, I have had more than a dozen burglaries. Several of those people I have caught red-handed, and not once has anyone there been taken to jail. I get the impression from the police department that they seem to be afraid to arrest people. And I was told that Laura Burgess wants to abolish the police department. And I can tell you that that is absolutely unacceptable. I have had enough of the crime. My brother's car was broken into last week. He had, you know, things stolen from him. He had money stolen from him. He had things from his job stolen from him. When I called the police the last time, they said that there had been 23 smash and grab robberies by the time he made it to my house overnight at 8:00 in the morning. And I know that you guys are over capacity here at the jail. In the several years that I have lived here, you know, there's been a few vote downs on, you know, a new jail. I don't know if that's something that's up for, you know, vote again, but I don't know if that's even necessarily the right choice. I just know that every time I have caught someone, you know, even red-handed in my home even, or walking across the parking lot with my stuff, you know, it's never enough. You know, I've given someone the name of the person who burglarized my house. I have given the cops, you know, the license plate number of people who have stolen guns from my home, poked holes in my paintings. I'm an art major, you know, and I feel like at this point in time with the amount of crime that I myself personally have had to deal with and have not received an ounce of justice. I've asked for, you know, the reports when it comes to the home invasion that I had and the guns stolen, and I never received them. And I have no recourse at this time other than, you know, the next time someone gets caught red-handed at my home, I'm going to kick the shit out of them, right? Because I need justice. My family, my friends, my neighbors, they need justice. And that's why I'm here today, because I'm not getting that. I'm not getting a sense of urgency from the city, from the police department. There seems to be a crime spree going on in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day. Christopher.
Anyone else like to speak during this time? Seeing no one in person, I'm going to close the public comment section. We're going to move on to item number nine, which is planning and zoning matters. Nine adds rezoning 1215 Camp Cardinal Road. An ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 5.1 acres of land located at 1215 Camp Cardinal Road from interim development, single-family residential zone to low-density, single-family residential zone. I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As you've summarized, this is a rezoning application for approximately five acres shown here in the outlined white dash. This is currently zoned IDRS or interim development, single-family. It meets the standards for that zone. The property owner would like to construct or have constructed a second home, so they do need to change the zoning to allow two homes on this size of property. So the requested zoning is just to low-density, single-family or RS5. This shows its current zoning and its situation related to other city zones. It's also abutting some of the Corville zoning districts, which are not shown on this map. On the lower left-hand side of this is Borlaug Elementary School for, or intend, to orient yourself to where this is. As I mentioned, the minimum lot area size for IDRS is five acres. This property is five acres. To add an additional, single-family home, they do need to rezone to RS5. The existing home that's there has been there quite some time. If you go back far enough in time, it was the last Armstead on the end of the road of the original Camp Cardinal Road. When we look at rezonings, we'd go through and review the criteria in our zoning code. There are two relative to rezonings. One is consistency with the comprehensive plan and the other is compatibility with the existing neighborhood. And regarding, in regards to the consistency with our comprehensive plan, our future land use map in that plan does identify this area as appropriate for low-density, single, low-density residential development. And there also are plan policies expressed in the comprehensive plan that support infill development that's compatible with the neighborhood and to ensure effective use of infrastructure. This is, as I said, a single family surrounded by other kinds of single family and elementary school and some civic and public park space owned by Corville. So this would be consistent with the existing land use pattern already present. Staff has proposed several conditions relating to transportation. Access to the subject property is currently provided by Camp Cardinal Road. Staff has recommended a condition for the dedication of additional right-of-way to accommodate a turnaround on the northern terminus of that. The city of Corville, which controls the right-of-way to the north of this property, has expressed the desire in the future to perhaps vacate that, to terminate that, to no longer have it be a connection through. So this would be making provisions for that in the future. There's also currently no sidewalk or curb cuts, so staff has recommended the installation of sidewalk. And because utilities are necessary, we would need to know that those are available prior to pulling a building permit and eventual construction. So this shows the development steps common in the city. This land has been previously platted, was rezoned at one point to that interim development stage, and this rezoning tonight would be, as I said, to again rezoning to a low-density, single-family classification. After this step, the next step would be building permits. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff recommended approval of the proposed rezoning with the conditions, as I mentioned, to require sidewalk installation, dedication of right-of-way and show proof of utility provision. At their June 26 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation and recommended approval of the conditional zoning by a vote of five to zero. We have received the signed zoning agreement, and that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer questions.
Question about the utilities bit that you had on the presentation. Demonstrating ability to connect to the utilities, is the property not already connected to the utilities or?
I don't know about the existing property, but the provision of those utilities would be a responsibility of the developer if they should undertake that. So it's expressing to them that that's a requirement.
Okay, I got you.
I guess in the same vein, whose responsibility is it for dedication of a right-of-way along?
That would be a condition that needs to happen prior to the issuance of a building permit, so the owner of the property would need to go through that and provide us dedication of right-of-way, probably through a separate instrument, not through a plating process, which is normally how we acquire that. But it is fairly common to accept right-of-way in a separate document.
Okay. Okay. And then what about the construction of the turnaround?
The eventual construction, the turnaround? That's not planned. That's just in case the road would no longer be a connection and the roadway to the north get vacated, then there would still be a way for that to terminate.
Okay, gotcha. I, thank you.
Here are no other questions. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Welcome. You'll have up to three minutes to speak, and I ask that you state your name and city you're from. And also, this is an opportunity for the council to hear from you. We would not be able to respond unless the council determines that they want to respond during their comments.
Okay. Hello, I'm Lacey Stutzman. I am the PM on this project on behalf of the property owners who are also here, if you have any questions for them. I just want to reiterate everything Danielle said. We don't have really anything to add to that, but we are here if you have any specific questions for us.
Thank you. And if you're online, raise your hand, raise your virtual hand, please. Seeing no one online or in person, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Before you do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Are people inclined to support P and Z?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right. The public hearing has been closed already. Can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved. Alter.
Second. Mo.
All right. Council discussion. Yeah. All right. Roll call, please.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 9B, rezoned at 2255 North Dubuque Street, North Dubuque Road. An ordinance rezoned approximately seven acres of property located at 2255 North Dubuque Road from Office Research Park Zone to Neighborhood Public Zone. And I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome again, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the subject property bounded in the white dash line here. This property was recently acquired by the school district. They purchased it from ACT in November of '22. Their intention, and I believe they've already established this, is to continue to use the existing building. This rezoning would memorialize the fact that the property is now owned by a public entity, a school district, for which we have a specific zoning district, which designates that, that being the Neighborhood Public P1 Zone. So this exhibit shows its existing zoning and its relationship to the ACT campus and the surrounding area. As I mentioned, this would be used for administrative offices of the school district, not for redevelopment at this time. When we review rezonings, again, there are two conditions, consistency of the comp plan and compatibility with neighborhood character. While the future land use plan map identifies this as what its former use was, which is Office Research Development Center, that's really no longer relevant because of the change in ownership, which is okay, because we anticipate in our zoning code that public entities can be in many different neighborhoods and zones, and that when they acquire property, it's okay to rezone them to the P zoning district to identify the ownership there. It does align with plan policies, which support our collaborative partnerships with our school district, so it is supported by the comprehensive plan in that way as well. It is consistent and compatible with the existing neighborhood character. It's being used primarily as offices, which is a use that's had a longstanding use in the area and is surrounded by similar uses. Again, showing the outline of the development process here. This was annexed and rezoned many years ago. It's never been planted, however. This rezoning, like I said, would reflect the new ownership. If at any time they want to split land off of this parcel or engage in redevelopment, there would be a preliminary and final plating stage and site plan and building permits. However, we don't anticipate that at this time. So based on the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning with no conditions. And at their June 26 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with that and also recommended approval. I'm happy to answer questions.
Hearing none, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or virtually. I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, Mayor, again.
Yeah, 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 sorry. If I wasn't on cough medicine, I would probably remember. All right. All right. Are you all inclined to vote in okay favor, okay of P and Z? All right. Can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved.
Second, Burgess.
All right, moved by Mo. Seconded by Burgess. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 10A is Highway Commercial Urban Revitalization Plan Amendment, Resolution approving amendment number two to the Highway Commercial Urban Revitalization Plan. And I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome, Rachel.
I'm Mayor and Council, Rachel Kilbrich, Riley Economic Development Coordinator. So with this item, during the 2024 legislative session, the legislature passed a law which requires properties that are seeking tax exemption in an urban revitalization area to enter a minimum assessment agreement in order to be eligible for that tax exemption. So this legislation would apply to our highway commercial urban revitalization tax, I'm sorry, our highway commercial urban revitalization area where we have a tax exemption program. You might recall that program, it was established in 2021. We've approved four projects under it, so a car wash along Highway 6, the South District Market and Storage renovation, and then two projects which were essentially contractor bays kind of out near the Menards area. Under that program, it provides a three-year tax exemption to commercial properties, which add at least 15% in value. And since the law took effect July 1, we just need to add this amendment in order to comply and require that minimum assessment agreement. This extra step doesn't change anything about our application process, so they still would be required to submit an application to us. That would still come before you, and then our city assessor still has to ultimately determine that the project is eligible and that that value was added. Any questions?
Seeing none, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Mo, Saleh.
Second, Mo.
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 10B, Taxi Cab and Petty Cab Regulations. Ordinance submitted Title V, Entitled Business and License Regulations. Chapter 2, Entitled Taxi Cab and Petty Cabs. Section 2, Entitled Business Licenses, to change the time period of the license term. Section 5, Entitled Vehicle Requirements, to remove the color scheme requirement for vehicles. And Section 10, Entitled Petty Cabs, to remove the color scheme requirement for petty cabs. This is the first consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter, and welcome Kelly to give us some comments on this.
Hi, Kelly Grace, City Clerk. City Council had received some correspondence requesting the color scheme requirement for metered taxi cabs be removed due to the cost burden of painting the cabs to all be the same color. At your July 16 meeting, you directed staff to remove that requirement. As we were reviewing the code section for that, we also are requesting that the amendment to change the business license year goes to July 1 through June 30. Currently, it's June 1 through May 30, just to correspond with the city's fiscal year. And then also, we were looking at the petty cab section, and they also have a requirement to be substantially similar in color. As we were reviewing the code section for that, we also are requesting that the amendment to change the business license year goes to July 1 through June 30. Currently, it's June 1 through May 30, just to correspond with the city's fiscal year. And then also, we were looking at the petty cab section, and they also have a requirement to be substantially similar in color and design, and are asking to have that removed to decrease the cost burden to them also. Be happy to answer any questions.
Hearing none. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. CNN One, in person or online. Council discussion.
Makes sense.
I just had this vision of sort of like the rogue petty cabs, you know.
Have we communicated this action with the gentleman that came before us?
I've communicated with them and said this would be voted on tonight.
Yeah, cool. Excellent.
Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 10D is Parking and Traffic Engineering Cameras. Ordinance amending Title III entitled City Finances, Taxation and Fees. Chapter IV entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties of the City Code to Increase or Change Charges and Fees. This is the second consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second, Alter.
Move by Dunn, second by Alter. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you are online, please raise your virtual hand. CNN One, in person or online. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 10D is Parking and Traffic Engineering Cameras. Ordinance amending Title IX entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 11 entitled Traffic Cameras, Drones, and License Plate Recognition Systems. Section II entitled Definitions to allow transportation services to use automatic license plate recognition systems or devices for parking purposes, and to clarify the definition of automatic traffic surveillance systems or devices. This is the second consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Move by Mo, second by Dunn, and anyone from the public like to address this topic? Yes, we're asking people to give their name and city they're from, and you can place that in the basket. Welcome, and if you're online, please raise your virtual hand. You'll be given up to three minutes.
I would like to speak broadly in opposition to this measure. I think 10 years ago, this city passed a pretty remarkable piece of a remarkable city ordinance that provided a lot of personal privacy and protection to Iowa City citizens, and I feel like this move really flies in the face of any sort of idea that the city believes in that ordinance and what it was for. While I've seen claims that traffic cameras have been used by police to sort of prevent all these very particular crimes, it's important to note that all of that information was pulled out specifically to prove this measure instead of actually looking at a really broad set of data, because if you look at that, we'll see that things like violent crime, which is one of the situations that's being brought up as a use case for providing this camera information to law enforcement, has been going down for 20 years in Iowa City. This is just not important, and it is not what citizens want. What we have seen, especially in the last year, is how law enforcement in this city uses traffic cameras, and they use it to, in my case and the case of several people I know, target protesters, target people who are speaking out against the city, the state, and the actions of this country, and as the Iowa City Civil Rights Commission found, violate those people's civil rights. I can't see any reason why you need to keep collaborating with police, especially after police actions in 2020, which this body claims to be taking action against and claimed to be supporting protesters, and then now to sort of reneg on any of those promises just feels like a violation of the trust of your citizens. I hope that you take this into consideration and hope that you move to keep the situation as it is and ensure privacy for your citizens, which I would like to remind you that 10 years ago, you were commended by the ACLU for doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? I do see online. Storm, I'm going to welcome you at this time. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name and city you're from. And you're muted.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. You'll have to bear with me, my voice is kind of shot because I'm sick right now. My name is Storm, I'm from North Liberty, I work in Iowa City. I'm frustrated with this measure because you're seriously trying to create more avenues to surveil your citizens after we just spent all that time this spring coming in there in large groups, annoying you, to be quite frank, about how the cops are busy surveilling the trans community in this town for protesting. Perhaps you remember me, I'm the person who told you months ago that doing anything of substance to improve trans life in Iowa City would be welcomed, and this is that moment to do that concrete thing, and I'm asking you not to mess this up. I stand with my colleague Emma Denny about this. You must keep in mind that this will be used in ways you did not intend, maybe even for laws that have not been enacted yet. It is only a matter of time before this surveillance allows for the prosecution of someone fleeing the state to get an abortion, or a parent taking their child to Rochester because gender-affirming care isn't legal here. They don't just use this to prosecute violent crime, they use it as a means of enacting state-sponsored violence against the most vulnerable citizens. And you want to create more means to have us all arrested? I am asking you, on behalf of every marginalized person in this town, do not pass this measure. It puts our freedoms at risk, and it puts the most vulnerable at risk. Council, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Oh, welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Joshua Moore, Iowa City. In 2016, I T-boned a semi, and y'all took my driver's license for four and a half years, and in that time, I rode my bike, including all winter long, 28 miles a day to and from North Liberty to work at GEICO as an insurance agent. And I think that if we have money to spend on, you know, traffic cameras, I think we could probably spend that on a jail or put that towards something, you know, that we actually need and take care of the things that we have now. I don't think we need those traffic cameras. I have, I feel very strongly that I think that our police department already spends enough of their time enforcing traffic code, and I ride my bike to work now every day and back as a landscaper, and I just don't, I don't feel like we need that. I think we do plenty for the traffic, you know, violations as it is, that there's no need to spend that kind of money, especially if we don't have it for the other stuff that we need. That's all I have.
Thank you. I don't know if you signed in earlier, but I'll ask.
I did, first one up there.
Yep, that'll be fine, thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? CNN One, in person or virtually. Council discussion.
Can we just do one really quick? I'm sorry, it just, no, 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 it's not anything, just as a point of clarification for those who are listening, the conversation at the moment is actually relating to cameras that are in parking lots. It's not specific to traffic cameras, and in fact, it does say that, that the amendment clarifies that cameras installed and maintained by the Streets and Traffic Engineering Division of the Public Works Department are excluded from definitions of automatic license plate recognition system and automatic traffic surveillance system of device. So, I'm looking for red light and speed cameras would remain in effect. The, sorry, I'm trying to find it here, the language, but the bottom line is that within this, and I'm not discounting the comments that have been made, but the specific conversation here is about the use of license plate readers to be able to help aid the way that the parking apps work, and then also to be able to help the police aid when there have been crimes in parking lots. So I just wanted to clarify that because I heard about traffic cameras and speeding and on the road. So I just wanted to clarify the parameters of what this ordinance is talking about.
To further clarify, it is also talking about traffic cameras. All of the cameras operated by the traffic department, so whether that's in parking lots or not, every single camera that they operate is covered by this.
The traffic engineering, yes, to be clear, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
And to lend some further clarity, since there is a discussion about spending money in these cameras, these cameras are already present, they're already deployed.
I'm pretty frustrated with this whole situation for a variety of reasons, and I think the first one is that we as a council had, as far as, if my memory is serving me correct, an at-length discussion about the flock cameras, and about how if we wanted to pursue the flock cameras, we would have to amend this particular ordinance. And we have now, we made the decision that, okay, if we want to go that route for the automatic or license plate readers, just a different type of technology, if we want to amend this ordinance, we have to take into account, or we wanted to, which I have reached out to ACLU, we have to, we would like to reach out to various stakeholders who are more educated than us on the privacy concerns, on the practices of law enforcement, and to fully take a holistic approach to addressing this policy, if that is something that we want to do, if that's the direction that we want to go. That is not what's happened. We have not had that opportunity. We were handed an ordinance to pass, and again, we have not had ACLU, we have not had, you know, any other stakeholders aside from the people that have joined us in person or online, discuss these privacy concerns, and these concerns are real. And we're just gonna, if we pass this, give carte blanche to whole systems of cameras, which just means that the law doesn't apply to them. And whether or not the law has applied to them in the past, or has been like actually functionally applied, is not the conversation. So I am, I feel as a counselor and as a representative of this community, kind of disrespected by the way this process has been handled, by the way that this has been pushed on us, and by the fact that we haven't been able to get more people in the room. Personally, just as a member of this community. I don't think, I'm not prepared to weigh in on matters of Fourth Amendment concerns, and I don't think anyone up here is, except for maybe Eric or maybe Laura, right? They have some special training. None of us else do to make these types of decisions. I think that we have to make informed decisions, and all we've been told is that this will help us with crime. We're not seeing, you know, okay, what's the other impact going to be from my perspective? And again, it goes against the intent of the law that was passed back in, I believe it was 2013 or 2014. So that's just kind of my general thoughts. I think there's major concerns with this. My greatest preference would be to either amend or defer until we have a time to meet with the stakeholders, to have the conversations about the Fourth Amendment, about surveillance, about what that all means, a holistic conversation, before we start amending and changing and making carve-outs that are department-wide in what exists as like some of the best municipal digital privacy language in the United States. I have some ideas for amendments, but I want to see where this broader conversation goes.
I'd like to clarify, because I think you're incorrect in a lot of what you just said about the approach to this. First of all, the flock cameras are completely separate. We've been very clear that it's separate. We were clear at the last meeting that this has nothing to do with the flock cameras, and if we want to use the flock cameras, we would have to come back with another amendment. The council frequently will be in sections of the code and multiple times. The item you just approved is the second time you've been in that code section this year, so it's not uncommon for us to bring you a code section that we have talked about previously. That happens all the time. Again, you just approved an item that you had previously tinkered with earlier this year.
Yeah, absolutely, that's not my, that's not my concern or contention.
Well, you're alleging that staff is doing something that is backhanded here, or that is disrespectful to you and your position, and I think that's, I think that's false, and I take offense to that, because we've been very clear what this is about. This is about technology that we purchased for our parking decks, and we are trying to utilize the full functioning. The license plate readers can help. I outlined that at the last meeting. We've had parking staff here, we've let you know that they're available to talk about how exactly the license plate readers would be used. We've also been very clear that when we were looking at this code section, we thought more clarity would be good. We're not asking for any new allowances when it comes to law enforcement. We are recognizing that for the past 10 or more years, probably far more than 10 years, police have used the traffic cameras for investigative purposes, investigative purposes.
Unlawfully, probably.
Well.
Yeah. I mean, so again, I want to reiterate that I don't, I don't think that, I don't feel personally offended by any means, right? And I also don't think that there's any problem with coming back to an issue, but with this one, you know, we're coming up on the same types of concerns, the same types of Fourth Amendment concerns that we would have, the security, the privacy concerns that we would have with the flock cameras. And simultaneously, it's hard for me to separate the fact that we're not just saying parking cameras, we're saying every single camera operated by a department, and that kind of change is broad.
That's not correct. That is incorrect.
What's the language of the, of the, of the things?
Traffic engineering cameras are, are trapped, the cameras at the intersections.
Yeah.
We have far more cameras than that in our system. Our Public Works Department has far more cameras than just traffic engineers.
No, I understand, I understand, but it's also about license plate readers. Like, that's the thing, like, we're talking about whole systems.
In the parking decks, not on the traffic signals.
We don't say in parking decks. Like, that's the thing, if we, I'm down for specificity. My amendments are specifically relating to, okay, rather than saying a whole system or something in broad strokes, let's be specific, right? And I'm down to talk about that, but I want to see where the rest of this goes.
I think this is a good way to kind of try to clarify what the ordinance we're looking at amending does and what we want to do. Counselor Alter mentioned, you know, we're talking about parking enforcement. I understand that's the intent of this change. Just to be totally clear, and please, staff, jump in if I get any of this wrong, okay? The ordinance is to prohibit the use of certain systems and the storage or dissemination, publication, you know, passing along, whatever, all those things. Use and storage or publication of data from these certain systems for any particular purposes here, right? That's the, the law is prohibiting those uses, so that is a more strict standard than just what would be allowed based on if we didn't have this ordinance, right? So there are limits that we have imposed on ourselves based on this ordinance. I think we've been talking about it backwards sometimes as to what the law allows or doesn't allow. So the law is intended to restrict our own use of these particular technologies. On top of the law relating to these cameras that are the traffic and engineering specific in the proposed changes, and then, you know, all the other cameras that the city owns that are in buildings and on the ped mall, for example, and those types of things. We have all these different cameras, and the ones that are specified here are also governed by internal policy, which is what was adopted in consultation with the ACLU We are balancing very intentionally the privacy that our residents can expect when they are moving about our city, when they are in various places throughout the community. And I just feel like we're conflating a lot of these issues. So my objection to this at the last meeting is really based on exempting these whole systems, which is the traffic and engineering license plate readers and the traffic and engineering cameras, which, as I understand, are primarily at intersections, exempting them from the limitations that are in the ordinance, which then means they can be used for more, right? And the more concern is law enforcement purposes that we are trying to avoid in this ordinance in, that was adopted 11 years ago. Is that all accurate as far as, like, what the documents we're talking about are?
You want to go first?
Sure. Yes, I think that's largely true. The only caveat I would add is that the restriction right now, at least insofar as cameras is concerned, as opposed to the automated license plate readers, talks about cameras that are designed to identify, you know, a vehicle and its operator occupants. So that's why the cameras that we have up in the ped mall, for example, are clearly not affected by either the present ordinance or the proposed amendment to this ordinance. They can be used fully right now. So, yeah, otherwise, I think I agree with everything you've mentioned.
Just add clarifications. I'm not sure it matters a whole lot, but we are, we are talking two different departments. Transportation Services is one department. They operate our parking decks, and that is who is managing. That's, that's the primary reason that we brought this before you, is because the staff that manage the decks would like to use license plate reader technology, which we have built into our system, it's not being utilized now, to be more efficient and to add some customer and staff benefits. Traffic Engineering is a, is a division of the Public Works Department that takes care of our streets. So two separate departments, they're kind of getting pushed, pushed together here. The Traffic Engineering Department, the cameras that they have that are mounted on intersections at the, at the streetlights, they do not have license plate reader technology. It's separate than, it's unlike Transportation Services. Their cameras have license plate reader capability that's not being used. The cameras on the intersections do not have license plate reader capability, and Traffic Engineering does not need license plate reader techni, technology. They have no interest in getting license plate reader technology. And if we wanted to do license plate rec, license plate reader technology on the street, we would go through a system like Flock, which we previously talked to you about and agreed not to pursue further.
I still don't think that those arguments fundamentally engage with my personal concerns, which is that we would exempt anything, any camera, any license plate reader, from the department for any purpose without further consideration. That's, that's really my largest concern, is that we are talking about two different departments, and we are talking about futures, right? That's the breadth of what is requested here is really what concerns me. Like I said, I have an amendment, I have two amendments theoretically drafted that would be specific, would not say anything operated by Transportation Services or Traffic Engineering, but would still allow a similar effect, if that's something that people would be willing to consider. But I don't think giving departments broad exclusions, or exceptions, let's say, from this particular item is particularly wise.
And just to be clear, the Police Department can use the information from the traffic and engineering cameras, both the license plate readers and the decks, as well as the traffic and engineering, let's call them intersection, cameras for investigative purposes under this amendment, as well as under the internal policy, correct? So even though we're saying they're for different departments, the Police Department can use them, even if that was, I believe your opinion, Eric, was that that was violating our current ordinance.
Well, no, I think the opinion I expressed was that it was rather gray, and we frankly assumed that it was okay, and that's why we wanted to bring it forward, to make sure, well, again, the reason we brought this forward in the first place was to allow the parking folks to use the license plate readers, to deploy their technology that allows folks to use apps and so forth. But then we thought, well, as long as we're getting into this ordinance, let's just get some clarity about, you know, how we've been using this and make sure that council's okay with it. That's how I'd answer.
But if we really need this only to read the license plate for those parking, why we don't just make it specific to those parking? Like you said, we already have the system implemented there, but we are not using it. And now, if we approve this, this is, will give us, will give them the chance to start using it to read the license plate. And I think the main, the main hub or aim in this is to, for the people who park, they come and they don't pay for the parking, we will figure out who are them and they send them a bill, right? This is exactly what it is? Or we have another, like, thing we want to, another benefit or another aim we want to have beyond just the license plate readers?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Did you understand what I'm saying?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not.
I'm, I'm saying, like, you said we already have cameras implemented on those parking, right? Deck.
Our parking decks have what I'll call security cameras. They've had security cameras in them for years and years.
Yes.
New this year has been, when we, all the equipment that's at the gates, where you get your ticket and you put your ticket in, you get in and out, that's all brand-new equipment throughout our entire system, and that has license plate reader capability in it. That's not being utilized now, but it has the capability to do that, and we believe there's some benefits to doing that.
And what the benefit?
So Mark Rumel from our Transportation Services Department's here, and he can talk about how his department would utilize the LPRs.
Good evening. Mark Rumel, Associate Director for Transportation Services. And Jeff did a great job of explaining it at the last meeting, so it's probably going to echo a lot of what he said. So there's a couple different ways that we will use, or could use, these cameras. One is at a gated facility, like at the Capitol Street ramp, Dubuque Court. And it would tie a person's license plate to the ticket that they pulled to get in. Where that benefits us, and where it will really save us some, some efficiencies is, what it will do is, when someone exits a parking ramp, it will know that license plate is tied to a ticket, it will know the date and time that ticket was pulled to get in. So really, it will speed up the exit time for users trying to get out of the ramp. In addition to that, if someone loses their ticket, it will also know what time that plate came and left. So instead of charging them a lost ticket fee, which a lot of times folks are only parked for a couple hours, you know, we don't, we don't like to charge them all day, or a lost ticket fee, but without a ticket, that's our process right now. So this would know exactly what time they were there, charge them the right amount. We can also tie those license plates to permits in ramps. So instead of flashing your permit at the entrance and exit to leave, it will just read the plate, the gate will go up. This will also really increase our, our entrance queuing and the exit queuing at, at these gated facilities. In addition to that, it will provide us with some very valuable data that we're missing right now. We can manually do all this, but it would take hours and hours to do. But what we're missing is any cars that stay overnight. You know, there's some other duration times that it will help us kind of calculate, and just give us a lot of information to help us maybe model our parking operations to better suit everyone who uses it. You know, right now, our occupancies can be challenging at times, and we really are just trying to provide as much parking as we can for everyone in need, and this data would really help us with that. The other facilities that are not gated, like the Chauncey Swan ramp behind you, how this will help, it will read plates as vehicles enter the ramp. It will know, kind of give a grace period as far as if that person has a permit, or pays one of the pay stations, or pays our online application. If none of those happens, that vehicle would be parked illegally. We can, we walk, basically, those ramps right now and check this exact same information. It's just, this system would automate that process and really save us time. It would probably save us between an hour and two hours a day per ramp, or let us enforce that more frequently. But then, again, it will be tied to permits, it will give us some occupancy data that we don't have in those ramps because there's no gates. A lot of our occupancy data is either collected manually, or it's the gates that, that help us track how many cars are in those facilities. And where this will be really, really nice for everyone is, if those facilities get full, we can tie that occupancy number to a full sign, to an app, to the website, and let people know that they're full and provide other parking options for them. So it's kind of a really, there's more, a little more to it, but I mean, that's generally what it's going to do.
Yes, and I, I get the benefit of, like, reducing the time and all this, but to your point, you know, Council Burgers and Don, what do you mean by this is not only, like, this order, if we pass it today, is not only giving, like, with the benefit that they're talking about, and it's extended to the traffic, like, can you just explain that more?
Well, yeah, I think my objection before, and again tonight, is that it's exempting an entire department rather than a use, right? So departments can share information between each other, we don't know what the ultimate use is. If we could just narrow it to say that the exempted use, which again is exempting it from the prohibition, would be for what Mark described.
Which is awesome.
Like, I think we can be very, very narrow for that exemption, so that the prohibition doesn't apply to those particular uses, rather than the entirety of a department or an entirety of a department's system.
And that's what I was asking you. Why don't we just do it for the, and all this benefit that you talked about, if that the real aim from doing this, like, license plate readers?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm understanding the practical importance, unless what you're saying is you wouldn't want the police to use that for investigative purposes. So if we had a sexual assault that occurred in a parking ramp, and the victim said the vehicle left the ramp at 1:22 in the morning, if what you're describing would pro, preclude the investigators from pulling that data, then, then I think we're talking about two different things. But otherwise, if you want the, if you're okay with the police using these cameras for investigative purposes, then I'm not sure there's a difference between what we're discussing.
I would tend to agree with you. The concern is about systems. Systems versus individual instances. I sent you both just a couple minutes ago, the amendments that I would potentially put forward that are all about specifics, right? I think that every single thing, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Mark.
Everything, every single thing that Mark said is phenomenal. We're talking about saving money, we're talking about saving taxpayer dollars, saving their time so that they can do other things. I think that's great. I have no problems with any of that. But that, those benefits do not justify to me why an entire department or division of our government needs to be excluded from these specifications.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm just slow to understand this. I'm not understanding you.
I guess I'm asking the same question as Jeff. So are you saying that the police should not be able to exempt from this to, to be able to use it for investigative purposes?
That's not what I'm even talking about.
And I'm, I'm totally lost.
I think we're getting to the crux of the issue here, which is, this ordinance, I heard last meeting, that this ordinance should, as it was written, prevent certain uses by law enforcement, and that we were going ahead and doing it anyway. That's what I heard. Now I'm hearing it's gray. I don't know. I thought I, I heard the city manager say last meeting that if we continue down the path that I was advocating, then we'll tell the police they can't use cameras for, for those purposes. There are legitimate law enforcement purposes that fall within the existing ordinance and that fall within our even stricter internal policy that, that aren't at issue right here, right? That require probable cause, that require reasonable suspicion, or that require a warrant. Like, there are ways in which we can gather information from these sources that we don't have to just, like, pull the entire department out in order to make it comply. Like, I think what we need to say is, it, the whole thing is built, again, kind of backwards to how we're talking about it, we're trying to say what's okay, what's not okay. The ordinance starts with by saying what's not okay, and in order to make something okay, we need to add it back in, right?
Well, right. The present ordinance has a couple of exceptions, but ultimately, where most of it falls is in subsection B, that is 911-1B, which talks about storing, archiving, transmitting, sharing, publishing, granting, et cetera, et cetera, for data by, held by either the kind of cameras that we're talking about, or the license plate readers that we're discussing as well. And could it be used for legitimate law enforcement purposes at the present time? Again, we thought it was gray, we thought it was okay, but if, I'm understanding your interpretation, I think the answer would be only for traffic tickets, because I, you know, it would have to be a qualified traffic law violation as defined under this chapter, and that would be it. So the kind of, to use the example that city manager used about a sexual assault, I think the answer would be no. And, I mean, and let me be clear, I mean, I get the philosophical balance that we're discussing. It's about privacy versus security and being able to solve crimes. I mean, you know, let's, let's be frank, I mean, that's what the discussion is about. And so I think this council just needs to weigh, you know, I mean, you tell us, you know, where you'd like to be, and we'll, we'll write it up that way.
It would be different if this ordinance said these particular systems could be used for law, law enforcement purposes such as evidence of a sexual assault that has occurred. That would be different. That's not what we're talking about, right? The internal policy speaks to some of that kind of thing, as to the severity of, you know, a potential issue, or the type of incident that, that might, we might be responding to, and who gets to view the video, and how long it's stored. But if we're just talking about the ordinance, I really think it's unfair to frame it as, do you want us to be able to use these for a sexual assault or not? Because that's not the question. The question is, do we exempt an entire department's camera system from these prohibitions? And I'm saying we can make it narrow so that we don't have to, I mean...
This is literally confusion on my part. You were saying, so there's other mechanisms, like the evidence of a sexual assault would allow people to go to look at the video footage?
If that were the question, right?
But what if the evidence is, somebody comes and says, "I was assaulted," and I say, "Okay." And one, a piece of the evidence is in fact on the camera, right? I mean, isn't that self...
I'm just saying that's not...
How do you get the evidence if you can't see the camera?
That's not the question in front of us, right? The, the amendment that we are being asked to consider is to exempt an entire department, rather than make it more, more narrow.
And that's include any camera elsewhere, not only the reader, right?
No, this only refers to automatic license plate recognition systems and automatic traffic surveillance systems or device. Again, like, ped mall cameras are not at play, they can be used. The security cameras that the city manager mentioned that are present in some of the parking ramps, those can be used. The city, you know, around, the cameras around public buildings that we've already got for security purposes, those can be used, all at present. So the question is, you know, are you going to say the police can use all of those, except not the traffic engineering cameras and not the automatic license plate readers?
Right. And I think, just to kind of, kind of weigh in here, kind of, a lot of stuff has been discussed, and honestly, parts of it were confusing me as well, or it seems like maybe we're not always talking about the exact same things. But I think one of the concerns we had at the last meeting is that we wanted to, what I heard city staff articulate, to kind of summarize my understanding, and that can be corrected if I have it wrong, was that, for instance, the use by police of traffic cameras in order to look into incidents which may provide evidence, or maybe exculpatory evidence, of crimes is something that was not specifically addressed in the early, earlier ordinance, which was, as I read it, I think I read it a little differently than some of my fellow council members, was specifically saying we don't want automatic traffic stop signs and speeding sorts of things, which I, I agree, you know, we, I'm not a fan of those either. But then, it was enough of a gray area, but since we're going back in here, wanted to clear- clear up the, what city staff was seeing as ambiguity in our current standards. So had been using it for a long time, there were, we do have internal policies in place, which have been talked about, and I think we got a, thank you, we got an email describing those policies, I think, earlier in the past week. But one of the concerns was, in the act of cleaning up any ambiguity, it opened the door to, like, if we had voted this down, that it would have shut off the ability that's already being used, because then we cleared up the, any ambiguity, any gray area, and made it a black or white, and put the use of investigators looking at these traffic cameras, we'll call it intersection cameras, I guess, would probably be a better way to think about it, that the concern was that would go away, that they would no longer be able to use that. And if I have my calendar correct, and hopefully I do, and apologies if I don't, but we haven't met for, it's been three weeks since our last meeting, in that time, we had a shooting downtown, in which not only PedMall cameras, but traffic cameras were involved and utilized by investigators to see who was coming and going, and looking into that particular thing. So it's not just, it's not just a, in my mind, it's not simply a made-up scenario, literally issues of public safety, in which, you know, I personally would, am glad to have investigators able to use all of these resources. And if we were using the in-deck license plate readers, if they identify a suspect and want to see where was this person, were they parked there, when did they leave, can we look on that camera and see, was that car full of people? When we're talking about something, and we were literally millimeters away from a mass casualty shooting, incident. There was somebody shot, and that's horrible, but I mean, there were, what, 10 casings recovered in downtown PedMall, crowded area, literally, we almost had a mass shooting a block from here, two blocks from here. And to, so whatever we do, and if we want to go ahead and take a look at some of these issues, which I also, the privacy issues I think are also very important, it is very important to me that we don't accidentally cut off something that is currently being used, or suspend that use for a period of time, because there's no evidence that there has been, that these are not appropriate uses. I think they are appropriate uses in terms of looking into investigations. With the readers, even the license plate, we've given some examples, and some were brought up last time, if we have a missing child, if we have an Amber Alert, you know, there's a situation too, where I'm okay with police having access to, like, hey, if one of our readers picks up a license plate that's being searched for because there's been a deducted child, I want to make sure we don't accidentally cut off that as we look at these other things. As a way, as a proposed way to move forward on this, when we talked about these internal policies, which I think address many of the concerns, I would be very open, and I might just be one of seven, but if there are others that agree, very open at separately looking at a resolution, or something like that, that codifies some of these things. And having looked at them, the one thing that I would add to that would be some sort of a logging, automatic logging mechanism, similar to what our hospital systems use with, you know, when anybody logs into patient data. So that, even if, you know, we only can keep, because of the storage, cost of storage, you know, all this massive amount of video stuff for a certain amount of time, logs are we can keep for a long time. So we'd see who was logging in, and when, and for how long. To me, that would be a reasonable safeguard, and a check and balance on the ability of our investigative law enforcement efforts. And then if they were, if somebody was misusing it, if we did have somebody abusing their access, you know, that would be trackable, and that would be something that we could, you know, as a city, as a department, any department, doesn't have to be, you know, if somebody from a different department was looking to track somebody that they shouldn't be trying to track, anything like that, it is nightmare scenarios, we'd have some sort of a record of that. But I would, I would prefer to see us deal with that on its own, as opposed to, you know, again, I don't want to vote this down and end up causing, you know, an unintended consequence that could have some serious ramifications at any given moment. We don't know when, right? So we can't predict that. So that's, that's my concern three weeks ago, it's my concern now, and it's one of the reasons why I'll be voting in favor of this. And just for the record, the stuff about the use of the traffic and making that smoother, that's great. I have lost a ticket before, and only been in the ramp for an hour or two, it probably fell out of my pocket at a store I was at, and I had to pay the full 24 hours, and so, boy, that would have been, that would have been nice. And I think one thing that wasn't mentioned tonight, but is if we have some sort of illegal long-term parking taking place, where they parked there for several days, and then just say, "I lost my ticket, only had to pay for one day," we would also be cleaning up some of that, so. So, yeah, so I, that's kind of my stuff in a nutshell. If I have, if I have gotten any of that synopsis wrong, please, I stand willing to be corrected.
Heard, valid, in a lot of ways, agree. The question that I continue to return to in this discussion is, why do we have to be so broad to achieve this? I think we can achieve the result that Sean, you're talking, apartment counselor Harmsen, that you're talking about, with a narrower version of the ordinance, which I've sent, and if people are willing to entertain that, I think we can talk about it.
I guess one of my, I guess one of my questions is, what is that narrow version? I did hear Counselor Burgis mention going in and specifically stating what would be, what I understood to be allowable for the police department to investigate?
Yeah.
Like, we would list, is that what you're referring to?
That's not part of mine. That's Counselor Burgis, but the one that I have put together, there's two sections to this. I'll just read the sections and I'll describe it. So, for the first section, under Title IX, Automatic License Plate Recognition System, striking the proposed language, replacing that after databases with, I guess I'll just read the whole thing. "A computer-based system, systems, that captures an image of license plates and converts it into a data file to be compared with databases or hot lists generated by various law enforcement agencies, and which produce on alert when there is a match between collected license plate data and those databases. Municipal license plate readers located at the following locations, used exclusively for the purpose of facilitating parking enforcement, shall be excluded from this definition." We list the addresses of where these cameras are located, the parking ramps, we're good, we achieved the goal. The second, I would, I would consider these separately, because I do think that they're separate topics, so that would be the first one. Automatic Traffic Surveillance or System of, Automatic Traffic Surveillance System or Device. A device or devices, including but not limited to, a camera system, systems, that use any electronic, photographic, video, digital, or computer system designed for the purpose of producing a photograph, microphotograph, videotape, digital video, or other recorded image or digital record of a vehicle or its operator, and/or its operator, and/or its occupants, that is used to establish identity or ownership of a vehicle and/or identify its operator, owner, or occupants. Next, municipal traffic cameras located at the following locations, used exclusively for the purpose of traffic engineering, assessment of road conditions, and traffic facilitation shall be excluded from this definition. And we list the locations of where the traffic cameras are. That also gives counsel an additional way to say, okay, when we want to bring more of these traffic cameras in, we gotta add, we have to think about this whole conversation again, we gotta add that to the ordinance. If we want to have more automatic license plate readers that are introduced into our other parking ramps, fantastic, but we have to have a conscious deliberative conversation about those effects, and be deliberate in putting those in here, not just leaving that out to whatever system or department.
I guess my question would be, the first paragraph is kind of what I thought was, the first whereas, is where I thought the biggest concern was, because that addresses law enforcement. So that's not what you're referring to, so that's not even what you're amending. All you're, all you're stating is, you want it listed where these are located.
Yeah, I want the exclusion to be not with the division or the department, but with the actual location.
So...
And purpose for some bits.
So you're thinking, all right, could it be more, because we don't want to keep coming back to this, could it be more, in any parking ramp? Because there could be other parking ramps that, because I think if we're a little too prescriptive, we'll be back a little more often?
I think that would make sense. Yeah, like any municipal, or like publicly-owned parking ramp?
And if I'm understanding correctly, it does not, because I heard one of your words earlier, it doesn't effectively change. It was, you know, just something that you wanted to reword. So if I'm understanding this correctly, and, you know, correct me if I'm incorrect, that part of what you're proposing to amend, if we have, is still going to be the broader terms, is really limited to the traffic engineering division, because it can be on, I mean, we can add more cameras on any street. The purpose is going to still be used the same. And if it's, you know, any city parking ramp, because that's the only, you know, place where the readers in this moment would be used, then I think I would be comfortable, if I understand, it does not effectively change, you know, the intent of this ordinance.
The intent of what I've said here, and we can work out the actual words or whatever, the intent of it is, it's not a department or division exclusion, it's for the purposes that we're using it for, and it's clear in that regard. Like, it's location-specific. If that means we talk about parking ramps, awesome, I'm fine with that.
The only thing I would, and I hate to opine on stuff I just saw for the first time at a public meeting, but, you know, I see the wording, "used exclusively for the purpose of facilitating parking enforcement." So I'm reading that to say, no police use, ever.
We can strike that.
Well, I mean, I guess we can, as you said, we can work through the details at a later reading, but in order to do so, I would need to understand what the council intent is, which is, is it that these kind of devices shall never be used for the police, regardless of the kind of severity of crime, or regardless of the use, or is it something different than that?
Even in the context, that wouldn't say that. Because used exclusively, no, so it's not saying they are to be used exclusively, it's saying that they are used exclusively, and that they're not subject to these limitations, which are then subject to the policy, which are then subject to other bits. So it's saying that it's a parking camera. A parking camera can be, is excluded from these definitions.
So it sounds like, actually, the question where we're at now is, is it acceptable by this council to have the police be able to use the technology that's in the parking ramps to investigate crimes?
And intersections.
And intersections. So, are we agreed there?
I am comfortable with the parking ramps. Yeah, that's really the first thing that I want to put forward, is just like the parking ramp language, and having that addressed, because I do think that that's a valuable thing that we should offer our community. I do think it will save money, I do think it will save time.
So if that's the case, then you've helped move, sort of, us from broad to specific, which I appreciate. Are people comfortable with us giving Eric that direction, so that the language can be crafted by Eric?
Well, yeah, again, I need to know what it is you're hoping to achieve.
That we are comfortable, majority council is comfortable with the use of parking and traffic cameras to be used?
Or traffic...
For investigative purposes when a crime has been committed.
I don't even think that the changes that he's recommending address that at all. It doesn't affect it at all. What I understand it to be is just stating that the license plate recognition systems will be in city-operated decks, and that's, you know, if we build a new deck, and, you know, they want to put it there, they can't, of course, we have the budget, we have to approve that budget. So that's what I understand. And then, as far as like, the streets and the traffic division cameras, I mean, really, that can be added, because we're going to be having new streets, you know, new thoroughfares, and where a camera might go up. So, if that is the change, I don't see any issues with that change, and I will be comfortable working with the language, because it does not affect that first whereas, and all of the concerns that have come up about law enforcement having access, when there is a true need to do some investigation. So, if that is the change, I'm comfortable, we have one more reading, so I think I'm comfortable approving this, and then next, one will have both this ordinance and the old one, which we can still determine, I mean, we'll have the revised one, and council can determine, and they can still edit or revert back to the original ordinance.
Well, I guess I'd have two comments, one's procedural and one substantive. I'll start with the substantive. My concern about, and again, this is a very convoluted ordinance, and there's kind of exceptions to exceptions, and it's tricky. But my concern is, and there's a Latin phrase in a legal canon about statutory interpretation that basically says this, the statement of one serves to the exclusion of the others. So if you say, you know, that municipal license plate readers located at the following locations, used exclusively for the purpose of facilitating parking enforcement, shall be excluded from this definition, that would likely be read by court to say, "and for no other purpose." Which I would interpret to mean, police can never use those.
And if I understood correctly, when that was brought up, Counselor Don said, you know, that language does not, he didn't want to, he's okay without, with excluding those exclusions.
Okay. Well, again, I guess I just need to know, you know, what council wants to achieve. I mean, if council wants the police to never be able to use these, then, you know, please let us know, and I'll write it up that way.
Not talking about police, really not talking about police.
Well, I guess I need to ask directly, do you want the police to be able to use these two systems?
What I'm trying to say with this automatic license plate reader, I'm just talking about that for right now, right? I am comfortable with that.
You're comfortable with what, sorry?
The automatic license plate readers in parking facilities being excluded as part of this ordinance. If that means that, like, law enforcement cooperation can come from that, that's fine, it's the parking ramps. But we need, I think we need to be able to use the equipment that we have, I think that there is value in that. I have more complex feelings about the cameras, so I'm trying to, you know, do the best that I can to make sure that this is as good as possible. And if the cameras are a different conversation, that's a different conversation, but just thinking about the license plate readers, I want to be specific, not departments, specific locations, whether that's parking ramps, or whatever language. If there's stuff in here that causes problems, I'm fine with that. The goal is parking ramps, not divisions or departments. The specific locations, not divisions or departments, not broad, narrow rather than broad.
Well, right, I guess, well, I didn't get to my procedural question, and I'll address that first, and then come back to this, which is that, I don't think we can, it seems like the kind of things that we're discussing now would have to be considered substantive changes, and so I don't think we could make this change just at the last reading, and then say, "Good, here we go." I think we probably need to start fresh, which we can do. But my concern about what Counselor Don, you're indicating now, is you're mentioning just parking ramps, and I believe Transportation Services use, uses automatic license plate readers for parking purposes on the street, to look for street storage, that kind of thing. So if you were to just say, "at the parking ramps," I think that would, that would make, that would make a change for them. Yeah, we do have a mobile license plate reader that they use on-street.
We can exclude that as well. I'd be comfortable with that. I think, like, I don't necessarily agree with everything that we're, that this policy will bring about, but I do believe that narrow, if we're going to do something, narrower is a lot better than broader. So if we talk about, if you want to put something in for that too, I'm totally cool with that.
But substantively, allow for that and for nothing else, so, police couldn't use it for...
No, I'm not saying...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not saying that, no. No, so I'm saying, this is like a true exception, is the parking stuff, it's a true exception.
Okay, so...
For the, for...
They can use those for their normal purposes, and if the police would benefit from the data that's collected for investigative purposes, you're okay with that?
Under this language, correct. Yes, not my language, right? Yes, not my language, right, that's just like me trying to communicate.
I think I'm with you now. And that's with automatic license plate recognition systems. What you're feeling about the traffic surveillance system?
It's more complex.
What?
It's more complex. I mean, my proposal there, I would, I would put out, again, just continuing to make it, I would prefer that it be specific and not broad. That would be the biggest thing that I would say, is if we are going to make these changes, and that is seemingly to be the case, right, I would much prefer that this action be narrow than broad. So if we can narrow the, like, what is specific in traffic cameras, whether that's by location, intersection, whatever, that's the kind of way that I thought of it. That's the way that this is, my amendments are being presented.
All right, so we would list the current locations of the traffic intersections at which these automatic traffic surveillance system cameras now exist and say that those are excluded from the definition of automatic traffic surveillance systems or devices?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
And therefore fall outside the prohibition.
Correct.
Right, which I think was the intent of this amendment originally, yes?
It is.
Okay, so is it still a substantive change?
That's what I was confused to.
Well, I think if I'm understanding you correctly, and we're not using language like "used exclusively for the purposes of traffic engineering," for example, which is included in your proposed amendment here, then I would want to think about it a little more carefully, but I think so. I can certainly follow up with a, you know, with a confidential memo.
Yeah, the practical effect that I'm intending is very similar to what's proposed. It is just, it is narrow, not broad. That's, that's the thing.
If I can interrupt, and with all due respect, I think at this point, we're now doing an incredible amount of wordsmithing on one council member's proposed amendments. We've had three weeks since our last meeting. And in that time, and maybe between now and the next meeting, would be a good time to put this wordsmithing and to go through and have the careful analysis of unintended consequences, which is kind of what we've been doing here the last several minutes. But I don't know that this is, like, this is really the right forum to do that. We've mentioned what our, some of our values are, which is, I think, fine. But I would just, I think we need to be any close to, like, moving forward with this issue for the evening.
I think also, if we want to go with the amendment, can we just, like, instead of, like, negotiating now, if we have a consent for the amendment, we have more, like, enough people, can we just defer the second consideration in the next meeting?
I think what I've heard from maybe the city attorney's latest understanding is that he will send us a confidential memo, you know, kind of reflecting the intent, which is, I don't see as problematic, and I don't really see as changing the intent of this ordinance. So I'm comfortable, you know, approving tonight, knowing that there will be some adjustment in a very few, it's three lines, it's six lines, that is going to be amended. So I'm comfortable. I understand, you know, the concerns of putting this to the floor. But we also know that this is a major concern by many in the community. But I am comfortable because it really does give the same intent. The only thing I would probably still say that, you know, challenge Counselor Dunn to is that, you know, the traffic cameras, we're going to continue to add main thoroughfares. And so I wouldn't want the council, you know, staff to come back every time there's a thoroughfare that they want to add a camera. So that is something that I would just say, you know, the language should be inclusive to future decks and, you know, that type of stuff.
But saying that, like, just follow up with that, do you need time to craft that language?
Well, yes, I mean, again, if there's a consensus of counselors who would like me to draft a different version based on what I've heard from Counselor Dunn today, then I can certainly do that. I don't know if that's the will of the majority of council or not.
I mean, I would be comfortable.
Yes, I think it's majority.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I mean, I would be comfortable, I don't know where other people are.
I mean, as long as, I just want to be, yes, I recognize also, sort of full circle, that it's like exceptions upon exceptions, and we need to parse, pull them apart so that we're clear about the intent of this ordinance. I simply, I do not want unintended consequences that the language, in trying to clarify for traffic camera, for the two different departments for which they are primarily used, for parking and for the traffic engineering, that the ability for the police to not use it for investigative purposes or crimes that are committed somehow unintentionally goes away. And I guess that's the place where we were most contentious and divided at its core the last time that we talked. So before I say, "Yes, I'm good with these minor changes," I want to make sure that I'm not agreeing to something that I did not agree to last time.
Sure, and I would just.
I want to make sure that we, and it is perfectly fine if we're, so I just want to make sure that that's what we are agreeing to, that there is still the
I want to.
The ability for the police to use these cameras for investigative purposes when a crime has been committed.
I'm going to actually agree with all of that and just add, I think we want to make sure we aren't, again, kind of back to our city attorney's point of, if it's not included, did the courts assume excluded? I think there is probably investigative, absolutely for sure. There might be other public safety things, for example, rerouting traffic around a major accident or some other obstruction that is real-time, it's not really investigative, but that kind of traffic control would be a valid public safety use. And I want to make sure we don't accidentally, you know, so, just so we're thinking of those things too, like, we don't want to, in good intention and good faith, create a situation where we actually end up putting some of our people at greater risk because we've taken away a valid public safety tool at some point, which investigative traffic, which kind of ties into the traffic, but there might be other things, so.
So then can I ask a question of Eric? Does that become a substantive? In your, in your opinion, is it better to defer so that, because the substance would change enough that we should have the time to digest that and allow for that? Or is this, should we defer?
I think you should.
Is enough going to change in the way that you're envisioning the discussion and the direction that hopefully we're giving you? That this would substantially change the ordinance?
Well, if I'm understanding what the will of council is at this point, what I'm hearing, and I hope you'll correct me if I'm hearing it wrong, is that you're okay with police continuing to use the data from both the automatic license plate recognition systems and the automatic traffic surveillance systems, traffic engineering cameras, for police investigative and/or traffic kind of purposes as long as we list their locations and allow, and, by the way, I would suggest that that just be adopted by council by resolution, and so you didn't have to have three readings every time you did that. But if, if I'm understanding that that's the will of council, I would say that that is not substantive.
And anytime there's a license plate recognition system coming in the future beyond what's already there, we're going to be notified about it. So maybe not the traffic cameras, because, I mean, but, yeah. So I am comfortable with.
Are we envisioning like a 10-page document of every intersection in Iowa City?
No.
No, I'm hearing you say, like, every place there's an intersection with cameras. I mean, can we not just simplify it by saying, "A camera shall," if you're concerned about the location in that way, "shall only be at intersections and parking ramps." I mean, I don't know what the actual thing is here, but you see what I'm saying? Like, I just want to make sure we're not just saying we need, like, I mean, that just seems, that seems like micromanagement purgatory.
Yeah, I think we can workshop the language and the, like, how, the mechanism, but I think we have the, I think you understand the intent.
I think so. If council agrees with how I just summarized it, then, then, yeah, I can write that up.
Yeah, I am.
As a resolution.
I would suggest that we adopt the listing of traffic engineering camera locations by resolution, so you didn't have to have three readings every time. This would still, of course, require the ordinance amendment, which is three readings, yeah.
Oh, we got to make a motion.
Well, no, that's just direction. I think if we're.
We have a motion on the table, don't we?
Don't we have the motion to actually amend it?
Well, yeah, you've got a motion to approve.
We don't have an amendment in front of us.
You know, as it is now, you can do a couple of things. You can, of course, defer and, you know, wait for me to do the wordsmithing that's been described and presented to you. Or you can do a second reading now and approve it and still get the wordsmithing, and then do a motion to amend next time. And again, if we're in agreement that, you know, that what I've written is consistent with the council's wishes, and if I'm understanding it correctly, I would not consider that substantive, so you could just move ahead with your, you know, you would move to amend at that meeting and then could approve it and be done.
Yeah, counsel, I would suggest that you can take whatever position on, you know, the current ordinance, but we've given majority direction for the city attorney to do an amendment. And I would suggest that at our next meeting, a motion for amendment is offered. And then it is up to the council if those amendments they agree with, and it's, you know, vote it for the amendments, or if it's not, then we'll have the original one that is here before us, and then council can vote on it, they can defer it, have conversations about what additional amendment they want. But I would encourage us to vote tonight and do the amendments next time when we see the document.
To vote for it as it is or to defer it?
That's your choice, to vote for it as it is. But we do know that there'll be an amendment coming, which I'm comfortable with what I've heard tonight, knowing that that amendment, for me, would be, you know, approved. But of course, we have to see the language.
Since this is the second consideration, I really prefer that to possibly, like, defer it for next meeting and, you know, just as the city attorney to come up with.
We defer a lot of things, Mayor Protem, I would just encourage, but I hear you, I respect that.
But you know, like, instead of, like, now vote for it as it is before, vote or so, why don't defer it next time, we all vote for it, and maybe even, like, may it two vote together, something like that.
Yeah.
I'm uncomfortable with any direction personally.
I want to put a motion to defer it.
Second.
Okay, moved by Sala, second by Dunn. Any conversation on this by council?
I think even if we move forward and approve this tonight, you know, we still have that third reading. If we want to defer it at that point, that we certainly can do so if we think that the changes aren't too substantive to move forward at that time. But I'll be, I'll be voting against deferment just to move us down this path one more step, knowing that we can still step off the path next time if we so choose.
Yeah, and I think I'm with you on that, that we can defer it at our third meeting. So roll call, please, or that's just a voice vote, a voice?
Undeferment.
Vote for deferment. All in favor to defer this item until our next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
Nay.
So motion fails, three to four. Okay, so we're at our original motion, knowing that this will be voted on with some amendments. We're expecting that from our city attorney. So with that being said, I'm going to say roll call.
Dunn?
No.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Motion passes four to three. Thanks, councilors, and thanks, everybody, for coming on this item. We're going to move on to item number 10E, which is termination of Sycamore and First Avenue Tiff District and ordinance, repealing ordinance numbers zero, double zero, dash, three nine four seven and zero three, dash, forty ninety, providing for the division of taxes levy on taxable property in the Sycamore and First Avenue urban renewal area in the Iowa, in the city of Iowa City. Iowa pursuit to section four oh three, point nineteen of the Code of Iowa. This is the second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Pat.
Okay, moved by Dunn, second by Mo. Anyone from the public like to discuss the topic of 10E? And if you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dunn, second by Sala. Roll call, please.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. 10F, termination of North Gate Corporate Park Tiff District and ordinance, repealing ordinance numbers ninety-nine, dash, thirty-eight seventy-nine and zero five, dash, forty-one fifty, providing for the division of taxes levy on taxable property in the North Gate Corporate Park urban renewal area in the city of Iowa City, Iowa pursuit to section four oh three nineteen, four oh three, point nineteen of the Code of Iowa. This is a second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Sala.
Moved by Dunn, second by Sala. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dunn, second by Mo. Roll call, please.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. 10G, termination of Scott Six Tiff District and ordinance, repealing ordinance number ninety-seven, dash, thirty-seven ninety-six, providing for the division of taxes levy on taxable property in the Scott Six urban renewal area in the city of Iowa City, Iowa pursuit to section four oh three, point nineteen of the Code of Iowa. This is second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Sala.
Moved by Dunn, second by Sala. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dunn, second by Mo. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10H is the termination of Sycamore and First Avenue urban renewal area and plan. Resolution terminating the Sycamore and First Avenue urban renewal plan for the Sycamore and First Avenue urban renewal area and in the Sycamore and First Avenue urban renewal area. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second, Sala.
All right, moved by Alter, second by Sala. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. 10I, termination of the North Gate Corporate Park urban renewal area and plan. Resolution terminating the North Gate Corporate Park urban renewal plan for the North Gate Corporate Park urban renewal area and in the North Gate Corporate Park urban renewal area. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mo, second by Alter. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. 10J, termination of Scott six urban renewal area and plan. Resolution terminating the Scott six urban renewal plan for the Scott six urban renewal area and in the South six urban renewal area. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Alter.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please raise your virtual hand online. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call please.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10K, adopting tax increment financing policy. This is a resolution adopting city of Iowa City tax increment financing policy. This was deferred from our last meeting of July 16th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mo, second by Alter. All right, and public, anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. And we will give three minutes. Thank you, welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Good evening, my name is Martha Norbeck. I'm from Iowa City. And my understanding is that the proposal has not changed since the last meeting. I also understand that this change is linked to the impending RFP for Lynn Street. And I'm concerned that we're trying to rush a policy change for a single project. And I will point out that in this evening, that policy created in 2017 is currently in the RFP. So that means minimum, that has a seven year staying power. So you make a decision for one project, move that aggressively just for this one project that's coming up. That seems short sighted. Like this has big implications because this is what the developers see when they open that RFP. That's the policy they're seeing. That is your opening salvo as a negotiator is that we expect a lead silver with twenty, with eight energy points. That's what you're saying is your, is your minimum. You don't start a negotiation saying, well, son, we'd like you to get D minus. No, you want your son to get an A. Oh, you only got a B, well, that's a bummer, but we understand stuff happen. But you don't start off asking for a D minus. And that's kind of what the new, the policy changes are proposing. And that makes me really concerned. So when I looked, I sent a letter on the 29th to council. I put a lot of time into defining key terms because you can't talk about this if you don't know what decarbonization means. It's hard to understand if the proposal has value. So I encourage you to read that and consider it. It also lists a variety of third party verification systems that don't just address buildings. They address infrastructure, existing buildings, major renovation. These can be applied to historic properties. And, and I will point out a very great project that is a result of this current policy. It's the East College Street development with Riverside and, and Reunion Brewing and the Nest. And that project initially, when they did the first design, it was a lot of glass. And then they did an energy model and they're like, whoops, we can't get the eight energy points. What are we going to do? So they actually revised the proposal. I will also say that that development team didn't bring silver to the table. They said, we'll give you platinum. And then they went to sign it and they said, okay, we'll give you gold. So that's evidence of the current policy working. I'm not saying keep the current policy. I'm cool with changing it. I'm not resisting that. I'm just saying be thoughtful and measured and take your time. So I encourage you, send it back to the Economic Development Committee. Talk to other people who are experienced in this world. Think about the value of third party verification. Make it measurable, assertive, and verifiable.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
Happy to start with this one. I feel like I've spent a lot of time trying to understand the objections. And I appreciate the community input that, a very, very thoughtful memo about all of these different sustainability metrics. I think it's important to understand, I think the only critique we currently have or that we're considering is about specifically the sustainability revisions. I think the other revisions are, I haven't heard anything from anybody or any objections. And I think more specifically, the crux of the concern is, is LEED and specifically the third party verification. And like, that's, that's the concern. Now, I see we do have our Sarah Gardner from Climate Action here. But when this policy was written and TIF was put in there, I understand the history of that now after talking to a lot of people. But I also think we have some history of it existing for a while and we have TIF, or excuse me, we have projects that are built to the LEED standard in Iowa City. And I am, I still remain concerned that LEED isn't getting us the level of sustainability that we really want. And it's not allowing the negotiators at the city, which would include Climate Action, to actually weigh in and say, actually, for this specific site, for this specific use in this city, we really want you to focus on this sustainability metric or we really want to do that. And so I, I, I don't, I mean, to me, it's just really, it's a very, very narrow question for us. Is how much value do we put in, you know, LEED, which is, which includes third party verification and makes it very simple for all of us to say yes or no. It's a point system. We don't have to think too much about sustainability. It's easy for the staff. Or do we want to figure out a way to empower our Climate Action staff to do the vetting and tell us, yes, this is sustainable or not? And I, I'm kind of flexible right now as towards how do we get to a point where we have flexibility and trust our professional staff to be at the negotiating table and to make value judgments and to report back to us on, on what we really want and what specific things that serve this city are. So I'd love to, unless I'm missing something big, I think that's the singular issue. And I did not feel like it was appropriate to send a memo to council with all kinds of revisions moments before the meeting. I just didn't want to do that. I have stuff written up, but I also feel like I want to hear from everyone on whether or not this specifically LEED and specifically third party verification is something that we need or if we want to spend our money differently empowering Climate Action to make those kinds of judgment calls and perhaps consult with third parties also as part of the process.
I think you and I, Josh, talked about this at length. I think that that, I think as long as we're talking about third party verification and third party like certification, like that the plans and all of that is lining up, I think that's the direction that I would go as well. I, I think the flexibility is, is good if we can, we can do it as you're, as you're describing. Yeah, very open to third party verification as a, as a requirement for these types of environmental sustainability standards.
And I know that we've just gone through sort of like, you know, elaborate wordsmithing, so I'm not suggesting specific language. But I continue to say, is there a way in which there can be yes and in this TIF language to signal to a developer about metrics that we find valuable and important while not limiting it to simply third party potentially? But to, to indicate, you know, that these have to be credible metrics. Credible, if it is third party, it's credible. Even if it's like, you know, some new way of measuring, it can't be that it's like my Uncle Bob down, you know, the street who has this really cool machine that measures this stuff, right? It has to be credible and, and valued within Climate Action communities and from experts, right? I am mindful of what Martha said where it's like they'll read it and they said, this is what we need, right? This is, and so we want to give direction to say, we take this very seriously. These are our values. Is there a way in which we can indicate and say such as these types of, you know, verifiable, credible, third party, you know, sorry, I'm repeating myself, but verifications and similar newer means that can achieve our goals. Again, I'm not trying to suggest wordsmithing, but I'm hoping that the spirit of what I'm getting at is there so that it indicates to a developer, we want flexibility, I want, I want the city to be able to negotiate in good faith and have as many tools as possible to get the best possible outcome. And I want to give that, the, you know, allow for developers to understand what we're trying to get at. And so is there a way in which we can kind of say such as?
I mean, we can just also say, like, we still think LEED is a place to start, but come to us with the proposal and how we get there and trust the staff to sort of say, hey, we're going to use this alternate system. And I think the other part of this that I said last meeting that's really important is every single TIF project comes before us. Like, we'll have a chance to say no and the public will have a chance to say, no, 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 you have screwed up. You've been taken advantage of. Somebody has made up a fake sustainability metric that you should not say yes to.
Yeah.
Like this policy has no teeth. We don't have to have this policy. We will still see, right, every single TIF project that comes before us. So I, I guess I keep coming back to that also is like, we'll get a staff report on these things. If a TIF comes to us, it'll be, I know, a long process for us to consider that and we'll have time for the community to see it and investigate it and write their concerns to us if they don't like it.
Given the concerns with, I guess, if it's fair to characterize it as like, if it were only LEED silver, maybe that's not good enough. Is that a fair characterization of, I guess, Josh, even your concerns?
My concern with LEED is you end up missing opportunities, I think. I think we have TIF LEED projects in Iowa City. We have TIF, we have LEED projects that the city procured not through TIF because they're publicly owned projects. And I look at those projects and through my eyes, I see missed opportunities for full building electrification, for a really careful analysis of exactly what materials are used to construct that building and a really thoughtful discussion about how we can reduce the embodied carbon. Like, we're just, those are the things that I, I would really love for that high level conversation to happen. Again, at this, at this professional staff level that we now have, because we didn't have that capacity in 2017, right? And now we have it. And we also understand that maybe that's a cost of the development is to sort of say, when it's way over your head, just get a third party involved. A licensed engineer, a licensed architect can do that kind of vetting if we feel uncomfortable or feel like there's some sort of opportunity that we're not certain if it's a good one or not.
I was really sensitive to what Jeff said last meeting of like, put whatever standards we want and we'll pay for it, right? Like, that the, the way that we use this as a tool is to require higher standards of development than would otherwise appear, right? And we know that those cost more and we should expect that the gap may be larger if our standards are even higher. And so I guess I would just say to my colleagues, I, I am not at all opposed to being really aggressive with whatever we think the floor is because it may be that the TIF ask becomes a little bit bigger. But if we're talking about a hundred year building and a couple million dollars, that seems like a reasonable trade off if that's what our staff think we should do. You know, I, I guess I just want to make sure we're seeing the tool in that way rather than just saying no development would happen but for the TIF, which is how a lot of cities use it. We're saying we want this kind of quality if you're, if we're going to be financing that for you.
Fully agree with that sentiment. And there's going to be tons of trade offs to make too with all of these proposals. Like, I want that ability for staff to say, hey, this is a huge opportunity for some other thing that's in our strategic plan that we desperately want. And.
Yeah, I think that's the, the caution I would give you when, when, when you're thinking about this. And really, whatever way you want to go is, is going to be fine with staff. But we're not just going to be negotiating with the developer of any project on just the sustainability aspects of the building, right? We're going to be wanting potentially affordable housing, potentially subsidized small business space, potentially subsidized space for a social service or an arts organization. Any number of things have, that have a cost have to be negotiated. So to your point, there's these trade offs and then, oh, by the, and, you know, we, we have to pay for it too. And the, the gap's not unlimited. We can't do forty year TIFs or fifty year TIFs, right? We, we have to find an acceptable amount of rebates. How much, how long are we willing to rebate somebody and withhold those taxes from our general fund, from the school district, from the county? Those are all things that you have to weigh. So it's okay if we want to have the highest sustainability standard you can place in there, but it may be to the detriment of other public benefits that, that, that you prioritize if you make it a very hard target. And that's where I would enjoy the flexibility is because when we get to the negotiating table, there's going to be seven or eight variables. And I'd like to be able, and Rachel alongside me would like to be able to move those variables around and get to a point where I think the public would be really excited about a project, but also one that is financially viable and could potentially be paid off in ten or fifteen or whatever the acceptable amount of time would be.
The, the one thing that I would also bring up is I, I have a strong aversion to self certification or self policing. I don't know how we, or if council is, is amenable to some type of language in there that says that we are looking for something other than self certification. I don't know if that's our certification or if it's a third party certification or what. But generally, I, for, for sustainability questions with this type of policy, I, I'm averse to self certification.
You mean by the developer?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, I would love to be in a position in the future where our, our certification could be done by our city, where we could do that work. We're not there yet. We don't have those resources, but we can contract those resources out from third parties. We, city attorney office will hire another attorney if there's something outside of their area of practice. So I don't have a problem with that. I assume that just becomes, again, a cost of the TIF and the development of that proposal.
Yeah, I mean, typically in these situations, the, the burden to, to hire a third party certification professional would be on the developer.
Yeah.
Right? So, but kind of like we do with the, the financial aspect, we hire a third party to help us review the financial aspects of a, of a project. We could hire somebody to certify that, but at least off the cuff here, I'd be more comfortable with the, the developer hiring the third party to, to verify the work that's being done.
This is a little out of order, but again, the, the reason that I wanted to bring up the topic of a scoring matrix for 21 South Lynn is because I think that's the opportunity for us to sort of have, to sort of, when we would score those projects to sort of say, you know, maybe you get ten points for a LEED platinum building and you get one point for, I'm going to do better than energy code by fifteen percent or something. I don't know. I don't know if we want to be open to that or not, but, but I'm going to, you know, what if we're, what if we're presented with projects that provide an incredible amount of affordable housing? So that's, again, that's a sort of, not necessarily a tangent, it's on our work session topic.
I mean, it's definitely down the road and, you know, but within view, right? So not far, 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 I guess, and this is slightly off topic, but I'm just, eh, no, it's broader. I'm just, I'm kind of going out at the thirty thousand feet kind of vista. And I think one of the things that we absolutely have to keep in mind is that we're not going to get a unicorn building where we have everything that we want. It is going to be that we have these priorities, we have these values. And how well do we all marry that? How does a developer propose and marry these together in a way that's, that we think is going to work best for the city and for, more importantly, for the people who live here, right? And it has everything to do with, the flip side of negotiation is also compromise, right? So I guess I just want, in, in the, again, I, I hazard it as like, this is at the thirty thousand foot because we're getting so specific on narrow pieces. And it's like, you know, we're going to return to it when we talk about the, the RFP language itself and what do we want? That I guess, let's start with aspirational. Let's start with lots of tools for what can, what do we want to see? But again, if we're a little too prescriptive from the outset, then we may be cutting off our nose to spider faces.
I'd say, you know, the pros and the cons and the, you know, I heard Councilor Burgess talk about, let's, you know, go high, right? And so people would have to start high and maybe negotiate from there. Or, or we, you know, go with the proposed language and give staff that flexibility. go with the proposed language and give staff that flexibility. I just listened to the Johnson County Joint Entities Meeting, because I wanted to hear the presentation on the trains, and I heard about this little, this little battery that's going to operate a train. And I heard that it's so small, they didn't have a sample, but I wanted to see it. And I bring that up because as things change in our community and in the network of, we have some bright people out there that are doing some great things, trying to, you know, bring in products that'll be climate action, you know, I don't know, give a lot of climate action impact. So if we become prescriptive in this policy, which, yes, we can come and we can amend it, but I do trust that if we kind of give the, some wiggle room to our staff to negotiate, I'm comfortable with that. Of course, I do see the benefit of, you know, starting high and going low, because certainly if you start at the D level, I do know that often people are going to stay there. So, you know, they're going to check that box, I got everything done and I'm done, right? You gotta, you gotta move it through to P and Z, and then the council, we got you because this is where you started. So I am comfortable, you know, knowing all things, definitely understanding, you know, thoughts from different people, going forth with what has been proposed. And again, we could always find ourselves in a position down the road where maybe we do want to change it, but I'm comfortable not being too prescriptive, as you say.
I guess the thoughts that I have are twofold, I guess. You know, we have a discussion about setting a floor, and we also have a question about, like, third-party verification. And those are things that I would like to see personally in this policy, more explicit, not prescriptive, like, you know, giving the options and having that flexibility to be there, but they're definitely being a floor.
Saying such as?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, so that they, it's signaling, like, it can't be Uncle George's magic metric machine.
That's what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I mean, that goes, I concur, because I think it gives shape to the discussion to say, to signal, these are the types of things, including third-party verification and, you know, X, Y, and Z, but it does allow for new methodologies, new ways to treat this. And I'm, what's been going through my mind is how quickly AI is advancing. Imagine with the kind of climate urgency that there is, there are new ways that people are measuring success and equally drawback to how buildings are constructed and how well they are working through addressing climate action, so.
And even if we want to go with that route, do we send it back to the Economic Development Commission, or how is this going to work?
Yeah, right. It's a good question. Can it go back to the question?
I have spoken to both Counselor Burgess and Counselor Dunn after it left committee, and so I don't know what the...
Well, I'm sorry, was the question, I had a hard time hearing the mayor protest comments. Was the question whether we can send it back to the Economic Development?
Yeah, if we want to, like, change it, then like, do we send it back to the Economic Development and what we do, how we proceed?
What, can we change it on our own, is that what you're asking?
Or we can change it on our own right now.
You could do either of those things.
And I guess the question would be, for the resolution itself, if we need to have the such-as in the resolution, I don't think so. I think as long as the staff, I don't know.
I'd be comfortable sending it back to Economic Development to do some, you know, more surgical wordsmithing, yeah.
And work with the staff on that, so.
Yeah.
Flexible. I just want to make sure it's permissible, since a majority of the Economic Development Committee or a quorum of the Economic Development Committee has met about this.
Right. Yeah, I don't love that, but I think, I think you could do it.
Okay. Then, fine.
Just shouldn't talk about it after we forward it to.
Okay.
Done, Joe.
We're done.
And how we proceed here, do we defer it, do we send it?
We just decline it and...
Well, yeah, you could do a couple of things. You could just vote no, and with direction to staff and the Economic Development Committee to take another look. And you would want to give some guidance as to, and, you know, I guess I'll look to those members of the Economic Development Committee as to whether they feel like they understand what the consensus of council is to achieve. So that would be one way of doing it. I suppose you could defer as well, but I think it would be cleaner just to vote no and then bring it back.
If, I have a question. If it's the such-as, is that what we're really wanting to add?
I mean, that was a suggestion, as opposed to specifically saying, in this moment, let's add that. There might be better, I would prefer it not to be written on the dais.
Yep, I agree with Counselor Alter.
So then...
I think we eliminate some bullet points and add a third-party note, and it's the same policy, but we do that.
Cleanly.
Cleanly, and let the public see it before we vote on it.
Yeah, so there's a couple of thoughts. Well, our attorney just talked about some avenues that we can go down. I mean, we can certainly defer this, and then if there's a new version that comes back...
I'm comfortable with whatever.
I am, as I say, we can...
I think I heard our attorneys say, yeah, go ahead.
The same thing. I think they hear it's, he said it's cleaner and easier to vote no, with the recommendation that the Economic Development Commission to look at it and send it, bring it back. Let's do that.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mo.
No.
Sala.
No.
Teague.
No.
Alter.
No.
Burgess.
No.
Dunn.
No.
Harmsen.
No.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion fails, right.
A motion. Motion fails, seven to zero.
Succeeded in failing.
Yes, all right.
Mayor, could we get the motion for correspondence?
Can I get a motion for correspondence, please?
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Ten L, assessment schedule. Resolution adopted an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleanup of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair, and stop boxes, repair charges, and directing the city clerk to certify the same to the Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
All right. Moved by Burgess, seconded by Sala. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We're on to item number eleven, which is council appointments. We have eleven A for the appointments tonight, and that's the Human Rights Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term, plus a three-year term upon appointment through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, and council discussion.
Lot of good applicants here, some of them we've had the ability to look at a few times. I will throw a name out just to get us started, Anya Schaefer von Hout.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
That's good. Yeah.
So like, we have a majority for Anya, pronounced Stoffler Ben Hout.
Is it, did I?
Can I get a motion to...
Schaefer.
Schaefer, can I get a motion to appoint, please?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second.
Moved by Harmsen, seconded by Alter, because she's louder, and I can distinguish which voice I heard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Item number twelve is announcements of vacancies new, and this is Public Art Advisory Committee, art or design professional. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Alter.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. We're at item number thirteen, announcements of vacancies previous, thirteen A. Airport zoning board or commission, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport zoning commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, HVAC professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic preservation commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic preservation commission, Willon Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, plus a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We're at item number fourteen, which is city council information.
Will be a listening post. Counselor Dunn and I will attend at the farmer's market.
Great.
Is this Saturday?
Uh, next, sorry, next Saturday, yeah. Sorry, I was gonna, I'm trying to get the actual new date up.
August seventeenth.
Seventeenth at nine. Thank you, Kelly.
When is that, seventeen at nine?
Seventeenth, the farmer's market, the seventeenth, Saturday, yep, nine o'clock. You can, you can come, just not more than three of us. Be sure to say hi to Gary when you're there. I will say hi to Gary.
I think that lasts like an open day for C W K, so they have, we have another event.
Well, I'm excited to say that I am actually going to the Mayor's Innovation Project Conference in two days, so it's, I've been once before, thanks to our mayor, and I'm excited to go to Knoxville, Tennessee. And it talks about urban walk, it's going to have a panel on urban walkability and about dealing with violence prevention and climate action and so, and affordable housing. There's actually a big hunk on that, so. And I believe the mayor of Waterloo is actually going to be speaking on one of the panels, so it'll be exciting, and I'll report back.
Cool.
Excellent.
Anything else? All right. Item number fifteen, report on items from city staff, city manager's office.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
City attorney.
Nothing for me, thank you.
And city clerk.
No, thank you.
Item number sixteen. Can I get a motion? We will be going back into work session, but item number sixteen, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by these two, but we'll give it to Mayor Proton Sala. All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned from formal minute, from our formal meeting, and let us take seven minutes, because people normally don't get back in five. So we're going to take a seven-minute break, and then we're going to come back to our work session. Hello? That's probably... We're on item six. I think it's... Something. Yeah. I know, but you know, Council Dunn all the time, he's the one who did that, so. And... That's okay. Yeah, I don't care about all this. Guess what, I want to be on this, because it's too much I'm not gonna add. You can add, or prepare. But I wasn't know there is, ah, about thinking about the mayor innovation, too, but I don't know, I did not read any of this. There is, and I won't be going to the... I will be there. So that's happening. I'm bored of that. I'm content. Yeah. And you're going to use tomorrow? And, and, I think I should, you're not gonna be here for the lottery, or for this one, so. That's what I asked you. I think that I can go to this one, but the thing that they want me to say, like, say, like, was the relationship between the city government and the fire department. And for that, the fire department is part of the city. I wonder, yeah. So, these people are, are, are they wanting to speak, or just have one-on-one? No, I want to invite you to come in, and stay, to chat with the visitor about city and relationship between the government and the fire department. Yeah. I think that I can go to this one, but the thing that they want me to say, like, say, like, was the relationship between the city government and the fire department. And for that, the fire department is part of the city. I wonder, yeah. So, these people are, are, are they wanting to speak, or just have one-on-one? No, I want to invite you to come in, and stay, to chat with the visitor about city and relationship between the government and the fire department. Yeah. I think, I don't think that, I don't think you want to speak. I think we're going to be talking to them, just like they were here. Like, talking about how our fire department was... Is within the city. And how many we have, and why we do that, and the four minutes response, and all this kind of thing. Yeah, they probably do. I can, you know, what I can do. I come forward with the job, and say, can someone just write me something about this? I don't think you're speaking about... That's what it's about. I just want to know what I should say, I like, I mean, I just... I was just... No, just something out of here. Do you like some celery, man? No, no, I'm good. I don't smell peanut butter, remember, yeah, peanut butter, sandwich. Exactly, or tuna. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. When somebody say that we would like you to talk about the relationship between the city government and the fire department, the relationship between the city government and the fire department, the fire department is the part of the city. Somebody sent me an email, and they asked me to come and talk to people about it. I don't know. Just talk about our city, like, fire department, how many we have, why we have like four minutes response, and all this, or like, just like, something. I don't know. I'm gonna send it to you. Yeah. And, it's still here, so, if, yeah, if you, I'm gonna close, oh, wait, we don't need that. So it's just under here. Kids getting ready for the new school year, or can I do a little? You want to go? Yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, we're gonna get rid of just these school. No, I didn't even see them at the school. Oh, yeah, you just got back, you haven't had to. I think I was, because I didn't have... I just know, like, marching band stuff started yesterday, so that's getting back to the state. Had a really long day yesterday, and super cranky. Wow. Yes, I know. I know.
I just know, like, marching band stuff started yesterday, so that's getting back to the stage. Had a really long day yesterday, super cranky.
Wow. Yes, I know.
Yeah. This is, oh, yes, you're right.
It's all timed on.
All right, it is still August sixth, twenty twenty-four, and we're gonna return back to our work session. We were on item number six, which is our review draft request for proposal document for twenty twenty-one, South Lynn Street, and we'll pick up that conversation.
Okay. I'll jump in.
You're talking about a matrix. Yeah, I was just wanted to get counsel, I mean, thoughts on whether or not that's the direction we wanna go, where we sort of say, here's a point scheme, one through ten, so that when there becomes a moment for us to all select this, we can sort of validate. And again, I think the sustainability conversation is very much related to that, and I think would be helpful to communicate with the community, too, like to sort of have that out there, to sort of say, hey, we didn't pick the project with the most sustainability or the most affordable housing because it was the opposite. I, I don't know if that's a, it's, as somebody who has responded to these before, it's incredibly helpful. And yes, it becomes a sort of points system, but you don't wanna like, you don't want your point system to be too prescriptive. Like, you still wanna allow people to sort of use their sort of sensibilities on their scoring, but, so, so one advantage to us having had this break is that gave, gave me a chance to sort of be reflecting in the back of my mind. And a couple of things that come up with that, first of all, I think in, in some applications, it's a really useful mechanism. But I think in a couple of, couple of things about doing that now, first of all, I think there is already an implied sort of matrix or, when I teach, I call it a rubric, right? Where you'd have different whatever, so if I flip into that terminology, I mean the same thing. So it's kind of already there. Like, we already are listing out the things we want. We don't really weight anything, which is what a rubric does, is it weights certain things. And so, but it's there, right? We're telling, we're laying out the things we like. And by the way, there's, I have a couple of notes on a, on one little piece, but otherwise, thank you, Rachel, everybody else, it's great job. The problem with going into that kind of level of detail is if, just in terms of how it would work, in terms of the public perception, in a, in a fair one, is that if we do have something where we wanna do that, like, we want this more than this and whatever, but it doesn't reflect it in the points, because we don't know yet this point, we're trying to be, we're trying to walk the line between having some, some definition, but also being flexible and open. I think if we do that and we do something, and if we don't set it up really carefully and well, this, the point system, that we could end up shooting ourselves in the foot. And I don't think, I mean, if we were to do that, I mean, I think we would just have to say, okay, we need to spend six months doing that or whatever, because we have seven people, we'll have to agree on how many points we're gonna give to each thing, right? I mean, at least we have somewhat agreement. And while I don't think that's a horrible thing to do, I just don't know that, that that's gonna give us the payoff that we already could get from what we've got. And so I, I think, I, I think your idea is, you know, it's got some real merit in, in many cases. I'm not sure it applies here. In my mind, I'm just speaking as, again, just one of seven. But, but I think what you're trying to do, though, is, and I think if I'm correct, is make it so that we are being as transparent in our evaluation as possible, just until we see what we get. I don't know that I'm, can sit here and say, I'm, I wanna give this particular thing six points, and this particular thing five, and four, and three, just because I, I kinda don't know yet, you know, until I see what, what, what people bring us. And so, as cart, horse, I, I don't know. That's, that's my thought, so.
Usually I would be one hundred percent in favor of a rubric, and I think at least these two guys know that when you were up for appointment, I made my own little rubric and was scoring people on the fly. So I, I'm very much in favor of that type of thing, and I'm really internalizing the conversation about flexibility that comes from the TIF policy. And I think for this particular RFP, I wanna give both the staff who are having the initial analysis of the responses, as well as us, you know, I, I really think flexibility is the key, because, you know, I think we, maybe we could have for ourselves some kind of understanding that's better articulated than what we have right now, but I'm just like looking at our, our strategic values, you know? And I'm saying, well, you know, of the ones that we, the lenses, right? Those three main things, like, how are those reflected in whatever this proposal is? And I think it would be difficult to quantify some of those things, and I think when we look at the Chauncey, not so much the rise, but in my experience, just like thinking about the different proposals that came forward for the Chauncey, I, there are some sort of intangible or difficult to quantify, but easier to qualify kinds of elements than I think when you're thinking of like this particular location and this particular, you know, all, all the things that, that have to go into it, I just, I, I agree with Councillor Harmson, I think we might be sort of like boxing ourselves in. And I would hate to create a rubric in which we end up with a really high-scoring proposal, but there's other red flags, you know? Like, I think, I just think that there's, this will be a long-term, you know, relationship with a developer, where the things like partnerships and engagements, like, I, I just have a hard time seeing exactly how we're gonna quantify that effectively, that will let us qualitatively evaluate, evaluate it enough, if that makes sense.
And to a certain extent as well, just to not, certainly not piling on, but the way in which you were talking about, you know, that it's, there are, you know, there's a point system, but it's not entirely like, and that's all there is, there is an element. I can say as a former H C D C member that that is a hellish place to be. It is. We did that. We sat there, and it was very much like I envisioned. Developers will be sitting there and we'll be talking, and it's like, yep, here's, we got eighty points for this, and it's like, yeah, but that just doesn't seem right, and so, yeah, 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 you're right, let's change that. And people are like, you have just gutted my baby. And, and so, to that extent, it, I, I love the idea of having that kind of clarity for people, but I think that the process will, it will be messier, it will need to have that back and forth and that, you know, Andrew has, has indicated a strong preference for types of uses, right? And then we have discussions about, you know, how, how sustainable the building is, and then, you know, I, there's so many different levers that we want, that it, I feel like if we are very transparent and authentic and, and pull out all the stuff that's in our pockets and put it on the table and talk about it, so they go, okay, here's how the council, however messily, but openly talked about what they think they need, what they're hearing from their constituents, about what should be downtown, I think that's gonna serve the project better ultimately than a rubric, that we are inevitably, it's not a checklist, it won't, like, I was envisioning it, there's no way that we could go through and say, here's the point system, Megan's project scored highest, but you know what, there's these other things, I, I, okay, no, let's take away Megan's project, even though it scored highest, how do we explain that? It doesn't go over well to say, well, we just talked about it, we decided it wasn't the highest. It just doesn't. So, sorry, I like mixed so many experiences together, but it just, that's kinda.
As a past proposer, it is so helpful. And I think you, I think you get, I do think if it's a really carefully crafted thing, which you, I think accurately described, takes an incredible amount of time. For something like this. You, you can really drive to certain things, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna push forward hard, I just wanted to hear.
Sure.
Get temperatures. I think the other question that Jeff asked was office space for the city, and I absolutely think that's a really smart way of addressing our serious space need issues here.
What's the feasibility of it?
Yeah, yeah, not saying, not demanding it, we're just saying, hey, we're signaling, like, we, we have a space need, a serious space needs issue, and this is an opportunity. And if I were a developer, I'd say, well, the city is probably a pretty good tenant who pays their, I assume we pay our bills. Most of the time. Okay.
We hope. Can, can I add to that point? This is just a general thing, but, um, I think one of the things that, it, it, our RFP is both, it's absolutely, it's reflective of our values and what we want, and of understanding location, and about wanting to attract people to the city into doing different things and, and things that engage more people. And we also need to make sure that this RFP is something that developers see is a benefit for them in doing. If we, if we, again, it's that flexibility piece, we have to allow them to come and recognize that they need to get something out of it, too. It has to be worth their while to do. So I just, I, I know we know that, but in.
It's important to say, we could get no one to propose on this if we.
If we over-stipulate, and if we actually make it so that, you know, so that it's, they don't see that there's a benefit for them to invest in this.
Yeah.
I'm gonna speak just real quickly about the, the city space. I think, I think it's stated about as well as it could be in here, but even if a development team says, yes, we'd love to accommodate you, city, we've got a floor or two that you could work in, I, I, I'm not ready at this time to say that's the right thing. There could be other proposals that have fantastic uses that could really benefit the community, and there is no room for us. Or maybe the, the cost in which we would have to pay for that space compared to where we could get twenty-five thousand square feet elsewhere in the community just doesn't make sense. So I, I really, we tried not to give the impression that this is a, this is a, a strong desire for the city to be in this exact location. We just wanna open the door to, to that conversation. So don't be surprised, I guess, if, if someone says, yes, we can accommodate, and we still say, that's great, but these other proposals look stronger even though they can't accommodate us.
I think, I think you hit the nail on the head with communicating that, and I just also wanna say thank you for, you know, forward-thinking in that way and including that.
I will add that that is where City Hall used to be. And so, you know, I, you know, right, full circle. The other thing I would say is, just on that one aspect, and I, I know we're not putting a lot of eggs in this basket, but ownership, long-term, is most beneficial than writing a rent check. So I don't know if, you know, at, at least from my perspective, the city owns the land right now, so if there was a way for the proposal to include space for the city, I would hope that there will be an option of the city to buy, or, you know, maintain two levels or whatever that is, because in the long term, that will be cheaper for us.
I just had two comments. One was going back five hours to the business incubator, just to provide some, some very clear response to that. I'm not opposed to that being an idea that would come forward, but I really do appreciate how it's written in the draft, which is, if commercial uses are proposed, the city encourages consideration of uses which support the small business culture of downtown Iowa City, which I think has, carries a lot of meaning, as well as office, dining, entertainment, or other uses that provide clear benefit to the larger downtown economy and which are not alcohol-centric. So I think that includes some specificity that really does align with our, our values. And I think alcohol-centric is saying, don't make it bars, right? But you could still have like an entertainment venue that serves alcohol or something like that.
Not shots or us.
But I mean.
By another vape shop.
I still will say that we need to be clear, because, for example, if we wanna do an
incubator, and which is, could be one of the uses, like, for example, restaurant, you need like, on the, while they're doing it, they have to consider that this is a restaurant. I need like maybe a kitchen, maybe a hood, maybe, like, how, if we did not give an early directions for that, how we gonna add that later, especially if we need a kitchen with a hood.
Yeah. I, I think, I guess I would like a little bit more clarity. I wasn't trying to be smart or anything earlier when I was asking like what the small business culture thing meant. Would someone be able to like, maybe communicate the intent of what that's supposed to communicate with me, just helping out?
Sure. So, you know, I think as Councillor Burgess mentioned, we do feel like, you know, there is a defined commitment to our downtown businesses, and so we're kinda leaning on that. We also wanna recognize that, you know, this may bring in new businesses, this may be an opportunity to support existing businesses in different ways, so just recognizing that there are both new and existing businesses in our downtown that need support. And then I think one thing I've been thinking, you know, as we talk about this incubator ideas, there are a lot of ways we talk about supporting businesses downtown. In my work with the downtown district, sometimes, you know, a lot of the time, what we talk about is right-sized and affordable space. And so that's different from an incubator, which is managed and, you know, resourced. So just thinking about, you know, those different ways that you can encourage more, make the business environment more inclusive without being too prescriptive.
Yeah.
The, the note, but.
I, I like some of that language very much, 'cause I think incubator, when you're like, let me explain, that's not what I mean, right? An incubator, to me, is different than talking about.
Right-sized, affordable.
Right-sized and affordable, yeah, which is gonna resonate very much within the downtown area.
Yeah.
Because it's not something that most have.
The other thing I wanted to say is, I do think you will have that opportunity, you know, when you see those, when you, we get proposals in and you see proposed uses and proposed square footages, you know, we wrote in that option for you to ask for modifications, ask for clarification, so that is an option, opportunity perhaps, to say, hey, we think this needs to be a little smaller, or we think, you know, this is the type of need, so also something.
That was kind of my next question, was kind of like, would that be a more appropriate, 'cause appropriate time to have this discussion? Because I kind of feel like there's, there's no way that there's not like front, first-floor retail, like, there's gonna be some, some type of commercial endeavor on the first floor. I mean, I just, I just don't see something not proposing that. And so if we propose like modifications or some type of partnership, whether that be for an incubator or, you know, changing the size, I think it might be more appropriate to just have that conversation when that happens. I think we still think about it, I think we still, if there's counsel that supports it, I think that we, you know, try to do that, but I, I, I can see it maybe not necessarily being the best time to bring that up here, if that's making sense.
I don't mind, like, really not talk about it right now, if that's not the right time for it. The problem that I'm facing is this, like, for example, down the road, if we open this conversation again, and there was a support for, like, right-sized business, as you guys talk about it, whatever it is, but it is needed, is special way of constructing the space, is this still going to be an option? You understand where I'm coming from? Like, for example, if we wanna do a restaurant, do we still have a space that could be, become a restaurant, or become a small, you know, affordable space for a business to operate? Which is needed some kind of equipment? Is there a way we can still install those equipment later on without, like, because, like, from my previous experience of our, like, sibling eating things, if you need, like, a restaurant, it have to be constructed from the beginning as a restaurant? Or is base for some type of that restaurant? If we wanna put a hood here, we have a space to put the hood. Like, that's what I really concerning.
Can I add to that? I guess the proposals that we're getting, and the proposals that you'll be bringing, that you'll bring before the council, how much money would the, would those proposal have in a design? Are they concepts or, or are they all out? I think that's.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially. That's why I was asking the question about the scoring matrix, is, it does shortcut a little bit of that.
Because, I mean, that makes a difference in what Mayor Pro Tim is talking about at this moment. If it's just, you know, not a hundred-thousand-dollar, you know, concept that they're presenting, and it's, you know, something sketched with Crayola, and then, you know, that may not be such a.
We won't pick it.
Well, you can also think back, like, to one of my very early presentations, I had kind of showed an inverted triangle, where, you know, as we're narrowing down through the process, you can expect developers to be more willing to.
a restaurant or become a small, you know, affordable space for a business to operate? Which is needed some kind of equipment? Is there a way we can still install those equipment later on without like, because like from my previous experience of our like sibling dealing things, if you need like a restaurant, it has to be constructed from the beginning as a restaurant? Or is based for some type of that restaurant? If we want to put a hood here, we have a space to put the hood? Like, that's what I really concerning.
Can I add to that? I guess the proposals that we're getting and the proposals that you'll bring, that you'll bring before the council, how much money would the, would those proposal have in a design? Are they concepts or, or are they all out? I think that's-
Hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially. That's why I was asking the question about the scoring matrix, is it does shortcut a little bit of that.
Because, I mean, that makes a difference in what Mayor Protem is talking about at this moment. If it's just, you know, not a hundred thousand dollar, you know, concept that they're presenting, and it's, you know, something sketched with Crayola, and then, you know, that may not be such a-
We won't pick it.
Yeah.
Well, you can also think back, like, to one of my very early presentations, I had kind of showed an inverted triangle where, you know, as we're narrowing down through the process, you can expect developers to be more willing to invest, continue to invest. So the example I gave of the Chauncey proposal was very detailed, and so it would be great if we get proposals like that. However, I also think, you know, as you move through the process and as developers, you know, are feeling more invested and, and getting closer to that finalist stage, if you want to ask for even more detailed renderings or whatever it is you're asking for, I think, again, we've tried to like build in that option.
Just before I lose it, there was one typo to fix on page 12, because I've been staring at it.
Bravo.
The fourth full graph, it refers to the TIF policy as Exhibit C, and I think consistently as Exhibit B. Sorry, guys.
Okay. Thanks.
I want to interrupt you. I, I wanted, about the cost of the pre, the pre-selection proposal effort, has that actually become a cost of the project that began, potentially become part of the increment for the TIF? I'm specifically asking, like, is it, it's a development cost, so does it actually become part of the thing that we all pay for?
I think his, I'd want to double-check on this. I think historically, we have not done the, the pre, included pre-selection costs.
Okay.
Yes. After selection, when the, the full design begins, that could be incorporated.
Yeah.
Are we now just narrowing down and you're going to come back again on this? Are we just like each time we talk about it, we're narrowing down without, and there is no, like, you are not on the actual phase where you can put the plan now for that project? Like, what we want exactly? We want affordable housing, we want childcare there, we don't, do we have all this now? Or are we doing this now?
That's what this is. This, this is, from staff standpoint, once the TIF policy is completed, we would attach that and issue it. So you have, you have as long as you want. There is no rush to get this out, but September's always been our target. From staff standpoint, this is ready to go after you complete your review.
Actually, within that, and Sean and I had talked about this a little bit, and it is, again, a question of appropriate time and level of granularity, but it doesn't have to do with what do we want in it. In the TIF policy, there is really clear language, and it's under economic justice, and it talks about hiring contractors who are all essentially above board and are following and are not going to hire, you know, skeevy ones, right? Sorry, it's late. But I noticed that that's not actually in the RFP itself. It's only if somebody, I mean, I'm su, every, the assumption is everyone is going to, they're not going to be self-funding this. This is, this is, someone is going, sorry. A developer will definitely be trying to avail themselves of TIF, correct? I mean, that's the assumption here?
I, I don't know, we don't know that. So for the Chauncey, there were some proposals that did not request-
Okay. Well, I guess, so my que, sorry, I cut you off. My question then is, is there, is it appropriate at the level of an RFP to put in similar language about saying, we want to make sure that if you, if you're just a developer and you have the money to do this, that you will abide by, you know, the, the tenants of economic justice such as we have in our TIF, but for the RFP itself? Is that appropriate, or is that something that we talk about later?
I would be cautious about that.
Okay.
And the reason I say that is that there are some state laws that preempt-
Pre-qualifications.
Yeah, pre-qualifications.
Well, can we do like post-bid, you know, those types of, I mean, to, to keep it within what our state is doing, but still-
Capture what the TIF policy is trying to get at-
Correct.
Even if they don't do TIF. Am I reading you right?
Yes, that's exactly-
Although, I think, I think it's probably reasonable to assume there's a good chance any project might want something like that to help with its bottom line, but, but if they don't, we would not want to accidentally-
I also know that neighboring cities have had problems, too. And so, you know-
Not too far away, up the corridor in Cedar Rapids, and, yeah.
So I just, I think that whatever we can do, again, we're trying to signal our expectations and our values, right? And I think that that would be something that we have to say, and not only do we have to build something of a sustainable building, we want it to be done in an ethical manner.
One thing that's embedded in this, I think, would be the type-one construction is valued and type-five construction is not allowed.
Does that talk about-
That goes, that is, that is about the quality of construction and goes a long ways towards what kind of crew you get on building a building. So I know it's not, and it's not exactly explicitly saying what I know you're going for-
Yeah, I mean, I'm really concerned about the labor practices.
But it is, it is actually a pretty meaningful piece of that RFP that it sets a pretty high standard for the quality of construction and who can build it.
Yeah, I, I would concur with that. And then on, on page 11 at the bottom, there is reference to that TIF policy, and even in addition to the TIF policy, we put in a encouragement to use qualified apprentices that participate in the-
Yes, and that was awesome.
Registered apprenticeship program, and that's really speaks, I think-
And that was awesome.
It's not a requirement, but it speaks to some of the workforce efforts that we've invested in through ARPA, through the student build, and hopefully that sends a similar signal.
So, so I feel like actually fairly comfortable that, you know, I was asking, is it appropriate? And you're saying there are other things within this that actually really do capture that, and then it also allows for us to be able to make those discernments-
Yeah.
Down the road.
And I also think, while some, some proposals, if we are fortunate to get multiple proposals, you might expect that some have a, a general contractor identified, but it, it could be that general contractor identification is going to be a step several months down the, the path for whoever is selected. They might bid it out between several general contractors to see.
Yeah.
Sure.
The only thing I'll add, sorry, just to that point, is when we did that TIF policy review, as you saw in the red line version, we actually ended up taking out provisions that previously had been stated would be included in the development agreement, because we had this discussion about kind of-
Okay.
Where do you stop? And really, that's where the teeth of those provisions fall. So I think that that is the appropriate timing, to answer your question, is the development agreement.
Thanks.
Are there any other, is there any specific directions that council wants to give to staff?
Is it fair to say that we need some type of restaurant, right-sized business, wherever you guys were saying, to be added to this somehow?
I mean, I was saying, I think that is captured by the part that I read aloud. That's what, that's my opinion.
But yeah, if it is, you know, if we said a restaurant, as I said earlier, do we have, is that language is enough?
Yeah.
To have that likes of a restaurant there, or maybe-
I don't want to require a restaurant at this stage.
Yeah.
I would say the first bullet point of that sentence is-
The incubator, I mean. I don't know, I don't mean like a restaurant or-
Whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah, whatever it is, but some kind of like flexibility to help the people who want to open a small business and tested businesses downtown.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm, I'm with Laura that I think the existing language does allow for that.
If the existing language allow for that-
And it signals-
And they go and they start blinding it and draw, do the drawing and everything, and is that, could be possible later to use the same space to do something like this, if we don't identify?
I, I think where we've gotten is that, you know, the, the language, I, I do agree, kind of signals it. It might not be as explicit as you and I may want, but my understanding is that further down the line, when we get to these types of negotiations and we have the opportunity to say, okay, you proposed this type of space, how about a little change, a little here and there? If, if that's appropriate and if that's what the council wants, I, I do understand that that seems to be what we have the opportunity to do.
There is a flexibility to do so.
Yes, yes, I believe so.
And I think staff knows that, I mean, I think Jeff said it explicitly, the idea of like subsidized commercial spaces-
Yes.
Is something that staff knows we're favorable to. We did that in the South District market. That was, you know, we, we provided additional, you know, flexibility in the zoning code amendment to do that. So I think that they understand that that is an option that we would be very favorable to, but I don't think we need to require it. And I think that, yeah, I guess I'm comfortable, but thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page.
No, I think, yeah, I, I guess like as long as that's doable, if we agree to later in the future. Because maybe right now, we don't have like-
I think we got to see stuff.
Don't know what we're going to do, yeah.
Yeah, we got to see stuff first.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool. What's the next, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yep, so it doesn't sound like there'll be any further direction from staff, from council to staff. Otherwise, we, I, I guess the next thing would be for this RFP to go out in September.
The TIF.
After, after with the-
Oh, after the TIF.
That actually was my, does this come back to council for another, like, actual approval? Because it wasn't on the-
No, we typically don't have you approve RFPs.
It's just direction of like, okay.
So, yeah, there are, so the TIF will come before, before this is released.
Certainly, if something comes up between now and our planned September release date and you want to see it again, again, you can pump the brakes and say that you want to take another look at it, but it doesn't require a vote.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure.
Can I just say, before we move on, I promise it'll be short. I just want to say thank you, because you took all of these seven voices, ah, what about this, and what about this, and you distilled it and put it, I know that RFPs have their own kind of template and there's a rhythm, but just thank you, because there's a lot of disparate thoughts, and it really has been distilled into a very clear, followable document. Thank you.
Good job.
Just say one thing I'm disappointed of. I, I just wish there were more vape shops in Iowa City, but, but, just joking, just joking. But no, I echo those comments as well. I echo those comments, yeah.
We're going on to number, item number seven, which is tobacco moratorium discussion, and I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney, Eric Gores, to get us started.
Thank you, Mayor. So council asked me in our last work session on July 16th, essentially to draft three separate ordinances. One was a zoning ordinance that included 500-foot separation distance between both tobacco retailers and K through 12 education properties, as well as university-owned properties. That was ordinance number one. The second ordinance was an ordinance relating to the cap on permits. More on that in a moment. And then the third was a ban on kratom. And so those three ordinances have been drafted, and I emphasize drafted, because these are, you know, hopefully something for you to react to and feel free to tweak. The comment I'll make about the, the active permit ordinance is, we need to make a correction. I had earlier indicated there were 63 current active permits. In fact, we've concluded there are 62. And so I think that's an important part of the discussion that you'll want to consider. I should also point out that Susan Vilada, the Johnson County Public Health, a staff person who was kind enough to join us at our last session, is under the weather tonight, but has agreed to appear remotely. So if you have any questions about the public health ramifications of any of this, she should be available to be called upon by you.
Hello, Susan, I see you.
Oh, good. All right, well-
Hi there.
Again, I'm sure you'll want to discuss those three draft ordinances, but the city clerk and I have had an opportunity to speak at length about kind of a number of the machinations and, and kind of the administrative hurdles that might come with this, and that leads us to a number of questions for council. And I'd be happy to go there, if you'd like to start, or if you'd prefer to just react to the ordinances first, that would be fine, too, kind of whatever council's preference.
I have a single thought, but we can do it every order you want.
Go with your thought.
Yeah, so I would, I've read the ordinance, and you did exactly as I think were instructed by our mushy instructions. I have since had a somewhat change in thinking about the 500-foot separation between other tobacco outlets. I absolutely want to keep the 500-foot separation from vulnerable populations. I think that's smart. But the 500-foot between other tobacco retailers, to me, I think we have an opportunity to learn from the alcohol ordinance that we have, and we end up, I think, sometimes with spots that are sort of permanently going to be a bar, because they got that permit and they're always there, and you won't ever give it up, because you're that spot, and it creates all kinds of weird distortions that, that I, I, I think that we can achieve our goals without that piece of it. And so I'm just saying that, that, that would be the modification that I would like to see, and would like to know if other counselors have a similar attitude about saying, let's absolutely keep the 500 feet from vulnerable populations, as it's written, which includes schools and, and the university, but, but not, not tie it to the next-door neighbor.
I would support that. I mean, Counselor Mo and I had a conversation at length about this, and, you know, I can just reiterate, I don't think we want people just hold on to permits forever and just stick in the same place necessarily. So, yeah, I, I could support that.
For council's benefit, I'll note that the city clerk has assisted me with bringing up that interactive map, to which I referred last time, but we've got it loaded in the, on the computer here, so I can throw it up on the screen if council would want, and in so doing, modify those buffers, that is, you know, take out the retailers or, you know, change the distances from at least 500 to 1,000 feet, or whatever council would like to consider.
Please. Does it include the, the, previously it showed tobacco permits? Does it also show now vulnerable population boundaries?
Well, when you say vulnerable populations, I mean, it's-
Schools.
Yes.
Schools and parks, okay.
Yes. Maybe, I think that's, I mean, the way I've got it set up, and thank you to Kelly for pulling it up, this is as written, that is, as instructed, 500-feet separation between retailers and away from educational institutions. I'll, I'll add that in looking at this briefly, I can see that there are at least a couple hiccups that would need to be worked through. So please don't take this as gospel for all those locations and the requisite separation distances, but clearly, this will give you a good idea about what the various variations that you might consider would lead to.
Could we zoom in on downtown?
And are we looking at 500-foot circles right now?
Those are 500-foot circles between retailers and off of educational facilities. And when I, for convenience, when I talk about educational facilities, I'm talking about K through 12 and university property, just for simplicity.
Question about that. I mean, does that include the UI hospitals, since it's university property?
I'm sorry?
Does it include the hospitals, since it's university property?
It looks like it does. There is a, you'll see the university property over there in kind of pale yellow-
Yeah.
And you'll see the red dotted line seems to go in about 500 feet. You'll also see that it doesn't appear to be perfect, to me. Like I said, we'll need to work that through. Our IT, city IT department is in the process of doing their own version of this. They have not yet completed that work.
Can we zoom out again, whenever we can?
Oh. Oh, wait a minute. Okay. Don't know how to use this.
Can we zoom out, Kelly?
You have to speak louder.
Oh, Kelly, can we zoom out, please?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, again, for legend's sake, the green dots are establishments that have both an alcohol and a tobacco license and permit. The orange dots you see just have tobacco permits. What's not depicted are those that just have alcohol. You'll see on the right, upper-hand right side of the screen, we could add that, but for sake of this discussion, since those would not have any tobacco permits, I didn't want to make it too confusing. Well, I can kind of go through our questions, if, if council would like.
Sure.
Okay. So with all permits expiring on June 30th of each year, that's just the way tobacco permits work, do you want to require a particular renewal date? I'm assuming that the council's preference would be that, you know, those who already have permits would, you know, be, have preference for renewal. I think that's consistent with grandfathering and so forth. The, the reason we're asking is that there are occasions when some of these permities are less than prompt in applying, and that in theory could lead to a bit of a pickle if they don't apply in time for the renewals, then have we dropped down, you know, from 62 to, say, 60, if there are a couple who don't apply in time? And that will lead to some other questions about how we dole out various, you know, vacancies, if you will. So what we were thinking is we would just impose a, a deadline for renewals- a deadline for renewals, be it April 1st or May 1st, or something like that, so that it would be crystal clear, this is how many, if any, openings will be available. You know, if there's an establishment that's not going to renew, they're gone out of business, or whatever, that would make it easier to manage. And so I guess my question is, is does that seem okay to council?
Yes.
Seeing a lot of heads nodding.
I guess the only question I have, oftentimes when I hear, you know, entities missing a deadline, regardless of this type of thing, it could be more mom-and-pop, smaller entities, not big corporations.
Right.
And so I would not want to have one of those, and I don't know if there's anyone in this circle, but I wouldn't want to have someone that was overwhelmed with life and business, that missed a deadline for whatever reason, got reinstated through the state process, and we didn't allow them to come back on board.
Yeah, well, that leads to kind of my next, or one of my next questions, which is, what do you want to do? Or how do you want to dole out any available slots? For example, you might say, well, there's a heavy preference for those who are already permitted. You know, yes, they missed a deadline, so they're not, let's say, automatic, but, you know, applying this criteria, and we can talk more about that in a moment, you know, there's a heavy weight toward those that have been in the business for a while, and thus we'll, you know, end up giving it to them anyway, in theory. There could be any number of other ways that they're treated. You could just say, nope, they're treated like any other applicant. Or you could say, you know, first come, first served. We're going to dole it out by a lottery system. We're going to do it based on their percentage of tobacco sales.
So I want to make sure I understand that is when someone sells their.
No, not necessarily. I wanted to address your concern about if there's, to use your example, a mom-and-pop establishment that missed the renewal deadline that we set, what do we do with that? Let's just say that, you know, we've got 62 now, and shoot, there's that one establishment and they forgot, so that takes us down to 61. We've got one opening, so to speak. Do we just say, well, it's free to everyone, or do we give a preference to those who are current permateses, for example? Which I think would save the establishment that you're describing hypothetically.
The latter seems to make sense. It seems unduly, I mean, that's my sense of it, and it answers.
Playing a game of gotcha. We don't want to play a game of gotcha with this.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, one of the other, the city managers mentioned too, that one of the other things you saw in your ordinances is, you know, looking at the grandfathering rights, it's 60 days and so forth. So of course you could consider that. Are they replying within the 60 days? And of course, they'd be selling up until June 30th presumably, because that's what their, I'll say, old permit allows. So, all right, so we can offer a preference. Do you have any, I mean, besides that, that would maybe be kind of tier-one consideration. Do you have any preference beyond that insofar as available permits, first come, first serve, lottery?
I think lottery is the fairest.
I'm sorry?
I think lottery is the fairest.
Lottery?
Yeah, at least that's my thought.
But do we want to set a window for lottery application?
People who got their stuff in that, you know, if we're doing it through, what was the other option that you mentioned?
Well, it could be, I mean, it could be anything, but the other things I threw out was, you know, first come, first served, or percentage of tobacco sales. And by that, I mean, you know, maybe preferring, or prefacing those that have a lower estimated tobacco sale out of their gross, that kind of thing.
Can I throw a hypothetical out?
Sure.
So kind of combining a couple of the things I read in the proposal. So using, again, our, say we have a June 30th deadline for renewal process.
Well, to be clear, that wouldn't be the deadline. We were talking about an application deadline. They, all the permits expire on June 30th.
Right, okay, yeah, same, yeah. But I mean, people that wanted to renew would have to have applied before June 30th.
Before then, because you would need to approve those permits before June 30th.
Right. But if somebody misses that deadline, could we just treat that the same way with 60 days as we would if somebody was going through a sale, or something where there had been a lapse or something? And then that gives them time to say, we've still got, we still want the preference for this, but after that 60 days, that preference goes away, and then it's first come, first served? I mean, is that, I'm just trying to, to keep us somewhat consistent in the way we're approaching this and keeping our numbers without, I mean, maybe that doesn't help make it more streamlined, but.
So if the deadline for the renewal application was early enough, like April 1st?
Sure, if it was April 1st, you know, I mean, again, I'm cautious about imposing duties on the clerk's office. That would have to be the ones who look at the list of 62 and then look at the applicants and say, well, you know, did anyone forget? Obviously, there's some administrative burden with that, but it would be easy enough to do, one would presume. And then reach out and contact, you know, the entity that did not renew, I guess is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yeah. And then allow them 60 days to get on the stick and make it happen.
I don't, I don't really want to create an affirmative duty to contact them if they don't renew. I don't, I don't like that. I think just give them a grace period.
We send out initial letters saying that the renewal process is coming up.
There we go.
And then they do get a reminder. That being said, we do still sometimes have late ones.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, when you, like, a week or two late, or?
Well, I mean, we've had them where, you know, they get two shots because there's two June meetings.
I see.
I'm trying to think if we've had a special meeting to squeak somebody in that didn't make that second June meeting. Not recently.
Not that I can recall.
Yeah.
I mean, I think in this regard, that, like, there's a consistency to the fact that we're talking about three separate things that are really trying to limit and say, we're not trying to be a tobacco-friendly town, right? So it seems to me that there's already a process set up here. I agree with Laura completely. There shouldn't be yet another, like, hey, you're late, right? I mean, that's in place, and this is their livelihood, and I do understand that life happens. But I think that that's, we have enough of a mechanism in place that can allow, like, if they're late, then they still have the grace period, that 60 days. But I don't think that we should be
Agreed.
Going after them. I mean, that's, that's, think about it as a professor. Do you call up your students on the regular and say, hey, I'm still waiting for your paper, right? I mean, sometimes we do.
Sean's a really good professor.
Sometimes we do, but I'm also like, this is their livelihood, and they've been reminded twice that they need to renew the thing that they sell for their livelihood, the permit to do that. I guess I'm just, I, I think that we're good, especially given the fact that we are actually saying, well, we have a cap on how many we're going to do, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're figuring out about spacing and ways to discourage that. So I think that calling them to remind them that they are late on their application doesn't, isn't consistent in terms of thinking of it that way.
Agreed.
But we're going to educate them.
Oh, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, then if, I think what we're saying is if one comes in, but it's still within
Yeah, we squeak it through.
The time period to get on the agenda, you're giving preference to those that previously had one.
Is the grace period, are we backing up the deadline to, so that the grace period is before their license expires, or are we doing, extending the grace period after?
Before.
I think before.
Well, I think it would almost have to be before. And the reason I say that, let's, let's use April 1st as an example. Well, so, you know, you got to have it in by April 1st. If we give them the kind of the 60-day grace period hypothetically, that takes them to June 1st, which is still enough time for them to get approved and not have a lapse. But the other complication that comes with that is if we don't impose some kind of requirement like that, you know, there will be others if there really is a vacancy. And I should note, for example, that one of those 62 active permits is the Come and Go at the corner of Mormon Track and Benton, which, you know, because it's my commute home, I'm here to tell you, it's been closed for a long time. But they renewed, it's only $100 to renew, and so their permit's good. But I guess my point is that might change at some point. And so we want to be able to, you know, open it up to new businesses if we really, truly have a vacancy. And at some point, we need to establish that we have a vacancy.
Is there any way, and I understand the administrative burden on the staff, for someone that missed a deadline, whatever the case may be, just to get a response, or attempt to get a response from the, you know, the owner? I just know that, I understand this is alcohol, but when it comes down to business owners, there are things that happen. Sometimes things lapse, and I just don't feel comfortable, you know, just saying, you know, that it's, they're out of luck, and then they're back in the, you know, in the pool. I mean, if there's a way just to get a yes or no, we're not doing this. I mean, at that point, no, we're not holding their hands. Like, we let them know, you got 60 days, or whatever, to do it. But I, I would just feel not right because there is a business owner somewhere out there. And your larger corporations, not a big deal, but your smaller, you know, entities and, and new entrepreneurs, there are challenges that happen.
I think if you're in the business of selling a highly-regulated product, the baseline is you have a license to do it. So I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it, but also we're trying to limit how these products are circulating in our community. So I'm fine saying we don't need to give special consideration to ensure that all the permits are being used. Like, I, I would feel better if, like, the cap comes down every time there's attrition, if we can justify that.
Well, since you've raised that, Councilor Burgess, I mean, that's another thing. It's, the direction you gave me was to set it at the current level, but you could set it at 50. You could set it at 100. You could set it at whatever you want. And obviously, you know, kind of puts some of those issues to rest if you were to lower it, let's just say, because then we don't really need to think a lot about how to dole out those extra spots, because there won't be any extra spots for some period of time.
I'd be fine with attrition.
You were saying, like, the, like, sometime there is a vacancy and we cannot advertise for it. If we really want to, like, eliminate it, and why would we advertise for it if we, if somebody, we have a vacancy and somebody missed it, like, why are we advertising for it?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of your question.
You said, like, if there is a vacancy.
Vacancy, yeah.
Yeah, vacancy, you can advertise for it.
Well, I wouldn't say advertise for it. We would just want to, at some point, declare that we have a vacancy. Let's just say, we stick it at 62, and we currently have 62. And let's just say that that Come and Go at Mormon Track that I mentioned actually doesn't renew next year because they have been closed by that point for more than a year. Well, okay, now we've got a vacancy, and we need to figure out how to dole that out, because there might be 10 applicants for that one, you know, extra spot.
But, but the thing is, if we, like, on the other hand, like Councilor Burgess saying, we don't want to remind them, you know, if they lost their license, they lost their license. And that's will reduce the amount of the people that we have. At the same time, as soon as that person lost their license, we have a vacancy. We can advertise for it. So I don't understand. If, anyway, we're going to have an additional, say, for example, we have 60. One person lost the license because of they, they being late. We have now 59. We have a vacancy. But at the same time, we did not give that person the ability to renew, or remind them to renew because we want to reduce it, and at the same time, we want to advertise. I don't know if that makes sense.
It does. I mean, we could hold the permit for a year or more before we do that, so they can have an opportunity to get in the lottery a year later.
I see, maybe.
I mean, 60 days was to try and not have it stretch out to a year, but I guess. Oh, no, they would lose their license in 60 days, but have an opportunity to enter a lottery the following year for that available license. We would just hold the license and dole it out on an annual basis. Have to dole it out immediately, right? We can.
No, I mean, at present, for example, we don't have a cap, as you know, and if there's some entity that opens up business in December, you know, they apply in December, and you folks, you know, grant their permit the, you know, next meeting. So, yeah, I mean, we could hold on. If I understand what you're saying, Councilor Mo, when you say hold it for a year, you mean, so it expires June 30th, they didn't renew on time, then we just wait for the next June 30th, a year from then, or?
To renew on time?
Yeah, so it's all done at the same time.
I like that.
Yeah. And if you have.
Is that problematic, or do you foresee issues with that?
No.
You know what the problem is?
Kelly foresee issues with that. I just feel like everybody gets.
So you're saying they missed the deadline, they apply after the deadline, we hold that application, marking it somehow that there's a preference for this business come the next license?
No, no preference.
No preference.
They already have their license, but they did not renew on time.
Therefore, they don't have a license.
I'm not going to do it this year.
And that permit is sequestered.
Oh, we just hold that.
Yeah. We just hold the permit itself.
But then if we have more than just that one business applying for the following year?
Then we need to, that's the next thing we need to figure out.
Okay, okay.
And what about if, like, 10 of them did not apply on time?
Is that attrition, or is that just holding it in abeyance?
Holding it.
In abeyance, and then, but I mean.
So if we set the.
What are we trying to do?
If we set the cap at something lower than current.
Yeah, reduce the quantity of sellers, yeah.
If we set the cap at something lower than current, but we grandfather the current ones, right, then.
The problem solves itself.
A little bit. I mean, there's a threshold at which it doesn't.
For years, yeah. Say we set it at, like, whatever, 55. Or whatever number. And, yeah, we don't have to, we could potentially never have to deal with the problem, right? Because there would never be fewer people that want to, but if it gets below 55, then we would have to come back. And I think, we're even saying now that if we get in a situation, you know, at first come, first served would be probably the simplest, but then that might get into a case of, how'd they hear about it?
Right.
Like, you know what I mean? So that, getting back to Eric's point, so if we have a thing where we say, okay, we're going to put it up on the city clerk's website, or whoever, that this is open, you have five business days of those, anybody who gets in that time will do a lottery.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because if you just do it like one, first in, that could, again, somebody could.
Then they have to, like, date it.
So it's publicly transparent, so every member of the public gets the same notice and ability to apply for that permit, rather than just who happened to be walking through City Hall, heard somebody talk about it, and running, running.
Yes.
Obviously, that's, that's a silly hypothetical, but it's late. Apologize.
Well, so the simplest would be if you, again, hypothetically, if we were to set it at 6, or at 55, you know, and, and we, you know, then it would just be if they, you know, forget after these reminders and the grace period and so forth, you know, then, too bad, now we got 59, you know, or what, you know, or 60, or 61, I should say, since we're at 62 now. It, it gets a little tricky if we hold on to them for a year, because, because the city clerk's office would have to kind of keep that in mind, and people would say, well, hold on, your cap is 62, you've only issued 61. Why is that? Well, we're holding, you know, this one permit for a year. And then at the end of the year, do they get a preference, the one that forgot, or is it just lottery then, or?
I think if we lower the cap to 55, that's less of an issue, like, the sequestering of the, of the permit is less of an issue.
It still could be an issue for, you know, if there's some place that forgets to apply.
Oh, I mean, like, I don't think we have to sequester the permit if we're lowering it to 55, is what I mean.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
That's, I'm fine with lowering it, that's.
I don't, we won't have to, like, hold the permit for a year if we're lowering it to 55.
Because the permit just goes away.
It's gone.
After whatever.
So in other words, we're basically grandfathering, let's, let's say, we've got 62 right now.
Right.
We're grandfathering seven establishments.
Well, technically, all, all 62 would be grandfathered.
Well, that's what I mean.
But there's a little wiggle room of.
But. Just, I'm, I'm trying to think of the cleanest way here, because I know it's late, but also this, like, so we do this, and we hold this, and we do this. And I'm like, lots of people think that what Iowa City does is really complicated, and they don't like that. And I realize we're trying to, you know, but I'm like, what's, what's the simplest path to this? And if it's that we just lower the cap to 55, and then, you know, it just, one by one, they peel off because they didn't renew, then that's how we do it.
That means we are not going to open it for, like, vacancy, say, hey, we have a vacancy, that's it.
Right.
Until we get below the cap.
Not until we get below the cap. And then, I mean, it may be draconian, but I'm also, it's really simple.
And even the blow the cap would have to be also, like, because we are doing it by distance. If someone.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We're still going to consider that, right?
Very good point, yes.
Yes.
So the only thing you may get into, and you may be fine with this, is there could be a new gas station or a new grocery store that wants to locate in a. could be a new gas station or a new grocery store that wants to locate in a site that would otherwise be acceptable, and if a deal breaker for them is cigarette sales or tobacco sales, that could chase, that could chase them away.
I was actually looking over around Eastdale and, yeah, I do understand that.
Yeah, so, like, for example, if you think of, we know the Dubuque I-80 project is, has changed hands, and a new owner is thinking about a commercial area being established there. There's no school sites in that area. If they came and they said, hey, we've got a user, it's a grocery store, and they want to sell tobacco, we would, we would tell them, I'm sorry, that's not allowed, and you're going to have to find a different user. And that, that may be okay, but I just want to try to help you anticipate some of the challenges you might get into.
I, I mean, we also have to be fine with the fact that there could be, we know there's no buses, really, that go over there. We have to be fine that people with lesser means would have to go further for something that other people have quick access to. I understand tobacco is, has some health implications and all that other stuff, but, I mean, this is setting up some inequities for people as well. But this isn't the hill I want to die on, I'll tell you.
No, I, I hear you first.
I mean, I, I just recall Johns County Public Health being here last meeting and saying, the right number is zero, basically, right? Like, this, this is something that we have an opportunity to limit negative impacts in the community. I appreciate what you're saying.
And that's taking away people's choices. I mean, I'm, I, I don't think, right?
Absolutely, yep. Which is what the government does, right?
Sounds very conservative.
Well, so, the other thing I'll point out is that, you know, the, the way I set up the ordinance, the cap is set by resolution, which would only require one reading.
That's great.
So I suppose in theory, if you were sitting at 56, and there was a great new opportunity, great new business that came to town, but said, I'm not coming unless you give me a tobacco permit, we, you know, it'd take one meeting for you to...
Couldn't we get sued?
Now, to be clear, well, no, I don't, well, I can never guarantee that we would not be sued. We'd get sued for some silly things.
That's a good point, that's a good point.
But I, I don't think that would prevail, particularly if you had a policy in place that kind of talked about how you're going to dole out permits, you know, available permits, that are, you know, have a rational basis and public, you know, kind of anchored in public health.
I see what you're saying, so that if we have this, we dole out permits, if tobacco sales are less than 1% of your total sales
Sure.
Or something like that, then we have a rationale for allowing additional permits, and maybe not offending certain actors that would be most likely to be angry about this ordinance to begin with.
Perhaps.
I will be a good topic for Iowa Legislature next time.
Oh, they're going to talk about it. Anything else on this topic? Oh, well, do you need anything else?
I, I'm sorry, I do have a few more questions.
Yes, please go.
Please respond, speak.
It's the only change they need to do.
Oh, one of the topics we were discussing is a, a little bit of a fear, and frankly, this won't be a problem if you set the cap at present or lower, but there would be institutions that just get the permit and just keep it, but they're either not selling tobacco right now, or they, like that come-and-go at Mormon Track and Benton Street, are closed for business, but are maintaining their tobacco permit, you know, whether there'd be kind of squatting, if you will, to preserve grandfather rights. If you're okay with that, then...
I don't want to say that.
You know? And I don't think frankly it would be an issue unless you decided that the right number of permits is 70.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
Sell it within a year, or use it... So, we covered, we covered setbacks and caps, or did we finish the discussion of setbacks?
I'm sorry, we're not quite there.
Okay, thank you.
I have more questions.
Trying to keep track of where we were.
Also, I wanted to confirm, well, do you wish to essentially allow transfers of permits? Two different flavors of that. One is, there is a current establishment that has a tobacco permit, and they would like to sell to a different owner, same business, same kind of thing, same location and all that. Is that consistent? I mean, it's a new permit because it's a new owner.
State doesn't allow that, Eric.
I'm sorry?
State doesn't allow that.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying that, let's just say that there's one that is not otherwise compliant with the 500-foot separation, whichever separations we have. It would be a new application, we're thinking that it's grandfathered, and that's okay, and that that sale would be allowed to go through. I mean, we can work out the details about how that's effectuated. I just want to hear your intent as to whether or not you would want to allow, let's say, a convenience store to sell from one owner to another owner.
So which is the crux of your question? Is it about the transfer of the permit, or is it about, you said something about 500 feet?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that there's, maybe the 500 feet is, is a red herring in this conversation. I guess really, what I need to focus on is, you've got a grandfathered use, a current perma-te, let's say, a convenience store, and they want to sell from one owner to another owner. Do you folks...
Maintaining the same business.
Same business, you know, nothing changed.
New restrictions would kick in.
Sorry?
None of the new restrictions would kick in in that case.
Well, none of the restrictions would serve to prevent that sale, is what I'm asking.
Right, yeah, I do not want to be responsible for preventing a sale.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I also go back to my initial contradictory statement to, are we creating forever spots? Are we creating spots that are going to forever be the tobacco places, and in the same kind of strange concentration we currently have? That's, I'm split on it, guys. I really, it, it's messy, like, I don't want to harm someone's business who's a legitimate business owner selling their business, and it's part of it, but I also understand that if you own one, like, you're, you've got a thing now. We've created a scarcity that's going to cause some weird distortions, I think.
I don't...
I mean, you guys don't care...
No, I care, but I, I do not want to be responsible.
For shutting down a business.
For shutting down a business.
Yeah, I don't either, like, I don't either, like, I'm just, these are both ugly.
I think we should let them keep it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so I'm hearing the consensus is that would be allowed. The second kind of related question is if you've got a current perma-te who is on Main Street and wants to let that one expire and open a different business that is compliant with all their zoning and, and so forth restrictions, somewhere else. Business owner basically moves their business from A to B.
What about, maybe they move to close, and they are not, is that still we're going to require the cap, I think, right? Not the cap, I mean, the distance.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, the distance.
Yeah.
If we, if the distance, I think if the distance is still okay, and they have their license, but they're transferring their location.
Right, in theory, it might go from a location that's not okay, because they're within the 500 feet, to a place that would have to be okay.
Yeah.
Base and separation distance.
And I think that a part of the challenge there would be, business owners won't know that. They'll be entered into a contract with a landlord, paying, you know, the rent into a, a new lease, and then they go and come to the city to apply, and then the city says, no, you're in this red zone, they, they've left their current location. I don't know, I, this, for me, with businesses, it, it's a lot to it, it's not easy.
It's not easy.
Can I, can I maybe, what I think I hear you asking us is, do we want to attach the grandfather right to the physical location, or to the business entity that owns the, is that kind of the gist of what you're asking, or both?
Largely, the grandfather rights definitely apply to the physical location. I mean, you can't kind of take it with you, so to speak. But, you know, we can, in, in terms of the permit cap and so forth, you would be losing one and gaining one, it would be a wash, obviously, but, you know, it would be a new permit because it's got a new address on it, and so you folks might choose to say, nope, that's, that's different, we're, we're not going to allow that.
Okay. Is it lawful for us to not allow people to, to, to sell those at a high premium? Like, I mean, it seems like the, the scheme that you're talking about, has somebody who owns one, becomes a very valuable thing.
Yes.
They could sell it for a lot of money.
Exactly.
In theory, yeah, you're right, I mean, we could be creating scarcity, and
A black market.
That, that's a real risk.
Yes.
And there's any, there's no way, is there a way for us to...
To cause, to ensure that they don't sell for a premium?
I, I don't think so.
I don't think we can, you know, you're right, I don't, I don't think we can, so...
Yeah, if we grandfather like that, I don't...
I think you're bringing a good point.
If, I mean, I realize all of these questions, I mean, these are the answers that you need, but I think in terms of the way that we're thinking about this holistically, right, about how do we, how do we reduce all of this, that absolutely makes sense, but I, I think that we're getting into a, a realm where potentially we're really over-regulating this. I'm just going to say it. It's so complex to try to wino this down, absolutely. I think we want attrition, we want the cap down, but it's introducing, and it's good that we're surfacing this. I, I don't want us to add another quill, another feather in our quill, or whatever the language is, right?
Quiver, yeah.
Thank you.
Arrow in the quiver.
Thank you, yes, I am Miss Malaprop. But, um, I just don't want to have this be yet another thing that Iowa City is known for over-regulating. I really just don't, you know?
I disagree, I think this is, we're talking about harmful products.
I, I understand that. I also understand, as, maybe I'm the only one who's a former smoker, like, a heavy smoker, that, to, to the mayor's point, that this is...
People make choices.
People make choices, and, and, and I, I think we're potentially setting ourselves up for a mini New York City with no more Big Gulps. I mean, I, I'm not saying, like, that we just say, nope, it's a free-for-all. I agree with the ordinances that, and, and with the details for clarification to put into place. I even agree with, I agree with the cap. I just think that the more that we're saying, and let's do more, right now, after we've been in session for close to six hours, maybe it's not the best time to be doing this. Let's sit and think about this a little bit.
That's a good point. I like that point a lot.
Because I don't think, yeah.
Yes.
But I'm, but I am saying, let's keep in...
Let's continue the conversation.
Right, but let's keep in mind, are we getting too smart for ourselves here?
All right, so I've heard, I've heard a pause on this conversation, and we'll pick it back up at a future work session agenda.
Please don't hate me, but we didn't talk about the kratom ban at all.
Don't say anything.
Not tonight.
That's right, okay.
It's all one item.
You know, I just also want to encourage you to bring, like, a lot of Kelly's questions, the same that he was, just think about more questions about this.
Bring more challenging questions.
Yeah, Kelly's questions, so that's guide us.
Okay. All right, so, any, the, moving forward with kratom, we'll decide that later, what the permit cap is, we'll decide that later. I'll continue to think if there's any other questions that come up, but do you need anything from me between now and the next...
I mean, any recommendations you might have to solve?
Kelly's questions, yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, the city clerk and I can definitely make some suggestions, particularly as it relates to the, what I'll call the rules, that you would presumably set under this current structure by resolution, to make it as efficient as possible, because she's got some great experience for kind of running this stuff.